Recording in progress.
Please rise as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, states of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five City Council meeting. We start every City Council meeting with our open comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public to speak on items that we will not be taking public testimony on during a public hearing later in the agenda. Each person has two minutes to speak for a total of twenty minutes. I will be keeping track of time through a variety of methods through this stoplight here and the clock up there with the blue letters. And because of limited time, we want to make sure that others have an opportunity to speak. So I encourage you to be concise and also if you're speaking on the same topic, if you want to take other approaches to that topic rather than repeating what other public testifiers has said, that will get us through quicker. If you have materials to share with the council, you may give them to the city clerk over here to distribute, please state your name clearly and make sure the clerk has your information if you need follow-up. And with that, I am going to start with Paula Harden.
Thank you, Mayor Norton, for putting ADA compliance on the top of your strategic priorities list. There are multiple instances of non-compliance to be found in the city. Perhaps before money is spent on any one problem, the city should identify and prioritize deficiencies. This would include assessing the highest risk and discovering which are the most offensive problems the city may not yet be aware exists. A certified ADA permanent employee would be able to help with that as well as prevent even more mistakes being made in the future. Historically, I would like to know how much money has been spent making it accessible. I'm guessing not much. Please, council members, assign someone on the staff to make that determination. Remember too, that anything accessible is usable by the abled. The problem is, it doesn't work the other way. Disabled people cannot easily walk or roll where there is a rough surface. Unfortunately, the ADA does not explicitly forbid the use of bricks or rough surfaces, just highly discourages them. The ADA is not intended to be comprehensive. After all, it forgot to include street parking for thirty-five years, but specified how many inches wide parking stalls and ramps must be as well as access aisles. Several years ago, when I went downtown to check on the results of the construction for Hart in the city, I was appalled to see bricks had replaced smooth concrete on First Avenue in front of the restaurant. I had my measuring tape with me and my rolator and jarred myself along this rough surface, stooping to measure how far apart bricks were in many places. I have photos showing that one and a half, one and one-half inch was not uncommon and the maximum is supposed to be one-half inch.
Thank you, Ms. Harden. Moving on, we have Ivan Idso.
My name is Ivan Idso. Three years ago, I organized an event titled Limits to Growth and the Great Simplification, featuring Nate Higgins. Nate shared that humanity will experience a great simplification in the coming decades, beginning with the onset of financial and economic turbulence, followed by significant economic contraction. I'm convinced that the great simplification has already begun and will play out in the coming decade. Author Dugald Hein states, "The collapse is already here, it's just not evenly distributed." But how can we begin to have a conversation about this? I'm distributing lapel pins with a black elephant and the words "Look Down" on it. The black elephant is a combination of a black swan, which is an unforeseeable event that has a large impact, and the elephant in the room. The black elephant then is an event such as the great simplification that when it happens, everyone will pretend was unforeseeable, but all along it was the elephant in the room. The call to look down is from a passage in the Dark Mountain Manifesto that states, "And so we find ourselves, all of us together, poised trembling on the edge of a change so massive that we have no way of gauging it. None of us knows where to look, but all of us know not to look down." Our question is, what would happen if we looked down? Could it even be good for us? We believe it's time to look down. So it's time to face the realities of the unraveling of systems and structures that many of us grew up taking for granted. I encourage you to acknowledge and consider that the future that's coming may not simply be an extension of the past. So if a herd of black elephants are charging and you ignore them until they're upon you, it's too late to do anything about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Idso. Next up is Wyatt Ryan.
According to those surveyed for Vision 2050, affordable housing represented the highest priority for Rochester going forward. And while the Rochester area Housing Coalition is doing great work for our community, we are experiencing a glaring issue that has not been addressed. That issue is private equity firms coming in and buying properties, taking away opportunities for everyone in our community to purchase housing, whether that be apartments, condos, townhouses, or single-family homes. Black Swan is one of those companies. Currently, they manage two-hundred-and-eighty properties in Rochester. Everything on this list highlighted in red is something that they own. Of those two-hundred-and-one properties that they own, one-hundred-and-fifty-nine of them are under companies other than the name of Black Swan. Of those two-hundred-and-one, seventy-nine of them are single-family homes. If we are to address the housing and the lack of affordable housing in this city, private equity firms are going to be one of the greatest barriers limiting that access to affordable housing in Rochester and the surrounding area. And this deserves more consideration going forward when talking about housing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Next up is Jay Smith.
Good evening, Mayor Norton and esteemed members of the City Council. My name is Jay Smith. I've lived in Rochester since 2014, currently in Ward Six. As you may have noticed, I'm wearing my Minnesota DMV-approved, high-visibility work coat specifically to make a couple points. First, I want you to think about safety, and by that I mean safety for all of us, not specifically just myself, but for all the folks like me who have mobility challenges. Second, while I want you to remember me and the request I'm going to make, I really want you to think of the many mobility-challenged members of our community who couldn't be here tonight. Two weeks ago during Members' Comments, it was noted that the disability community was not brought into discussions regarding design plans for the sports complex. I'd like to stop that now, before we set a trend. I'm here to ask you to fix Peace Plaza so it will be accessible and safe for everyone in Rochester, including and especially those of us with mobility issues. Peace Plaza reflects our city's identity. It should be a source of pride, not an area in disrepair. The longer we delay fixing this issue, the more costly and difficult the repairs will become. Addressing it now is a responsible investment in Rochester's future. We don't need more studies to highlight the effects of frost heave in northern climates. This is well-documented and expensive to mitigate. We need to cut our losses and move on, with an emphasis on making it safe for all of us. Thank you for your time and consideration to this important issue.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Bethany Porter.
Thank you, Council President and Council Members and Mayor Norton. My name is Bethany Porter and I live in northwest Rochester and have for almost seventeen years now. I've heard Peace Plaza described in several different ways by elected officials or city staff. Responses range from "the sidewalk is for everyone but the other areas are not," to "a safe, flexible, public space for people to gather." If you can come to a unified agreement on what Peace Plaza is intended to be, that would inform your decisions as well as the public's expectations. My understanding has always been in line with the description of a safe, flexible, public space for people to gather, but if it is merely a sidewalk, then plan for a sidewalk. If it is indeed meant to be a public gathering space, then we need short and long-term plans to make it safe for everyone to use. Whether they are residents or here to visit Mayo, people with disabilities deserve to be able to use the tables and chairs, and the plan to leave them all on raised letter art excludes us. Please use the full $175,000 to make the largest smooth area possible at this time and start making plans for what more needs to be done. Rochester is a good place to live, and that's exactly why I expect better of Peace Plaza. I want to see Peace Plaza evolve into a space that is welcoming to everyone in the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. John Howie.
Good evening, Council Members. Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. I'll not ask you the two questions, but I see by your appearance that you're probably parents and grandparents. I am both. And I hope you feel as I would, if I were in your position, that I would have a moral obligation to do the very best job as a council member because of the trust that the citizens of this fine city has placed in me. As a parent or a grandparent, we have a moral obligation to protect them against as much as we can. No one can force you to do anything immoral. You got that? No one can force you to do immoral things. Dr. James Dobson of the Family Research Council did a study a few years ago on prisoners in prisons and how they got there. They all, without exception, started their criminal life in their drug-use life on marijuana. The majority of the... I'm not a fortune teller or a prophet, but if you go ahead with authorizing the retail sales of marijuana in the city, you will be morally responsible for those that get hooked on it, and very possibly one of your children or grandchildren will be at one point on drugs, in jail, or dead. Then you'll have to explain to them, the parents and the other siblings, why you passed this law, the use of marijuana. You know, I find it very interesting how the Democrats have put this label on smoking weed, recreational use of a drug. It's not recreational.
Thank you, Mr. Howie.
In my eighty years...
Time is up.
...of this God-given life, fifty-three years of this have been involved in political life and supporting people like you in your positions, campaigning for them.
Could you please wrap up, Mr. Howie?
One minute.
No, not one minute. You have to just say thank you. You've had your two minutes. Thank you, Mr. Howie. Moving on to Russell Staver.
Hello, guys, and Mayor Kim Norton. You might recognize the last name Staver. I happen to be Randy's brother. My beef is, there's a company called North Rock Real Estate. They tore down the entire block of houses where I lived, where I lived, so they could do something for Destination Medical Center. And I wound up homeless because of that. And what I'm trying to say is, there's a lack of affordable housing in Rochester, and when I say that, I mean for me. I get Social Security. I could afford maybe six, seven, eight hundred dollars a month, which you try to find that here. That's a no-go. And I guess I'd also like to say, you know, Destination Medical Center got five billion dollars from the state. Maybe they could spend twenty, forty million of that on some affordable housing. I wouldn't have been homeless unless they tore the place where I lived down. They tore down the entire block by Lord's High School, the old Lord's High School. And so I guess that's my major beef. And, you know, I just don't understand it. And yes, I can go out and get a part-time job too and work, but I just wanted my voice, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Staver. Next up, Brad Tryon. Mr. Tryon.
President Schubring, members of Council, Brad Tryon, Ward Five, Council Member Palmer. I provide each of you guys packets that will be handed out. This past Saturday, the Mayo Civic Center hosted Section One Wrestling Rochester Area Home Builders Home Show, Civic Theater Play plus Auditions. On Friday, it snowed. On Saturday, I arrived at Mayo Civic at ten forty-five to volunteer for the home show, and I was surprised to see the snow was not shoved by the sidewalk from Center Street to Civic Center. I contacted Mayor Kim Norton, who told me that she contacted three people and then advised me to call 311 to file a complaint. I called that 311 number only to learn via voice recording, it was closed. As of nine PM Saturday night, over ten and a half hours later, we drove by and the sidewalks are still not cleared. I was concerned about our individuals with disabilities that need public access to that sidewalk. I've attached Rochester Code of Ordinances, Section 962, which outlines responsibilities and penalties. The Mayo Civic Center was in complete violation. The city frequently finds homeowners and businesses under these snow and parking ordinances, often with no snow on the ground. Based on the ordinance and that I cleared the Mayo Civic Center sidewalk of snow, please accept my invoice to the city in the amount of $1,000. Please disburse $500 each to the Rochester Police Department and Rochester Fire Department Wellness Programs on my behalf. We expect homeowners and businesses to follow ordinances when the city itself does not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Wes Lund.
Hello. I know you've missed me a little bit. Nice to see you. Congratulations to you.
I was waiting for you to beak.
Yeah, I haven't been here since December eighteenth, perhaps, when I congratulated all of the Democrats, including yourself, Council President Schubring. All the Democrats are to be commended, along with Isaiah Minnesota and their sister or child organization, Faith in Minnesota, a quasi-religious organization of 501(c)(4). And all of these groups, I'm excited to see the movement of House File Seventy-two through the Minnesota State Legislature, which is going to apparently deal with some nonprofits and their influence on politics, of which I've spoken on this microphone many, many times. And I'm really excited to hear so many residents coming here tonight, talking about similar issues. Please go back and see my speeches over the years. Everything I've said has been reasonable, the questions I've asked have been cogent and rational, sometimes funny. But congratulations are in order to everyone for realizing now that we do have partisanship in our local politics, and it is a real thing that the nonprofit organizations in Minnesota do influence our public policies. And so we're seeing, yes, thirty seconds are left, Council President Schubring, and almost time, but I just did want to say thank you to everybody. Probably the last point is to say, please don't continue to do things that will bring more lawsuits against our city in terms of the D I programs, diversity, inclusion, and equity, or critical race theory, or the blaming of Christians and white people for everything that's ever happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lund. Moving on to Linda Smith. I'm sorry, I messed your first name up.
This isn't anything I normally would do, and I get worked up. I've owned a store downtown for twenty-four years, and I've never heard so many unhappy people that come to Rochester for treatments. I mean, they've ruined our downtown. I mean, I've fallen three times on them bricks, you know, and if they're going to tell me what kind of shoes to wear, then that's not right. But I mean, and then I had a sales rep looking for my store, couldn't find it because those dinging trees that you put in are so tall and so wide, you can't see the businesses. Now, why, I mean, you had to take away all that parking. I mean, if you could take that back and you'd still have a big sidewalk for people to walk on, and you know, and I talked to people in wheelchairs and a cane, they are just livid because try it once and go on there with the wheel. Even the UPS man says the same thing, it's just bouncy like this. I mean, do you think it's a good idea? I mean, it's awful. Like the Peace Plaza, it was beautiful before with the green grass and the blue paint and the lights that look like water with the big fountain. Now what you got, a big, ugly-looking brown, nothing. You know, and then these bricks, I mean, you know, I don't know this positively, but I'm pretty sure, I mean, every mayor that we've had, like I said, I've been on the twenty-four years, every mayor that we've had has always come into the businesses and say, "How are you doing?" That mayor has never come in one time, done nothing. And another thing that I was told by one of my customers, that, you know, these bricks that you're putting in, they're not good for Minnesota. And you know what the mayor told him? So what? So, you know, I mean, it's not pretty down there anymore. It used to be very pretty. I mean, I just don't know what you're trying to get at. I mean, people, they don't like to come downtown at all. That's the biggest thing I hear. And then you try to watch those people try to figure out how to use the parking meters, you know, when it was thirty minutes, that was awful, but now you got them for three hours. That's really bad because there's so many people that are working, they can feed the meter.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Sorry?
Thank you. Your time is up.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is, I believe it's a kind of a scroll here, but I think it's Barry Skolnick. I will come to recognize your scroll.
Thank you very much. It's sloppy handwriting. I just want to again talk about Peace Plaza, two specific aspects of it though. One of them is, who is it for? It should be for everyone.
Can you speak into the mic?
No, it was on.
Turn it back on. Speak. There you go.
Okay, it should be for everyone. It isn't just for people who are able-bodied, it should be for everyone. The second thing is, I'm concerned about that they're always saying that it's an inspirational poem. Most people can't even read the poem, and those that have, some people think it's a novelty. I don't remember anyone really, maybe except some people on the DMC Board, saying it was inspirational. Inspirational to whom? Is this the best that we can do for Rochester, a city that wants to be the first-class city? Please, make it something for everyone that people, everyone likes, or ninety percent of the people like. I also want to mention that there should be errors and omissions insurance on all major capital projects. We don't have them on some. Why wasn't it filed? If they knew there were problems with the bricks, and why wasn't it filed to have insurance? Why aren't the builders paying for it instead of us having to pay for it? I don't understand that. And if they didn't do it this time, please do it in the future so that we have errors and omissions insurance on all major projects, so that if there's a problem, the contractor has to come in and fix it, not us, them. And that's not been happening, so I would just appreciate it if you would put that in all contracts and look into if we can still use it in this case too, because we shouldn't be paying for that. It's been known for three years, at least. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Skolnick. And finally, we have Nora Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President Schubring, and Council Members. I'm Nora Anderson. I live here in Rochester, and I'm here tonight to share my voice as an active and engaged business owner in downtown Rochester, as I know we'll be discussing the Peace Plaza probably at length this evening. But for the past two and a half years, I have been charged with activating the Peace Plaza and the Historic Chateau Theater by increasing programming activities in that space. I've had the privilege of seeing the community come together in a number of different ways in that space, from everyday lunchtime and happy hour, live music on the plaza where people can gather and enjoy the talent that we have in this community, sharing their music and their art with the community, hosting several community events. We launched a family event play on the plaza last summer that brought hundreds of families downtown every weekend to play and gather and connect with the community in that space. I'm also an artist, I have a deep appreciation for public art and its place in our community. And I do understand that there are concerns around the pavers and what we've had with them, but I do want to reflect on the fact that we've had such increased activation in foot traffic and business in that space since the heart of the city remodel has been completed and the chateau has reopened. I speak, there has been no, I believe, increase in the reports of trips and falls, although I do know that the raised lettering on the pavers does. I will not deny that it does create a hazard for some who have abilities different than myself, but I do urge you to speak with those who work and live in this space, who are directly, will be directly impacted by the work that is done to repair this. I believe that the work that's recommended by the city and the DMCC group to make these phased incremental repairs is a step in the right direction, rather than considering a broad renovation of the plaza, which will have massive impacts on the business owners and the community who have grown to use and love this space. And I just want to carry forward the momentum that we've gained in the past couple of years, so.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
That's all I have on the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard during public comment? Seeing no one, I will close public comment and ask Clerk Geisler to call the roll.
Councilmember Keane.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Council President Schubring.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Present.
Next up on our agenda is the City Administrator's Report. Administrator Zelmus, take it away.
Thank you, Council President, Council Members, Mayor Norton, lots of members of the public here today. I always start my report by thanking our teammates wherever they're working for acting with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence in mind when they go about their work. So thanks to everyone who serves the city of Rochester and the community of Rochester. So thanks to everyone who serves the city of Rochester and the community of Rochester with the city organization for all that you do. A couple of forthcoming things that I'm hoping the slide will advance, but my friends at the clerk's office will help me. We do have upcoming some Minnesota Parks in Residence. You may recall that there in February are artists in residence with Cassandra Buck at Oxbow. And in March, that is coming to Corey Hill Nature Center. So March 1st, 4th, 5th, and 11th, from 10 to 10 a.m. to 3 p.m., there will be activities free and open to all. And then on 14th and 15th, that will be from 2 p.m. to 5 p.m. So I'd encourage you to check that out. Also, that means next slide, is coming up at the Rochester Public Library. We have another free event for primarily youth between the ages of six and 12. We encourage you to also bring your parents with you from 2:30 to 3:30 p.m. At the library auditorium on Saturday, February 22nd. We have some great alliteration. We want you to build some Weely Wild vehicles. So come out if you're a fan of Legos or if you want to become a fan of Legos. Also downtown on Monday evenings, every Monday night through, I believe, April, and perhaps farther, farther on, from 6 to 8 p.m., there is free group dance lessons, starting off with the dance lessons for those of us who need more lessons, and then moving on to having, be able to practice what you've learned. And then on, coming up on the 28th of February, actually starting from 5:45 p.m. to 6:45 p.m., there's a community resource fair at the Civic Center, followed by the Sound of Music. Excuse me, I get that wrong every time, the Sound of Gospel Music. And that will be at the Mayo Civic Center at Presentation Hall. Again, Friday, February 28th. The concert starts at 7 p.m. You can get your tickets either at the box office Tuesday, Wednesday through Friday by calling or through Ticketmaster. They're $15 for the concert portion. So something to check out. That was partially funded by the city of Rochester. And finally, we do have a public music series coming March 8th from 7 to 8:30 p.m. Also at the Historic Chateau Theater. This is a ticketed event, so even for the children that are 12 and under, you still need to go and get a ticket. So we make sure that we're not overcapacity in the building. But you can do that at Rochester Public Music's website. You go to the city of Rochester's website, rochesterimn.gov, find Public Music. Or if you use a search site and search for Tico Arts Midwest Rochester Public Music, it will take you right there to be able to get your tickets. So we would encourage you to come out. This is part of the Sound School program that Public Music puts on. And there will be also performing at 10 local public elementary schools starting on March 2nd. So this is the culmination of that week. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Administrator Zelmus. And moving on to the mayor's report, Mayor Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm going to ask your permission to go to the.
Absolutely.
I would like to invite Dr. Rick Vom, who is here. Dr. Kavam, could you join me up here? I've invited one of our residents here today, and I'm going to embarrass him, I'm sure, but he can handle it. Dr. Kavam studied music at Harvard University in Massachusetts, singing and acting as assistant conductor for the Harvard Glee Club. He pursued a master's degree in choral conducting from the University of Cincinnati's Conservatory of Music. He earned his medical degree from the Mayo Medical School and completed a residency at Mayo School of Graduate Medical Education. Dr. Kavam has been an emergency medical physician in Rochester, Minnesota, associated with Olmsted Medical Center. If I get anything wrong, point it out. In 1985, Rick founded and was the conductor of the Choral Arts Ensemble here in Rochester, which has been inspiring audiences throughout southeast Minnesota with performances of outstanding choral music for 40 years. The singers are active community members from a wide variety of professions, including teachers, farmers, doctors, bankers, computer technicians, and church leaders, all drawn together to create excellent music and contribute to the artistically thriving life and an artistically thriving life. Rick recently, in 2024, retired as that conductor. Rick Kavam also started the Honors Choir, an auditioned high school choir in 1992. It grew to 90 students within three years. Currently, around 300 singers enroll each season, a little more, a little less, depending on the year. Over 32 years of existence, over 2,000 singers have participated directly as members of an honors choir ensemble, and thousands of young people have experienced choral music through area school outreach performances. Under Rick's leadership, the Honors Choir gained many recognitions over the years, including a 2001 Arts Organization of the Year Award by the Southeast Minnesota Arts Council. They've traveled nationally and internationally, and they would come to sing in City Hall atrium in the last number of years, I don't know how many years, bringing joy to our employees and experiencing the really stunning sound that you can hear in our atrium. I also want to say that I post on Facebook, and my Facebook page videos of Dr. Kavam's Honors Choir had 640,000 views on one of them. Think about that, internationally, and over 35,000 views on another one I posted. My most watched post ever, hands down. So I'm going to step over here. Dr. Kavam was inducted into the Minnesota Music Hall of Fame in 2016. Not quite as prestigious as that. I did want to recognize and thank Dr. Rick Kavam for sharing his passion and skills with our community for the past 40 years by giving him a key to the city. Thank you very much, Dr. Kavam. Thank you. I'm going to run back.
Congratulations, Dr. Kavam.
I have a couple other quick things. One, do we have any members of the Rochester Olmsted Youth Council here today? I was hoping we'd have some. They will be coming periodically to our council, both city council and county board meetings. And so I just wanted to point out that these are, this is a co-sponsored group, the city and county co-sponsored this group of young people. It is for youth 12 or 14 to 20 years old. So we do take some college students in that group periodically as well. And I wanted to let you know that membership is open to any high school or local college-age student who lives and attends a school in Olmsted County. So it goes beyond the city. And applications are open now. So if you know of any youth who might be interested, please spread the word. Also, this past week was Love Your Immigrant Neighbors Day, and we had many people out in the front of this building and downtown on Peace Plaza. And on behalf of our community or our city, I went to most of our immigrant-serving organizations and dropped off kisses on Valentine's Day. So I did do that. And then, again, we've mentioned this, the Germany-Japan trip is, the Japan trip in particular is starting to fill up. And I want to let folks know that we hope by mid-March to have that nailed down for sure. It looks like the Japan trip is going to go for sure. We've got a little bit longer to wait for Germany. And thank you all for your time. And, and again, to congratulate Dr. Kavam for, and thank him really, for all he's done for this community over the past 40 years. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mayor. And moving on to our order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve it.
Moved.
Give a second.
Moved by, moved by Councilmember Keen and seconded by Councilmember Wall. All in favor, say aye.
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 The opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Onto our consent agenda. I have no items that are being polled from the consent agenda today. Is that correct? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Fredericks and seconded by Councilmember Keen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On all, except I abstain from item F.4.
Note it. All opposed, say nay. No, so, so we have all in favor, except Councilmember Doring is abstaining from F.4. Moving on to our public hearings. We have four public hearings on our agenda this evening. And before we begin, I just want to take a moment to clarify the process for each public hearing. We will first hear a staff introduction or presentation on the item. If there is an applicant, they or their representative will then have 10 minutes to discuss the item. And then I will open the public hearing. Members of the public have up to five minutes each to, as I said with the open comment period, to be concise and also if others have shared the same themes, try to add additional points. And then I will close the public hearing. And if there's an applicant, they will have up to five minutes to, to rebut or discuss any questions that came up during the public hearing. And then we will invite councilmembers to question staff or the applicant. So with that, we will start with our first public hearing, which is the Pill Hill Historic Landmark District. And I believe Community Development's Molly Patterson-Lungren is going to be kicking us off here.
Thank you, Council President Schubring, Mayor Norton, members of the city council. That does not look like my slides that I sent today. So just see. Okay. There we go. That looks more like what I was expecting to see. Okay. Okay, so today I'm going to be talking to you about a request from neighbors in southwest Rochester, the Pill Hill neighborhood. It's a name that we're all familiar with, partly because the property, the, the neighborhood is already listed on the National Register District. So I wanted to start off with this because this is a common kind of question that I hear. What's the difference between the National Register, a National Register property, and one that is locally designated? A National Register property is one that has gone through a process led by the state Historic Preservation Office and the federal government. It's registered with the Department of Interior. And it is a way that we, on a federal level, look at properties that have historic significance to local communities, states, indeed even the, the entire United States. The teeth in these is really focused only on if there are federal funds or federal permits. There are some state programs that rely on the National Register listing, but there really aren't any requirements in terms of changes to property. There isn't anything that we as the local government do to, to regulate or oversee those. So that's where we started with this. And the applicants actually coming forward were familiar with that, but came to me and asked, you know, could they do a local landmark? So our local program is established under our Unified Development Code. It includes the ability to look at building sites, structures, objects, and districts. So when I refer to a historic property more loosely, I'm referring to any or all of those types of, of resources designated as historic properties. Again, in this case tonight, we're looking at a historic district. Under the Unified Development Code, we have a specific set of criteria that we look at, which a property has to meet before we can consider designating it. So we have criteria for historic significance, right? That's about how or why it's important to us as a community. And then we have historic integrity, and that's a measure of how much it's changed over time. I'm going to go briefly into these and talk a little bit about that in a minute. But what's proposed tonight, again, is a district. It includes 105 contributing buildings, 22 non-contributing buildings. These are all homes. The historic district also includes one site, which is a public park, the city park, St. Mary's Park, and one structure, which is the water tower. So when we look at districts, we're looking at not just a collection of individual properties, but we're also looking at sort of how those individual properties kind of are, create an atmosphere as part of an area of the city, right? It's oftentimes greater than a sum of its parts. Contributing properties are those that are part of what makes the place significant, historically significant. So again, we've got eight different criteria that can be considered for historic significance. And the applicant and their consultant have identified five of those. You only need one, but there's five of them. I concur with the application that it does meet these criteria. Historic integrity is something that is kind of hard sometimes to get a handle on. I think the term integrity, people think, well, you know, what does that mean? Does that mean my property is worth, doesn't, isn't worth as much? Or, you know, I've made all these changes. That means it should be kind of considered more important or, or maybe a higher value. Historic integrity isn't about value, and it isn't even about condition. It's a, it's really a measure of how much has changed with the property. When we're talking about a district, how much has changed with the district over time? We're also looking at how much has changed with contributing properties within the district, right? So the buildings, the water tower, the park. So how much each of those individual contributing properties have changed over time? We look at location, right? Design. Location, obviously, for a neighborhood doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. But if you're talking about a building or an object that can get picked up and moved, that would have lost its historic integrity of location if that was to happen with, with a building. Setting, right? It was built, the neighborhood was developed here between the Mayo Clinic downtown, St. Mary's Hospital up on a hill. It has to, it relates to those, those properties, those institutions within the city. Obviously, it remains integrity to, to the setting of that hilltop location where it was, where it was built. Workmanship feeling, you know, those are really, the workmanship in particular is really about the buildings. Oftentimes, you can see the craftsman, kind of the craftsmanship, cut stone, you know, the woodwork of, of the homes. So it has a high integrity, historic integrity to the period of significance. The application review and process, and, and this image actually is a clip from the Neighborhood Informational Meeting. So this process is shared with the neighborhood as part of the process when people are invited to participate and talk about what's going on with, with a proposal. The process, again, started back in summer of 2023 when property owners contacted me and contacted the Heritage Preservation, attended preservation meetings, HPC meetings, I should say, and said, you know, there's talk, there's talk of some changes to regulations in our neighborhood. We were looking at some zoning, rezoning within the city. And they said, we're a historic district, you know, how does that fit? At that point, I explained the difference between the National Register and our local program. And indicated to the property owners, and the HPC indicated that they were supportive of them moving forward. But really said, you know, we can either roll this into our Heritage Preservation Program that we are continuing to work on with individual properties year by year, or you, as property owners, have, have the ability, the opportunity to take this on and to really build a grassroots effort and to get a study done and to submit an application. So before they did that, they held several meetings, and I'm going to let them really talk more about that. But they reached out to, to neighbors, started to garner support for the process, continued to update the HPC as they went along, ended up having the Neighborhood Informational Meeting, again, a requirement of this, that was in early January, and submitted their final application. a requirement of this, that was in early January, and submitted their final application, which went to the Heritage Preservation Commission at the end of January. So we are at the point now where it is coming to you. This is a zoning overlay, so this takes council action. This would be done by an ordinance after you make a decision tonight. And public hearing tonight for you to hear from those who want to speak to this. One of the things that I did want to mention, though, too, with this slide is that what happens after this? There's a lot of questions, and that's really what it comes down to. Why do we do this? And what is this all about? So that last box, which is kind of that long rectangle there, has a QR code that takes you to the city website, which was updated last year. And it takes you to a couple of different sub-pages, including one that provides information to what are the requirements of landmark properties. So again, historic district is one type of landmark property. Contributing buildings to that district would also be treated as a landmark property. We have adopted design guidelines that are in there. We've got an explanation of the process, and we continue to grow and build that resource. And here's a clip from those adopted design guidelines. These were adopted in 2022, tend to be kind of inclusive of all types of historic properties. So we don't really get into detail of, you know, how to choose windows or something like that for your building. It's really established as an overview of how to proceed with a historic property. The design guidelines that were adopted at that time were developed in such a way that they can be expanded and they can be updated to further explain more details. So, you know, we could get into more information about something like, you know, how to preserve a home residential property versus a commercial property. Yet they are there. They're available for folks, and it explains this process of type 1, type 2 review after designation occurs. So I'll certainly be able to answer questions if you have any for me at this time. I've held back a little bit because I know that the applicants also want to share their story of proceeding through this process and kind of why they are doing this and kind of their love for their neighborhood. But on January 28th, the HPC did make a recommendation, went through the process and held the public hearing, and they are recommending to the City Council to designate the neighborhood as defined by the map as a historic district. And staff concurs with that recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Lundgren. We'll, I'm sure, have questions for you at this point. I think I'll ask the applicant to step forward and identify yourself. And as a, looks like a group, you have 10 minutes to discuss the application.
Great. Can you do the clicker?
No, thank you.
Sure. Council members, Mayor, hi, my name's Dan Larson. I'm a resident in Pill Hill. I just want to acknowledge what a privilege it is to be here.
Mr. Larson, if you can get just a little closer to the mic. There you go.
How's this?
Perfect.
Oh, great. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. So yes, I'm here, and I'm just very, very excited and honored to be able to present to you our proposal for Pill Hill, our local landmark district for local designation. To reiterate, I can just kind of go through these slides. First and foremost, why are we doing this? What's the difference between local and national? And it's right there. So the National Register is a great honor, but it does not protect our historic structures from significant alteration or demolition. So the local landmark designation is what we're seeking, which provides those protections. Try this clicker. Oh, it worked. I also get to do the fun part tonight, as in, I just wanted to tell you what's so interesting and great about Pill Hill, what makes it significant. I see kind of four main categories of why it is significant. Number one, the architecture. Right there, you see unique, irreplaceable architectural gems built by expert craftsmen. These are houses that were built typically between the two world wars in architectural style and in a manner of craft that is not seen again today. So in contrast to the loss of historic buildings downtown, Pill Hill is remarkably intact. I just wanted to add one. Did you know, did you know that prairie and craftsman-style houses are really the first truly American residential architectural styles that don't mimic European designs? I thought that was kind of interesting. Pill Hill has dozens of prairie and craftsman-style homes that are very important, and so many other types of historic homes and stylized architecture that's present. The history, that's, Pill Hill represents the beginnings of Mayo Clinic and modern medicine, including Nobel Prize winners Edward Kendall and Luis Alvarez. Earlier in the last century, it was actually common for celebrities seeking care at the world-famous Mayo Clinic at the time to actually stay at the homes of their doctors or visit the homes of their doctors in Pill Hill. Names like Lou Gehrig, Ernest Hemingway, Jack Dempsey, and even family members of American presidents like FDR and JFK have been tagged in homes in Pill Hill, which is, which is really, really interesting. And a number of leaders in medicine in Pill Hill, including founders of whole departments at Mayo, presidents of medical societies, discoverers of techniques, diseases, treatments, tools, syndromes. It kind of makes your head spin for all of this interesting stuff. The location, it's walkable. It was treasured for being walkable to work, and it serves that same, same purpose today. And also, number four, and maybe is even number, should be number one, is the shared community, is that everyone walks through Pill Hill, enjoys it. It's listed on Mayo Clinic as a place to receive respite and go for a walk between appointments or when you're waiting for someone to recover. It just serves that purpose. Next slide. So the process, actually, Ms. Patterson-Lundgren did a great job explaining the process, so I won't belabor this too much. I want to focus on the neighborhood engagement. It has been a great joy to get to know all of my neighbors, and the engagement from neighbors has been so, so positive and thankful and supportive. So it was great to see that. Additional support for the district includes Historic Southwest Neighborhood Association, has a letter, and unanimous approval from the HBC, as mentioned, as well as the state of Minnesota's Heritage Preservation Office. With that, I want to hand it off to my co-chair, Martha Grogan. You can tell us a little bit more about the National Register where we're starting.
Thanks, Dan. I'm Martha Grogan, and our third co-chair, Bobby Pritt, could not be with us today. So again, we're super excited to be here after an 18-month journey working on this district. Let's just start with the money. What's the map? Everyone wants to know. What are we talking about? So we started with the National Register boundary, as you see on the left. And the bottom line is that Pill Hill is amazingly intact. Only two of the homes on the National Register have been demolished. And the boundary that we drew is almost exactly the same as the National Register. It was found to be valid. Most of the changes that occurred had to do with land divisions that have happened or clearing up some of the parcel lines. So a boundary is really important for a historic district. Our consultant, Bethany, will tell you, it's challenging, it's complex, it has to do with the integrity and the historic context, but also the topography in this case. So it is a pretty big deal establishing the boundary. Just to let you know, it's really not all giant homes. There are a variety of homes within Pill Hill. That's one reason a district is so important. It's not just the big, kind of important homes that get protected. It's the others that really add the feeling to this neighborhood. As far as, what does this mean to property owners? Molly reviewed this with you. Also, eventually, it can involve you as city council. So the bottom line is minor things, like what color are you painting your house? And those kinds of maintenance things are not restricted under this process. Nothing on the interior of the home. For contributing properties, then, major additions, things that require permit, those need to be reviewed by the HPC. If there's a conflict, then those might be appealed to city council. If a house needs to be, a demolition of a contributing property has to have public hearings. Now, non-contributing, and you might wonder, why are they even in there? Well, they're within the boundary. These are usually newer homes that were built later, or properties that don't have as much historical integrity. But they contribute to the district, and the reason they're really important is actually looking down the road 10, 20 years from now. If the primary structure is demolished, then it does need to be replaced with something that fits in with the historic district. So, you know, if you think of even the National Register District, it's been there 35 years now. So you can imagine that you can actually improve the feeling of the district by having that restriction. But other than that, non-contributing properties have very little restrictions. There's what's called a type 1 review. Molly or someone else in city staff reviews that. There's no fee for these reviews, and they're usually done within one to two days. So there's really not a lot of restriction here. What are some of the things that we've heard from people? Well, the great thing is that we've really had overwhelmingly positive response. We've only heard from about 2% of property owners who have expressed any concern about the district. Most people, when they hear what the restrictions are, they're willing to accept them for the goal of preserving these historic structures and the good for generations to come. Some of these restrictions actually are not really much more restrictive than homeowners association. The housing needs are important because this historic overlay does not prevent changes in zoning. So if you think of historic districts in London, those are row houses that were residential. Now they may be used for commercial properties, and so they can be modified. So we're not freezing Pill Hill in time. And there are really, not really great alternatives. And then I'll just highlight one part of the boundary. If you look at the map, you'll see the north boundary is right there on Third Street, right next to our transit-oriented district on Second Street. So it's a very important kind of gateway. And there is going to, what's that? And there is going to be a little discussion about one home there, and I just want to show you that if we modify the map, it's right in the middle. So I'm going to go on to Bethany, our consultant, and we're thrilled to have her here.
I'm Bethany Gladhill. Thank you for letting me be with you today. I'm a St. Paul-based preservation consultant. After I received my terminal degree in preservation from Goucher 25 years ago, I've been in the field working in everything from National Register nominations, historic contexts, districts, design guidelines, just finished up a civil rights project in Water Lake, Iowa. So preservation has a really wide range of activities. But the important things that I came to it, much like you did, I start, sat in a district council and realized the importance of preservation as a tool for community development. And not just physical community development, not just the ways that you can use these buildings to make your community better, but how that unites people, how that brings people together in a sense of place that we've referred to in that shared community. A couple of quick things about the summary of findings. Again, remarkably intact and comprehensive. It was in 1990. It still is. This is an amazing resource you have. Integrity is excellent throughout, really well showing the kinds of homes that were in that area and that part of history, but not freezing it in time, having those areas. Some huge benefits of a historic district. You'll hear from every preservationist that the greenest home is an old home, that this is remarkably more sustainable than much new use, creates skilled jobs that stay and keep money in the economy, give that sense of place, and is an important element of heritage tourism, in which it's found that people stay longer and spend more, about 30% more in each park. A couple of important features there, we've referred to the topography and how that's important in the way the area looks. The integrity, very complete, gives that sense of place. I can't think of a more intact district that speaks so well of the community, and I commend you in having this resource.
Thank you. And you will be able to come back and answer any questions that may come up during the public hearing.
Thank you so much.
So at this, at this time, I will open the public hearing. And a reminder to folks that you will have five minutes. You don't have to use all five minutes, but there is a light there. And so I have a list here, and we'll start with Renee Rice.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Norton and council members.
You can step up just a little bit more. We'll hear you better.
Good evening, Mayor Norton and council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Sorry, I'm just a little nervous.
No problem. Just take your time. Take a deep breath.
My name is Renee Rice. I live at 825 Third Street Southwest. I purchased that house with my brother Bob Rice and George Montalet. I'm here to ask that my property be removed from the proposed historic district. We are not considered historic. We are considered the non-contributing property. We are, we are, no one famous has ever lived there. It was built in 1955. And as they showed the 19 design guidelines, our house has zero. We purchased the property a year and a half ago to rent out affordable housing to Mayo personnel and people traveling, and to hopefully at some point use the old tennis court for parking and an affordable housing unit. And that, that process has been difficult going through those stages of trying to get this done. And then a year and a half later, and we have made a lot of headway. And I do fear that this process would make that more difficult in adding more steps to the process. With the question of individual property rights, I ask that we not be forced into this, since we really don't have any qualities that these houses have, and we are on the very edge of the proposed district. So we're hoping it could be removed without a great deal of difficulty. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. Next up, we have Alex Ball.
President Schubring, thank you very much. My name is Alex Ball. My wife and I own a home at 802 Fourth Street Southwest in Rochester, Minnesota. This is inside the proposed landmark district. Some of what I will say, I am going to admit right off the bat, is going to be repetitive of some things you've heard before. One of the important things about democracy, however, is not just what people think, but how many people think that way. So I'm going to go ahead and repeat some things you've heard. February 7th, Post-Bulletin article highlighted the impending sale and demolition of a 106-year-old house, 219th, 6th Avenue Southwest, to make way for a planned 12-story apartment building. Now, this is just a few blocks outside of the Pill Hill Local Landmark District that is being proposed. Its proximity underscores the vulnerability of this historic neighborhood to developmental pressures. According to the Post-Bulletin story, the home's owner expressed regret over the sale, but ultimately felt that to resist the influence of powerful interests was beyond their capability. The offered price, $1.4 million, which represented a 347% return on investment for approximately 13 years, demonstrates the immense financial power that can be leveraged against our historic neighborhoods. This sale is a stark reminder that once those structures are gone, they will be gone forever. Pill Hill is unique in a city that, in the name of rapid growth, has erased much of its history. Past expansions may have been necessary, but unchecked development does not need nor should be an indefinite course that we continue to follow without reason. A community's identity depends on preserving elements of its past. Historic neighborhoods serve as a tangible guide to where we've been, and they show us the direction in which we want to go. Beyond the histories of the Mayo brothers and the other physicians who settled those homes, those houses represent the craftsmanship of a bygone era. As you've heard, many materials and techniques that are used in those structures are now very rare, some even lost to history. These homes are not just residences. They are irreplaceable works of art. And as such, they are also a testament to the working-class artisans who brought them into being. While it's true that Pill Hill once was home to the city's most elite residents, this is no longer completely the case. Today, Rochester's highest-value homes are located in newer developments much further from the city center. And it's important to point out that Pill Hill is not a gated community. It's an open and a shared space. Healthcare workers, visitors, patients, they often stroll our quiet streets and relax in our parks. You'll see trolleys full of tourists weave through the neighborhood, getting glimpses into our rich past. The homeowners in Pill Hill are not seeking to preserve this area just for themselves, but for the benefit of this entire city, at their own expense, I might add. While Pill Hill remains a comfortable neighborhood, it's not immune to the financial pressures of development without protection. Without protection, individual homeowners can face offers that are much too large to refuse, leading to the slow erosion of the neighborhood's historical character. Establishing this local landmark district would provide real protection by requiring the Historic Preservation Commission and the city staff to review before demolitions or major exterior renovations occur. It is also important to note that it would not impose restrictions on homeowners that want to carry out interior renovations, routine maintenance, painting their house. Given the vast amount of money involved and the intense pressures that can be brought to bear, it is vital that we put in place as a city, a process of review, a mechanism that enforces a pause to consider the ramifications of any action which, once done, could erase a piece of our city's history forever. So creating this landmark district is very important. Homeowners will still be able to make renovations, as I said, and additions that align with the character of the neighborhood. Goal isn't to change the neighborhood, but just to ensure that Rochester does not lose an irreplaceable part of its history. The council has an opportunity to preserve a neighborhood that has played a pivotal role in Rochester's medical and cultural history, and I strongly urge you to support the recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission and create the Pill Hill local landmark district before it's too late. Once our history is gone, we cannot get it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Next up, we have Kenneth Philbrick.
Thank you very much for hearing my testimony today. I apologize, like the prior speaker, that I think for many of us who live on Pill Hill, you'll hear many common themes that are going to be kind of reiterated. The thing I'd like to highlight, first of all, though, is really the thriving community that we live in in Rochester. So when we think about Rochester, particularly the downtown, our greater downtown core for Rochester, we are really fortunate, and I think often we forget, like, it's very, very easy to forget when you live in a community that other communities are not like ours. When I go back and visit my parents back in Oregon, their downtown core is in, basically, it's falling apart. People are moving out of the core, businesses are moving out, it's not functional. If you look at our downtown core, we have residential, we have commercial, we have the hospital, and all of this, and Pill Hill is a capstone for this on top of the hill, I guess, because that's where it is. And when we think about what Pill Hill brings our community, our Pill Hill brings our community, it's really, it's living in vibrant history, which is maintained by Rochester residents. So like my wife and I, we maintain our home, and we made this over this last year, just as one example of this, and preserving the character of the home is something that is very important to us. In the last year, we had a failing wall on the outside, and we went and went through multiple contractors to find a contractor who would come back to our house and would bring in local stone and rebuild a retaining wall on the outside of the house that was consistent with the character of the home. When you move into a historic home, one of the things that you find is you find that, you find that, those, you find binders and folders. And in our case, what we found when we moved into our historic home was an entire filing cabinet filled with historic documents that go back to 1921. So an example of a deed for the house, and, you know, I commend the writing when you go back to 1921, because the script is just phenomenal. Then you go to the 1950s, and, you know, thank goodness that this is still in mint condition. So if you need to know where to go in case of nuclear disaster in Rochester, this was published by the city, and we found this, it was in a folder in our home that was stated for, said, "In case of nuclear war, this is where to go." And for all of you who do want to know, it is the hospital is the recommended place, which is probably a good thing. When we think about, so it's not just those of us who live in the community, but Pill Hill also functions, so I have the opportunity to work from my house, stare out the window, and when I'm staring out the window in the middle of the day, what do I see going by? But it's trolley after trolley. Sometimes they're back-to-back. It's not just trolleys, but it's the walkers and just the people through the community. So I see people coming up from the hospital, people, nurses, walking back and forth during their lunch hours. It's a vibrant residential public park. And this last year, when, in the middle of my workday, right between two meetings, thankfully, there was a knock at our door, and what was I greeted by but a couple who'd moved back to Rochester, and the father of the family had previously lived at our house, and he wanted to show the house and the backyard to his younger children, and it was just a joy to be able to extend this. And what I'm trying to capture is Pill Hill represents this opportunity, it's this thing that we have, it is unique to Rochester, it is really gold for our community. And it's important, not just to those of us who live, to have the opportunity and the fortune to be able to live in Pill Hill, but also to our broader community. It speaks to all of Rochester, it speaks to our culture as Rochesterites, just as much as a corn water tower. Thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing your approval of our motion.
Thank you, Mr. Philbrick. Next up, we have Barb Hudson.
Hello. My name is Barb Hudson. Last couple of speakers have kind of taken my thunder, so I won't read everything I have. Just to say that I'm kind of from the other side of the tracks, I am not from Pill Hill, never lived there, and I have visited several of the homes there, and they are beautiful. But I live in northwest Rochester, and I really like my neighborhood, but Pill Hill is my favorite neighborhood. And I say that because of everything everybody else has said. And I'd also like to say that if the federal government in their historic district decision to designate it as a historic district, and the state of Minnesota, Chippewa, has already said they would like to see it designated as a historic district, and the Heritage Preservation Commission here in Rochester has agreed it should be a historic district, I am certainly hoping that you on the council will preserve it and give it the landmark status that it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Next up, we have Jacob Mowetz.
Good evening, everybody. I'll be brief, and I won't use the full five minutes, but just want to give my emphatic endorsement of this. I live in the district, and we put a significant addition onto our home, spent a lot of time working with an architect, working with the builder, to ensure that the, you know, we didn't use stucco board, we used real stucco, you know, making sure that all the woodwork was in keeping with the original structure, and hope that you will approve this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mowetz. Next up, we have Noreen Pinara. I'm sorry, I've got it all wrong. You're going to have to...
It's a handwriting. So, Mayor...
Can you repeat your names?
Yeah, it's Naveen Pereira.
Naveen Pereira.
And no, the new restaurant Pereira's does not belong to me, so I just wanted to make sure. So, Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity. So I'm, have been a resident of Rochester, Minnesota now for eighteen years, and a proud resident, and I want to give you a personal perspective of having lived in Rochester. So I live in a house that was built in 1934. It was designed by an architect called Ed Lundey, and Ed Lundey's a nationally famous architect, just like Crawford, and his architectural drawings are archived at the University of Minnesota. It is a labor of love to live in a house that old, because we are constantly engaged in repairs, et cetera, but I feel it's my joy to do that, and it's a service to the community and my neighborhood. The first owner of the house was Dr. Mandred Comfort, one of the first gastroenterologists who was brought in by Charlie Mayo. He described a condition called hereditary pancreatitis. The second owner was Vernon Maddox, he was the one who worked in isolating cortisone that helped win the Nobel Prize, and the house is still wondering who I am, the third owner of the house, but I'm privileged to be there. I also wanted to give you my perspective of having lived in Charleston, South Carolina, before I moved to Rochester. And my wife wondered a lot as to why I moved to Rochester from Charleston, but I don't know if you'll have visited Charleston, but Charleston has a very internationally-recognized preservation society that was founded in 1920, and it had almost a paranoid mission of preserving the character of Charleston. And that success over the past hundred-plus years is displayed today, because although the historic core of Charleston Peninsula that's almost jealously guarded by this preservation society remains as is, but the community around that historical core has absolutely thrived, both from a commercial, business perspective and in drawing huge number of people to Charleston. So although I didn't live in that historic core district, I was proud of it, and I was proud to be a community member of Charleston. On the other hand, I've visited Savannah, Georgia over the years while I lived in Charleston, and the historic Savannah Foundation was founded in 1955, and it was a little bit too late for them, because that historic downtown Savannah, if you've ever visited, there's a part of it that's been developed and transformed. No one wants to visit that area. No Savannah resident or Georgia resident is proud of that developed area of Savannah. And when residents saw that transformation take place, that led to the impetus to form the Savannah Historical Foundation. And then the rest is history, you get horse carriage tours, and you have the beautiful character of Savannah still there, again, drawing huge number of retirees to that area. So I would urge you to really consider this, as one of the speakers said, it's not going to come back if it's gone. I believe the attraction of what we managed to preserve in the area is attracting developers, and once it's gone, it's gone. So please consider maintaining the historic designation of Pill Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next up, we have Loring Stead.
Hello, Mayor and Council, Loring Stead, 217 14th Avenue Southwest. I am not a resident of Pill Hill, never lived in Pill Hill, none of our families have. But to really capture the culture and passion, I encourage you all to join us any Saturday night. We meet up at St. Mary's Park, there's a group of us that walk the north side of the road down Fourth Street, down past the foundation of Seventh Avenue, turn around and come back and walk down the south side, turn south on Ninth Avenue down to Eighth Street, over to Tenth Avenue, and up to Tenth Avenue. Please do that sometime this summer. You'll get a feel of what the passion is, what the culture of that. This area is just not about architecture, history, location, and shared community, it's the culture of Rochester. Please pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stead. That's all I have on my sign-up sheet. If there are others that wish to speak, step forward and state your name, and I see someone coming up to the podium. State your name, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, I'm Sandeep Kozla. I live at H15 Third Street Southwest. I think the council members are probably at least familiar with my email that I provided, and I want to actually make this public record. So, you know, at the outset, I want to just say to Renee Rice, who's our neighbor, and her LLC partner, George Montalais, I've had coffee numerous times with George. I have no, nothing personal, you know, I have had a cordial relationship with them. But, you know, the difference that George and I have are fundamental in terms of our goals for the neighborhood. Mine is, I've lived in this home for 38 years, it's preservation of the home and the neighborhood, not just the home, but the entire district. George, and that's more power to him, and the LLC that Renee is part of, are in it to make money, that's just a fact. The house that they purchased a year and a half ago belonged to George Waters. It was purchased for close to $1 million. It's now worth considerably more. It is not affordable housing. If you go to the website, it's a small, there are four small bedrooms there, each bedroom is between $1,000 and $1,800 a month. That would not qualify as affordable housing. The other, George and I have talked about, the ADU that they wish to build, it's a thousand square foot ADU. It would not be impacted in any way as a non-contributing property, and you can verify that with Molly in her office. All they would need to do is conform to certain design guidelines. The concern I have, and George has told me this, is that eventually he would like to get his zoning change, and that, I realize, is a different issue, but the only protection we have from the eventual demolition of that property and the conversion of that critical edge, that is the edge of the historic district. That's the edge of where the Second Street thoroughfare is. That's the only buffer we as residents of Pill Hill have to the incursion of developers and other individuals coming in. So to the extent that George then wants to demolish this, you know, at one point he told me he wanted to convert it into a commercial parking lot. There's a wonderful tennis court there. Now, the other point I do want to make is even though it's non-contributory, it's very much a part of the history of this neighborhood. That lot, 825, was actually part of our property, well before we bought it. That was subdivided in the 1950s, and the Waters residence, which is now the LLC ownership, was built. In fact, there's a wonderful staircase that goes down the hill to this beautiful tennis court that has now become a parking lot, which is really sad to see that happen. But that is just the start of what will happen. And again, Renee, this is, nothing personal, but this is just different goals that each of us have for these properties. Our goal is to maintain the heritage that we have, and you can't just say, "Well, if it's non-contributory, take me out," because those properties contribute to the overall district, they contribute to the overall feel of the district, the overall value of the district. If you allow that, there are 20 other non-contributory properties, they're all going to come forward, and they will be at risk with developers who want to buy it, and then the whole purpose of having a historic district is undermined, because you'll have essentially historic homes punctuated by, you know, whatever else developers choose to build there. The problem is, this is really prime real estate, it's close to downtown, there's enormous interest in, you know, commercial development, and if you allow some of these non-contributory properties to opt out of the district, I think it's just going to destroy the whole effort. The last point I want to address is this concept of property rights. Yes, we all believe in property rights, I have property rights, but, and this came up at the HPC, and the chair of the HPC commented on this, she noted, yes, there may be few individuals who don't agree with this, but the neighborhood, 98, 99% of the neighbors have decided this is what they want. So the rights of that individual have to be considered in the context of the broader rights of the community that wants this. If the city council is really serious about historic preservation, I would just draw the analogy to zoning. If the neighborhood decided to have a certain zoning, I couldn't come to you and say, "Well, take my house out of this zoning, because I don't agree with it." That's what the common good is for. So I think for all those reasons, and the fact that this boundary as proposed, including 825 Third Street, was extensively vetted, there was public hearings, it's supported and approved by the HPC, it's supported and approved by the neighborhood, it's supported and approved by the state Historic Society, there should be no reason to change these boundaries as they are, especially putting that entire district in that corner at risk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Mr. Bransford. Step forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Council, Mayor. One of the reasons that I used to sit in Mr. Miller's seat is because of intrusive development. The Falwell neighborhood at one point was a little island, beautiful little neighborhood, lots of families, people walking their dogs with their kids. Then we got a huge development, and guess what we have now, several years later? A sea. A sea of rental properties. No families walking their dogs. It has completely changed. Now we have the row homes up on Sixth Avenue that are a stone's throw from Pill Hill. We had R2X come through, which I adamantly opposed and helped get out of Pill Hill and eventually voted no for because we don't need intrusive development in the area. Falwell, Pill Hill, what have you. So I totally support this district as is, particularly for the reasons that the last speaker spoke of. They, there are ways that the non-contributing properties can do what they want to do. So I was a strong supporter of the downtown historic district, big time. I believe that I was one of the people that led that effort. We kind of, you know, the boat sailed a little bit on downtown. There are some historic properties there. We really were just throwing a bone. And I hope that we don't make the same mistake with Pill Hill. That we don't let it get eroded. That we keep that boundary as defined intact. Because it's going to be nibble, nibble, nibble. And we're going to, guess what? Have a sea of rental homes amongst the historic homes that are there now. So I strongly support keeping the boundary as is intact. Can only imagine some of the conversation that's going to be up here. I know how it goes. But stay the course and keep that boundary intact. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bransford. This is a public hearing. If you wish to be heard on this item, please step forward and state your name. And you have five minutes.
Hi, my name's Kevin Reynolds. I'm actually the administrator of the old Rochester, Minnesota Facebook group. Just short of 28,000 members. And Dan Larson posted a post and I pinned it to the top. Out of 15 years I've been running this group, I've never had such a huge response of people contacting me to the point where I had to tell them, I do not sit on the city council. I live in Maywood, lived there for 29 years now. So I kind of live in a little bit of a historic district myself. And I, it pales in comparison though to as far as architecture overall and the depth of it that Pill Hill owns and has and their belongings. Having lived here my entire life and I was telling the group that I was going to kind of speak on it as a group conscious because I actually got notes from the East Coast, by the way, from quite a few people that lived in Rochester, some that lived on Pill Hill, West Coast people that contacted me. And they just wanted me to say on their behalf that they are strongly wanting this district to stay the way it is and the boundaries to stay the way it is. And they're praying that it's going to stay the way it is. I was kind of blown away that I got this many notes like this. My group gets busier and busier all the time. And in the immortal words of John Kreisel, you know, it's stewardship. He always tells me, Kevin, you're a great steward of Rochester. You know, I share a lot of history with everybody here in the city. And I hope that you also take on that duty of stewardship and keeping this district the way it is. Because that's what it is. It's being a good steward of Rochester. There is one house, by the way, that's not listed in your information. It sits in the ground behind the three homes on the corner of Fourth Street and Tenth Avenue. It was C.C. Wilson's home, which was called the Castle. In 1918, it burned and it was pushed into its foundation in 1922 and covered up with topsoil. Most of its belongings are still sitting in those backyards in the foundation. So that home is still there in the ground. So that's another home that you don't know about that actually should be on that list. It'd be a wonderful thing to see the artifacts and what would come out of that ground. If I was ever to own one of those homes, that's always something I actually would do if I could, you know. Anyways, appreciate taking the time to listen to me. And I really hope that the word stewardship comes into play when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Next up, we have Mr. Skolnick.
Hi, I just want to mention a couple of things. Number one, and I don't think this was mentioned in the hearing, the vote at the HPC was unanimous. There was no negative votes at all. And the boundaries of the, that include the non-contributing property were done by the consultant. Molly and the staff looked at it very carefully and they actually believe that the boundary should include that property because it's right on the edge. And Molly, everyone knows this, that the staff is very flexible when they review requests from homeowners and from people to try to make internal changes that they would want. So if it's at all possible, Molly and the staff will do that. I mean, I think sometimes people fear it just because they don't want to, quote, "lose control", but they're not. It's just, they're just protecting the district. And so they're not going to be able to sacrifice anything when it terms, in terms of their housing, in terms of their goals. Molly will look for the general welfare of the district and what happens within it. So if they want something, it will probably happen. If it's something that's like, something unusually bad, then maybe not. But it's 99% of the time, Molly will side on this and properly so with the owner. So I don't think they have anything to worry about. That's my feeling about that issue. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Skolnick. This is a public hearing. If anyone else wishes to be heard on this item, please step forward, state your name, and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is John Hendrickson. I live at A20, Third Street Southwest. My wife Andrea and I, and we are also next door to the Kozlas and the Rice house. And I think we are concerned about that house being taken out of the district, especially if that house were to be taken down and put into, you know, a commercial property. And so, you know, we feel like we're stewards of this home. We've been here 10 years. I think we're maybe only the fifth owner and it's a 100-year-old property. We also, I don't know if you know, but we have this large open lot right by our house, right across from the foundation. It almost looks like a park. You know, and that's something that we've always wanted to preserve for the neighborhood. You know, it's nothing that we would ever develop. And so we kind of come to this as, I think pretty much everybody here is, like, we want to preserve exactly the way this neighborhood is. And so I think I object to that home being taken out of the district. I think everybody has made a good point that if they do need to do parking or whatever, I'm sure the city would work with them. I'm just concerned that that house would be taken down and replaced with commercial property.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If you wish to be heard on this item, please step forward. This is a public hearing. If you wish to be heard on this item, please step forward. State your name. You have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Katie Hyder. And I'll just be brief, but I want to express support for the historic preservation of the Pill Hill neighborhood. I'm a resident and have three school-aged children. We really enjoy the character of the variety of homes as well as the variety of families that live, from the big houses to the smaller houses. It's a really unique attribute that we don't see in newer neighborhoods where they're more homogeneous. And I think for us, we moved from a bigger city, from Boston. And when we were looking at where we would move, that draw of this neighborhood, that historic neighborhood, felt like a really big asset. And I know I have other neighbors that have expressed that too, coming in from elsewhere, others that have grown up there their whole lives. So just thank you for considering.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If you wish to be heard, please step forward. And you have five minutes, but you don't have to use it all.
I'm Richard Roadheffer. I live at 604 Ninth Avenue Southwest for 37 years. I very much support this effort. We bought the house knowing that it would take 40 years to fix it up again. We're almost there. And I expect we'll continue to work on it for the duration. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If you wish to be heard, please step forward. Seeing none, this is a public hearing. At this time, I will close the public hearing and invite the applicants back up. And you have five minutes to address any issues that came up during the public hearing. And take it away.
Thanks very much. As you can tell, we've had a lot of positive comments. It's been really consistent with my whole experience this last year and a half through this whole process. My chance actually has been wonderful to talk to neighbors. A lot of people approach me with questions about what are these restrictions? They get down to specifics. Can I have solar panels? Can I put something on top of a detached garage? And I wanted to just address my neighbor. Renee, thank you for being here. I'm sorry we haven't had a chance to talk before. And I am actually really, really excited to hear that you are a proponent for affordable housing in Pill Hill. That sounds really, really cool. I am so, so sorry. It has been really, really hard for you. It sounds like it has been a huge struggle. And so I've not heard--
Mr. Larson, if you can go to the microphone. It's important for the recording for our city clerks' office. So if you can address us, that would be great.
Oh, certainly. So I think there might be a misconception on this particular example of what heritage overlay, the restrictions from heritage overlay, in a non-contributing property in Pill Hill, requesting an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit for affordable housing, I don't think that would cost anything. And as far as I know, it would be approved within perhaps one day or a few business days at a type-one level review. And it would be a drop in the bucket for the other challenges that a homeowner would have to go through to get an ADU just for regular city things. And that heritage overlay would be a drop in the bucket and almost no hindrance to doing that.
To follow up on that, one element that we discussed at the HPC is actually how valuable historic districts are in community development at this point. A number of years ago, it might have been more expensive to develop something. And certainly, we have people that have put a lot of money into their homes. One of the great things about a district like this is that they get the help of the HPC and city staff in making appropriate changes to areas that are within guidelines that preserve the value of not just that house, but that entire neighborhood, that keep that neighborhood vital for everybody. So this is a great opportunity for that, for those owners, to build on ADUs and other housing that really represents that and builds and adds to the character of the neighborhood. Also bring up, there was the concept of zoning and stepping outside of it. Bring up the fact that we wouldn't have Grand Central Station today in New York if Penn Central had prevailed in 1978. That's when it was determined that if housing was used as zoned and there was an expect for a reasonable return on investment when it was purchased and it was for the good of the whole, that it was not considered a taking. That's still standard preservation law and one of the leading cases in it.
Great. I just want to add a couple of comments again. Having worked very closely with Molly and looked at these restrictions because we needed to explain them to our neighborhood. We had many, many meetings over the past year and a half. And so I've come to understand and review them that for a non-contributory property, I just don't see any real burden, especially to build an accessory dwelling unit. There's not even a cost for the application. And there's not really any restrictions to the design of that. It's more of an informational review and it almost certainly would be approved. Demolishing a structure is different. It doesn't require approval, but it's the replacement that is the issue. And just showing you a couple of things, though, is that when you look at this property, you might say, well, wait a minute. Doesn't it look like it's on Ninth Avenue? That's Ninth Avenue there on the bottom of your screen. But you look a little more closely and you'll see, no. Actually, you see that little lane that comes is the extension of Third Street. And then you see those historic homes. So this is on Third Street. It's part of the original boundary. That's why it was done that way, probably for the National Register. And right near that block, which is an unusual block of homes, it's kind of hidden almost, right adjacent to that is the foundation house. But look at these pictures. This is up on the hill. This is a clear demarcation from Second Street. And I would argue that this boundary is going to be, this is going to be the gateway to the district. So that's why it's important. It's a pretty big chunk, so I didn't show it perfectly earlier. But if there's a change in the boundary, it seems like it needs to be for a really good reason. I just haven't heard a reason. I don't see anything that's that expensive to add to the burden of an ADU. And this is showing you from the other perspective that the cost of building something here probably has a lot more to do with the steepness of the hill and those 130-year-old rotating walls than anything else. So thank you very much.
Look forward to answering any more questions during--
Thank you. If you can have a seat. And if my colleagues have any questions for you, we will invite you back up to the microphone. With that, I will turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. These are questions, I think, for Ms. Patterson Lundgren. I've asked a question like this before. Who is it that determines the years that make it historic for designation or not? And I'll go even further. Why isn't 1955 historic?
Sure. Yep. Yeah. So Commissioner, sorry, Councilman Wall, thank you for the question. As you can tell, I'm used to actually working with the commissioners and not as much with city council. Yes, so that's a really good question. And it, so it's, who makes that decision, right? So ultimately, right, the city council is the one who decides what the, you know, if it meets the historic significance and if it should be designated, right? So ultimately, it's the city council who makes the decision. The decision is based on the documentation that's compiled by professional historians. So what we do when we look at a property and we look at what's contributing and non-contributing and what the period of significance is, it's an iterative process. We say, okay, you know, what do we think it's significant for? Architecture is an example. Okay, what's the period of significance? In this case, it starts with around 1900. Now, the National Register has a standard that they say anything less than 50 years is not typically considered historic. So we use that as a guideline as well, the 50-year mark. And then you say, okay, does it have historic integrity to that time period? So it's this iterative process to make that determination. And ultimately, what's being brought to you is that package based on that decision-making process.
Okay. I mean, I would guess that perhaps a house built in 1900 in Boston might not be considered historic.
Well, I would guess that--
Is that a question? Yeah, it's a question.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I think that there are probably a lot of homes in Boston from around 1900 that could be considered historic. Whether or not they're designated in any particular program is another question, right? What action, whichever government level decides to take to designate that and what their criteria is might be different than what we do here locally.
And a second question, and my last question. Say something bad happens. We actually even heard one example of it, a fire and a house got pushed in. If a fire were to happen, what can be rebuilt within a historic district?
Sure. Yep, yep. So let's say that it's a full demolition, full loss, right? It was a contributing property. It's basically no longer contributing. And so we would look at it as what's called new infill. When we'd look at infill, new construction within a historic district, we're primarily focused on the form of the building, the pattern that it plays within the block or the street. So if you think about the downtown and the very different pattern of buildings, right? The experience that's very different than as you're walking through Pill Hill. So we're looking at the size of the building. We're looking at the setbacks. We're looking at, quite honestly, a lot of the same things that are covered in underlying zoning. And then we're looking also at the material. We're looking at the, you know, what type of materials they're using to build it with. What we don't want them to do is we don't want them to make a direct copy, right? We don't want it to be faked. So we're looking for something that kind of straddles that line. And it really, it really is up to the property owner to make-- And it really, it really is up to the property owner to make a lot of those decisions, and we try and guide them with that. But there's quite a wide kind of berth for them to use to make, make choices of what the infill should be.
Thank you. Councilmember Keen.
Yes, thanks. I have questions for the petitioners. And we've heard a lot already about how the district was, like, we came from what was the, in the national to this. But I'd like to find out about some of the edge conditions. Have there been discussions that this property was in and is not, or somebody wanted in and was not, and somebody wanted out? Have there been some adjustments like that? Or has this, the integrity been that the consultant makes all the calls or the city weighs in? Or what has happened since we started through that process? Have there been some exceptions?
Great, great question. One thing I will say, we've had more people who are outside the boundary who wanted to be in the boundary than anyone who was in the boundary who did not want to be included. So the original National Register boundary, one of the key things for our consultant and even our discussions with Molly was, is that still a valid boundary? Are these still, are these homes still meeting the criteria of our ordinance and, you know, what got it on the National Register? So as we looked at that boundary, then that's why we need a professional. Because in fact, there were discussions from the HPC actually proposed that perhaps the National Register boundary of Pill Hill should just be made a local landmark district. There are some extensive recordings of that. And then city staff appropriately said, you know, you really need to look at it now. You need to validate it. And Minnesota Shippo told us that, too. So we started with this boundary. And then Bethany and her colleague, Mr. Zahn, looked themselves. We made boundary videos, all kinds of things to determine. And in the end, there really was almost no room to expand the boundary. The homes had changed, the period of the homes, there was very, very little room to expand. And there wasn't any real reason to contract. The main thing, as I told you, were there were, the boundary happened to cross some parcels. So that didn't seem like a very good idea to have part of your yard in the district. The changes we made, and they're all in Bethany's report, are on Ninth Avenue Southwest, there were three LRB homes from the period of significance that were very, very intact. And we didn't understand why they weren't there, so they were added. The only other, all the rest of the boundary is essentially the same, but it's being cleaned up to make sense. Except for there was one on Seventh Street, there were some unusual aspects of that particular boundary. And there was one property owner of a contributing property who, early in the process, engaged in our neighborhood meetings and really preferred that his property not be in. He had more of a burden because he's a contributing property. It also isn't a very important boundary.
So if I ask Ms. Gladhill, I just want to make sure there wasn't any sort of like opting in or opting out or fighting in or fighting. Again, just, this is more of a very specific, there wasn't any sort of negotiating on and off? This is very, very much done by the objective criteria and nothing else?
There was not. I inspected the boundaries, walked through them, looked at them. I did not engage with any of the homeowners to talk to them about, hey, would you like to be in here or not? I didn't know who owned what homes. So it was a completely objective view. I will say that I did take the National Register as my main guideline because I've seen more cases and not when a National Register district is different from a locally designated district, that's caused some severe problems. Where I live in St. Paul, there's a neighborhood just south of my neighborhood, which is both a national-registered and a locally district. The neighborhood just south of us is only on the National Register, so it does not have local control. That has caused some issues with demolition and construction that have actually put a greater burden on the homeowners in that area. Those homeowners now have to go through an environmental assessment worksheet because it's in the National Register and not locally regulated. So they actually have a greater burden. I'm kind of thinking they'd prefer to be locally designated at this point, but I can't speak for them.
And again, I'll ask Ms. Gladwell, this is kind of a follow-up a little bit. Councilmember Wall got to this a little bit. But I'm trying to get my head around this whole non-contributing, and then if they have to, if this, if they rebuild, it has to do to a standard. I mean, and the silliest thing would be they have to make it historic because it's a new house, so it's not that. But then it sounds like building standards that we're applying in the district that don't apply in other places in the city? What are you really making them do?
So you're correct. You don't recreate history. In fact, the Secretary of the Interior Standards prohibit that. So you cannot be correct and to say, build a French chateau in a spot in this. They don't want you to be recreating history or making something that looks like it was not there. What they're trying to do is follow the, again, that sense of place. So we're looking at sensing amassing setbacks, averaging of setbacks, the kind of scale of the homes. In this house, in this neighborhood, there's a lot of variation due to the topography, due to the different, we showed some of the larger homes, some of the smaller. So I don't think that there's a lot that, you know, you're not going to have to recreate the, the size and scale of the Prairie House that's three blocks over. But you do want something that does not stand out as an enormous six-story cube in the middle.
But this is where I think we're really getting to the thing. And I'm going to look to staff now. It would follow the zoning at this point? It wouldn't follow a new standard that the, someone's going to control and say it has to match what the neighbors want? Because this is the private property issue I want to make sure we don't get into.
Sure. Councilmember Keen. Yeah, thank you for the question. Correct. So it's really about something that is, that's not incompatible with the neighborhood. I would, I would go that far to say something that, and it still would be under our ordinance, under our design guidelines that have been adopted, it still would be a type two review for, for a new principal structure in the district. But, but we're not asking them to copy it. We're asking them to do something that's not incompatible with the district. And as Ms. Gladwell mentioned, Gladhill mentioned, because there is such a wide variety already in the district, I mean, I'm having a hard time coming up with examples of what wouldn't be allowed.
Okay. And I don't want to leave it to faith here, but I want to make sure that we're not getting caught up in someone saying, no, someone, some group is going to say, you need to do it this way. Is it a type two review under staff's review using zoning guidance? Or is it something that I don't understand?
Type two review is an HPC review. They make the decision. It's appealable to city council.
Okay. That's, that's what I was worried about. Last question, I think this is more for the petitioners. But the number of people who have written me, mostly in positive, mostly wanted this, they, part of their motivation is this idea of they don't want to be rezoned. Is that a misunderstanding? Or is that something that's been, where is that coming from?
I would not say that most of the people we've talked to understand the difference between zoning and heritage preservation overlay. This topic did come up due to the proposal for R2X rezoning. And in fact, where we're talking on Third Street, that was MXT, whatever. That was 85-foot-tall buildings along Third Street was part of that proposal. So it came to light because many property owners and others in the city actually thought that the National Registered designation with the plaque protected from demolition. So it got started because of that. Now, it's hard to get every single person to understand that. But I think the majority of people understand just what I said, that if you have historic properties and zoning changes, the properties are protected, they can adapt, you know? So maybe my neighbor has a cool coffee house where their home is, or maybe some of these larger homes are used and there are fourplex. That is not prohibited.
Okay. And a question for, a couple more here. A question for staff. There is some properties, as best I can tell, and I've been around there, but not for a while, but that are not visible from the street. So when you get into facade, what does it really mean to be historic if they're not visible from the public?
Right, right. So again, with the, the design guidelines, and I know I showed you a quick clip of it on the screen. And a type one review is required for projects, a type one review is, is a staff-level review, is required for projects that are not visible from the public right-of-way or public property, right? Like you backed up on a park, for example. So really, the only reason that it's a type one review is somebody has to make that determination, right? Is the project visible? There are some homes that are, yeah, internal to a block because of the way the lots were split up. And, you know, almost nothing of the, of the homes can be seen. So, right, it's what is the project that's being proposed? I would look at it, make the determination if it's visible or not. And then if it's not visible, I would approve it.
Okay. So let me state it differently. What we're really dealing with here is the facade from the public perspective. It has to be protected. And if it's not in the public's line of sight, it doesn't end up getting that same protection.
That's really where our focus is, and that's where judgment calls have to be made.
Okay. All right. And again, last question for staff again. On this discussion of boundaries, I've had these discussions with staff before that the boundaries really were in control, the petitioner, the consultant came in with it. Have there, have there been like solid discussions on the boundary must end here or should have, should have extended and should not have? Or what, what can I, what do I need to know as we go forward?
Right, right. So we've had a lot of discussions on the boundaries. It's, it's not, it's not like a scientific equation of what's in and what's out, right? It's this iterative process that I was explaining to Councilman Wall. You, you look at, why is this area significant? What makes it significant? Which are the properties that make it significant? And then you make a determination about what makes the most sense to make it a district, a cohesive district. There is some ability to, you know, for malleable changes to, to the boundaries when you designate. But this is what is being proposed and what I, I am also recommending is what, what's in front of you.
Good. Thank you. Again, I really appreciate the group that kind of pulled us together. And I kind of really admire the, kind of the admiration for your own, your own community, and it's admirable.
Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, thanks again. Just a couple of questions for staff to clarify things. So I believe there was a guidance on how long an applicant might expect to wait for a decision on a type one review. Is there any guidance on how long this process for a type two review particularly might add to a project length?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for the question, Councilman Miller. Yes, so type two reviews are reviewed and decided by the Heritage Preservation Commission, who typically meets monthly. There is no requirement for a public hearing. All the public can comment at a, at a certificate of appropriateness review, is what it's called. So we, we specifically don't do public hearings so that that doesn't add to the timeline. However, we do need time to prepare the documentation and to bring it to an HPC meeting to get the agenda posted. So typically, if somebody gets in at least 10 days before, I will get it on the next HPC meeting. If they were to come in a couple of days before the meeting and I didn't have the ability to bring it to the HPC, it would have to happen the next month. There's also the chance that a meeting could be postponed or canceled due to a holiday. So there's a lot of variety there, but typically, it's going to be within that month.
Thank you. A question for the applicants. So I've had the opportunity to be part of the neighborhood meeting, the HPC review, and now tonight. And there have been a couple of folks that I've heard in public comment at the public hearing, particularly at HPC, express comments in opposition. And I just wondered if you have any comment on engagement with them after? Was it a misunderstanding?
Yeah, great question.
So what might you say about?
Well, I will say that one person who spoke at the HPC admitted that he had only seen the documentation that day, partly just because of some other miscommunication, expressed concerns. And now with further information, he certainly has much lesser concern. And it really, you know, chose, didn't feel that he needed to oppose it. I think he's more in favor than not.
Thank you. Another question, so with this concern of 825 Third Street Southwest, should it, and I guess this is a question probably for staff, but maybe for you, Ms. Gladhill. If that were removed, the requirement for a district is to meet one of the eight conditions. Is that correct? Or at a minimum for significance, one of those eight criteria should be met, correct?
For the district as a whole?
Yes.
Correct. And the, yes, and the district is, meets five.
And so being that it, which is amazing, if this property were removed from the boundary, would that fundamentally change which of those conditions were met? And if so, how?
Because this is a gateway to the district, I think that has a greater role than were this a house that were buried within the district. The boundaries themselves did not necessarily affect the integrity, except for the way they deal with the topography. And you saw some of the slides that showed the topographic map, and also Martha had some slides that showed the elements. So that's outside of the, an important element that feeds into the district, but not necessarily into this house. My biggest concern about that is because this rise is so much higher, because if that were taken out and there was an ability to later rezone or to do elements like that, it could create some serious problems in the one main gateway. When I first came to the district to try to find, that's the way I came in. That's the way most people that I've spoken to that walked around, that's the way they come in. I understand that's the way the trolleys come in. So I have a photo standing at the foundation building that looks out to the, outside the district. I can't figure the direction at this point. That has a new apartment building in it that's really disruptive to the district. It's not in the district, it doesn't affect it, but it's jarring. And that's my concern with this property, that if something were to happen there, that it would be extremely jarring and potentially disrupt the district. Whereas keeping it in the district gives it the opportunity for all of the advantages of being in the district, including the, the greater value of the home and the greater support from staff in HPC.
Okay. Just, I think a couple more questions. So to reiterate the question that Councilmember Keen asked, in the H, no, in the Neighborhood Information Meeting, looking at the map that was presented, there was the additional property on Seventh Street Southwest, correct?
I think I can answer it, actually. So on, on Seventh Street Southwest, at the Neighborhood Information Meeting, we highlighted that that boundary, that, that map actually that you saw was something that city staff had drawn based on what we had from the National Register. And however, the night of that meeting, we already clarified that there were some properties to the western edge that actually, one reason they're shown on some of the, on the not-boundary boundary map that's in the National Register was because they originally tried to get them on the National Register, and the National Register came back and told them no. So at the night of that meeting, I think the only difference, because we had Xs over those, was 1104, there's two homes. There were only two homes that were different there, and one was a non-contributory. That particular boundary, I should say, through neighborhood engagement, we had other people who said, this is kind of an awkward extension. Maybe we should just not, and this is all detailed in Bethany's report, by the way. Maybe we shouldn't even have Seventh Street. Also, if you look at the Homestead County property records, it will say that some of those homes are in the Plummer neighborhood, and one is in Pill Hill. So that's why we did make it smaller because of that. But I think there's only, only two homes that are different, and that was because of engagement with the property owner who engaged with us over a period of three months.
Okay. But I guess just to clarify, it's from the Neighborhood Information Meeting to HPC, there was a property owner that, that directly engaged you and said, please remove my home from the boundary. And then to HPC, it was removed. And it's not in the map that's presented to us as recommended tonight?
It's not in the final application because that was the decision after, actually input from our consultant, Bethany. Molly also had discussions with this person, but it was felt that for the, the good of the district, it was felt that this was a home, it's not really a very important part of the boundary in our mind, and we thought it's the loss of the homeowner if they really don't want to be in it. But they do have more of a burden because they're a contributing property. Probably, they might be asked to come back in at some point, who knows?
That's, that's also an area where, again, we tightened up that because it was scattered with non-contributory homes around that, it was an opportunity to kind of clean that line.
Okay.
I've, I've got a couple of questions. First, I, one, I commend you for all the grassroots work that your team has done. So I have a couple of questions along those lines. One, if you can really talk about the efforts that you've made, I think it was, what, 109 contributing properties and 20 non-contributing? How many of those that you actually informed that they were going to be a part of this? And if you can kind of talk about your, your community engagement effort?
Yeah, great question. So again, HPC first brought this up in August and September of 2023. Around that time, then, and the two pathways presented were neighborhood-initiated versus city-initiated. The city-initiated process was expected to take years. I wasn't sure it would happen in my lifetime, to tell you the truth. So we decided on that neighborhood initiative. We started from there. initiative. We started from there. There was a petition that was started for Pill Hill, and in a very short time period of the contributing properties from the National Register, we had 70 or 80% of them in favor of this district, recognizing that of those that we had contacted, that was, you know, almost 100% were in favor. Then, we went through an effort to contact every homeowner, realizing that you don't always have an email, but we put flyers in the Thanksgiving of 2023 in people's mailboxes. This continued over this whole year and a half, even until recently, if we found out, oh, there's a new owner at this home, then I've either personally sent them a flyer or dropped it by their home. So, there's probably very few people that didn't get anything, that didn't get any notice. So, I would say the majority have been contacted. Now, some people are just more neutral. As far as support, it's somewhere in the range of 75 to 80% strong supporters. Maybe, you know, so if you have 80, then you might have 15 or something that are neutral or unknown. And again, we've actually only heard from really two individuals that, as of today, that were not, that were in the boundary, that were not interested in it. So, that's a pretty overwhelmingly positive. Also, I will say, thanks to Molly, because of the history with the downtown district, remember that you had 88% of the property owners opposed. We are the polar opposite of that, and part of that was this community engagement. So, we held informal open houses, but Molly made a big effort to send an additional notification that was not required by the ordinance, and it went out around August to early September of 2024, and established a landing page on the city website that explains what is the historic district, what are the restrictions, all these things. So, that was extremely helpful to us, because then we could link to that. Lastly, I will say, there's been pretty much media on this. Quite a few post bulletin articles, Star Tribune, KIMT, KTTC, I don't know, Dan's a media guy.
And social media.
And social media. So, there's been pretty much outreach. Is there somebody that really never looked at their postcards? They've gotten at least three postcard mailings from the city.
So, you've done a lot of community engagement, and one thing that you haven't mentioned is you actually fundraised to pay for your historic preservation evaluation. So, what, next question is, if we do approve this going forward, what are you going to do to keep up that communication to new homeowners, homeowners that want to make changes to their property, whether they're a contributing home or a non-contributing home? Have you thought about that?
We have thought about best ways to communicate with the neighborhood, and I think there are a variety of ways or platforms that that could be done. I know I asked city staff, is there some type of mandatory notification? And apparently, there really isn't. It's kind of like knowing the zoning of the house that you buy. So, I don't know all of those details, but we certainly would do everything in our effort to educate new neighbors about this.
Then, one last question for staff. So, can you talk just a little bit more about the non-contributing properties, and what, if anything, they cannot do with their property taking out demolition that would make any changes that they could do to that?
Council President, I make sure that I understand what your question is. So, in terms of what would be required for a non-contributing property to make changes to
Exactly.
To their properties?
Yes.
Yeah, so alterations to the property are what we refer to as a type one review, and that is the staff-level review, basically because somebody has to make a determination about, you know, whether or not more is required if it has to go to the HPC. So, I would be looking at it, and really, alterations to the property, I can't think of anything that wouldn't be approved.
I'm going to pose you a question.
Yeah.
And I'm a surprise Green Bay Packers fan here in Minnesota. What if somebody that was a non-contributing property wanted to re-sign their house in green and gold?
Sure, yep.
What would staff do?
Yeah, so first question that I look at is, is a permit required? So, is a building permit required? And I'd have to verify that. I don't believe it would be required under our building code. So, contributor and non-contributing, that would not take any additional review. If I found out the alternative, that it was a requirement for a permit, I look at it and I say, is the change that they're making, does it impact contributing, a contributing feature to the district? I say, no, it's a non-contributing building. It doesn't impact that. So, I sign off on it.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Miller.
Just one last question, and sorry to add one. I wasn't quite reading my handwriting. And I'm looking back at the neighborhood information meeting to today, and just trying to get my head around just some minor changes that I've noted. So, in the neighborhood meeting, St. Mary's Park was color-coded green around sort of the entirety of those parcels in that area. And then, in the packet we have now, the northeast corner of that green space that's labeled St. Mary's Park has a variety of small parcels, but no dots on them, red or blue. Can you talk about that area? And I'm not sure if that's a question for the applicant or for staff. And Molly, you're raising your hand.
Yeah, I can answer that. So, Councilman Miller, we actually had our GIS team help us with the mapping. Oftentimes, when there's a zoning application, we've got a consultant who has a GIS department. In this case, that's not the case. Our GIS team had already been working on a map of the Pill Hill area for other purposes, and so I just continued to use them as a resource. I asked them to switch the underlying base map to more clearly reflect where the public park is located. And that's one of the things is that when you look at that early 1990 National Register map, they didn't have that level of detail, and that's one of the reasons why there are changes that needed to be made, because it just didn't have the detail that was up to date.
And the other detail is that we reviewed the legal description of the National Register boundary, which is what they use in every newspaper article and whatever. And then, Molly, using her resources, that followed exactly. Whereas, the original map was just slightly different because of a parcel that's owned by St. Mary's rather than the city. So, there was no other change. And that boundary that you see is exactly the National Register boundary.
And you mentioned St. Mary's. Is St. Mary's or Mayo Clinic the owner of those cobbled-together parcels that are now color-coded white?
So, those were never, I don't think they were. I think they were always colored that, to tell you the truth. But anyway, as far as any vacant parcels, they never have a red or a blue dot on there. But I think that some of them are owned by Mayo Clinic in that area.
And maybe a question for staff. What is the little needle jet out?
Sure.
To the north there?
Yep. So, the city property, the park property actually does go through the parcels that are owned by St. Mary's.
And that's just a right-of-way easement to?
It's actually a property line. Yep, that's based on the tax parcels.
Any other questions from councilmembers? If not, is there anyone who would like to make a motion on this? Councilmember Palmer?
Yeah, I'll make a motion approving the designation of a proposed Pill Hill Historic Landmark District as detailed in the submitted application, and directing the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for first reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Palmer and seconded by Councilmember Fredericks. Further discussion on this item? Councilmember Palmer?
No, I think it's been a good discussion, and I'm looking forward to having this be approved.
Councilmember Fredericks, anything to say?
Happy for these people.
Other discussion? Councilmember Miller?
I actually would like to make a motion to slightly amend the northern boundary, and I sent staff a map, because I do have concerns about how some of the parcels have come together. And I want to honor the property rights that this individual who came tonight to speak, I know it's hard to have the courage to come and speak in opposition to something, but I am proposing that we realign the northern boundary as shown in this map, which would include eight individual parcels. The majority, some of those are owned by the city, some by Mayo Clinic, as noted, and then there are three parcels associated with 825 Third Street Southwest. And so, this is a motion that I would like to make.
I'll second.
Motion made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Keen. Further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, again, I just feel like in the discussion, I appreciate the level of community engagement, and I want to honor that. And I live just southeast of this district, and have been asked by so many people, why is my house also not in along the edges of this boundary? And a boundary has to be drawn somewhere. I know that there are modifications from the 1990s map to this map, and so, again, with such a clear ask from this property owner, it's not contributing, it's at the boundary. That's why I'm making this motion.
Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, again, I expected this to come up, and I was doing some other work. And I actually looked at the whole St. Mary's Park, and I was struggling with the idea why that was included. And again, just some different discussions with gateways and things made me think, okay. But I have always, I'm still trying to get my head around districts where you've got contributing properties, because as I watched this ordinance come to be, it was very focused on individual properties, and districts were a secondary thought. But for the last eight months, we've only focused on districts, or mostly mainly focused on districts. And now, we have this new concept of non-contributing, and it, to me, it's a, it is an extension of what I thought we were trying to do with historic preservation. So, I support this with the idea that there's a non-contributing parcel on the edge, and it can be taken out and still protect the integrity of the district.
Councilmember Palmer?
I will not be supporting this amendment, because we heard from other neighbors that were very adamant that we not take this out. The staff is not recommending taking it out, and the consultants not recommending taking it out. So, the homeowner who owns it, sounds like they're going to have financial reason for keeping it out. So, I won't be supporting your amendment.
Other comments on the amendment? Mayor Norton?
Yeah, I guess I'm concerned with the amendment, given the discussion that we've just had, prolonged discussion about this being a gateway property. And it concerns me that we're ignoring the consultants and the guidance of the city, the HPC, and others because of that gateway designation. And so, I guess I'm, I would prefer it to be passed as originally suggested for that reason, because of the gateway significance, and hope that others will see that as well.
Councilmember Fredericks?
We have lots of room for, in this great community, for high-density housing. Pill Hill's not an area for it. It is, I'm a huge advocate for personal property rights. So, it's hard for me to tell people what you can and can't do, but this area of this community is a very special, you know, for me, for lack of a better word, just a very special place in this community. And you don't have to go far to do all kinds of high-density projects, high-rises, so on and so forth. So, being a fan of old property, I say, let it be a stand.
Other comments from councilmembers? I too will not be supporting the amendment. I think as a non-contributing property, I think it's been clear that those properties can do a lot, and they have very little restrictions, and it really comes down to when a property is demolished. And then, as the consultant and the neighbors and staff have said, then as a gateway property, I think that property should have some cohesion with its neighbors. So, I won't be supporting the proposed amendment. Other comments? If not, is there, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Nay.
No. Clerk Easler, could you call the roll?
Councilmember Keen?
Aye.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Councilmember Wall?
Nay.
Councilmember Fredericks?
No.
Councilmember Palmer?
Nay.
Councilmember Doring?
Aye.
Council President Schubring?
Nay.
There are three ayes and four nays.
The amendment does not pass. We're back to the original motion. Any further discussion or further amendments? Councilmember Doring?
Yeah, I just want to commend the neighborhood for coming forward to pursue this historical designation. Thanks, it just, thank you. I heard a couple of the speakers speak tonight about how Pill Hill speaks to our larger community, and how it speaks to our larger community. I will be supporting this motion, but I would urge the homeowners in this historic district to pursue the just deeds process of moving the redlining that is part of our history in Rochester off the deeds to their properties. I think that is in no way, in my opinion, whitewashing our history. But if this designation is going to speak about and to our community, I think we can make the efforts to say that the historic properties that we are keeping are inclusive and welcoming of all people. So, I would urge those homeowners to engage in the just deeds process.
Councilmember Fredericks?
I would like the residents of Pill Hill to know that I will veto any green and gold siding.
Is this a motion? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Miller?
So, I just want to say that I am very much in support of the district, and I know some of you may not hear this. I live just south of the property, chose to prioritize living in this area for exactly the same character, the walkability, the access to downtown. The zoning has changed. This has been a longstanding, evolving neighborhood, and I know that it can continue to evolve even within historic overlay. I know that we had some disagreement. I think this is part of the public process. But I would encourage the applicants and the homeowners to continue to pursue the good, supportive process of providing resource libraries, working with contractors. We have lived in several historic districts in other towns, and the support has been one of the major things that have kept those together. In Iowa City, we lived in a neighborhood that did an annual historic preservation project award ceremony, and it was actually through that process that we were able to find a painter for our 1896 house to be able to do lead remediation when we had a young child, and to do it well, to do it safely, and to do it in a historic way. And so, again, I applaud this effort. I know it's taken a lot of time and personal resource, and I look forward to supporting this motion.
Well, I just want to echo what Councilmember Miller said. I'm just so proud of the grassroots effort that this neighborhood took. And I was serving as the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission when the zoning overlay came through, and the ideas of really taking it on and really looking at a historic district overlay, and taking it on yourselves as well as a neighborhood, and fundraising to get support for that, and then the outreach that you've all done to your neighbors. And as I said in my questions, I really look forward to seeing you continue that outreach through your neighborhood association over there, and continue the connection with Molly and the HPC. And I will be supporting this wholeheartedly. And with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, say nay. We have unanimous support, and we will take a 10-minute break.
Recording stopped.
Hearing that's required through the special assessment process through state statute, chapter four twenty-nine for this evening. Tonight's public hearing, as part of the actions we will request with the project, we'll be ordering the improvements to be made for our team to prepare the plans, for you to adopt a resolution, setting the next hearing. We have the assessment hearing that would occur in March, on March seventeenth, as well as ordering our team to prepare the assessment role that would be presented at that meeting. And that is the number that would be mailed out to each individual property owner so they understand the assessment to their parcel. Just real quickly, as I mentioned last month, the assessment policy that was adopted in the last few years is such that we're assessing less than used to occur. We're taking the street items, so the pavement, the rock below the street, the curb and gutter, driveway approaches, and any miscellaneous grading associated with prepping the street. Seventy-five percent of that cost is paid by the city, twenty-five percent is paid by the property owners, and it's based on the property valuation. So with this project, overall, the estimate for the total project is one point one five million, of which currently we would bring back to you a number next month that will be somewhere around one hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. And at that meeting, property owners would have the opportunity to contest that assessment. They would need to make sure they let us know before the meeting or at the night of the meeting. And then there's a certain process that they would have to follow as part of the state statutes. So really, tonight, we're here, like I mentioned, the four actions our team is asking for. We'll be back next month, and I'm available for questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Dombrowski. At this time, I will open up the public hearing. This is a time for members of the public to comment on this item or ask questions, and staff will answer questions after the public hearing. So this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, step forward, and you have five minutes. State your name.
Amy Coakhead, I just have a question. That's a school that I volunteer at a lot. Does the school district pay half since they're half of the property along this street?
Will answer the question after the public hearing.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. Any anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And Mr. Dombrowski?
Yeah, thank you. Again, one other thing I wanted to acknowledge, we had an open house at the Sunset Terrace Elementary last week, and we had seven neighbors that attended. So it was a snowy Wednesday night, but we had relatively good attendance when you consider there's only, you know, a smaller chunk of properties impacted by the project. Again, the assessment policy is based on property valuation. So the school district's property valuation is much higher than those residences. So a large portion of the assessment is paid by the school district, and this is nothing new. We reconstructed sixteen and a half Street Northwest on the south side of the school two years ago. And similarly, when you base it on the property valuations, the school district paid a large portion of that assessment. So just looking at, as we're starting to look at preliminary numbers that were in your packet, the school district is ninety-one thousand approximately of the one hundred and forty-one thousand that will be assessed. So more than half of the assessment will go to the school district.
Questions, Councilmember Palmer?
I think we talked about this last time we had a discussion about it, but you're putting some road calming efforts in this, correct?
Correct. So we've looked at, with the school district, at the northeast corner of the school, so at Nineteenth Avenue and Seventeen and a Half Street is where they have their crossing guard. Been out there observing at times where crossing guards out and cars are weaving, you know, between the crossing guard and the curb, and have had a lot of close calls. And so what we're going to do with this project is add curb extensions, what we call bump outs, to shorten that crossing. And really, all you will have is the two lanes of traffic at that intersection, making it much safer, as well as reconstructing all the pedestrian curb ramps on the project to meet ADA standards.
So if I understood that Twenty-first Avenue, you have bump outs there. Is that what we're talking about?
No, at Nineteenth Avenue.
Okay. And so you won't have any bump outs on Twenty-first?
We'll have to look at the design with the team. It's very possible we'll incorporate them at that location as well.
Because at this time, they don't add a lot to the project.
No, they don't. And that's not something that gets assessed to the property owners.
So the next question, my last question is, is if I remember correctly, the reason that we're basically doing this is because the water main is leaking? Is that correct?
It's, it was number three on RPU's list of priority areas based on the number of breaks. We also have sanitary sewer that's greater than sixty years old, so approaching the end of its useful life. Storm sewer that is undersized and/or not enough intakes based on today's standards with the rainfall totals that, you know, have changed over the years with design. So it's, as I've always mentioned, it's the opportunity to, if we need to address one and the others are, the condition is, it's whether it's a condition, capacity, whatever it might be, this is the time to do it. Have one disruption to the neighborhood, and, you know, this will last, the street will last for fifty years with the proper pavement preservation that our team does.
Thank you.
Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, I don't want to read too much into the fiscal and resource impacts. You said that the assessment is twenty-five percent of the street improvements. It looks like it's more than that. Can you help me walk through that between the amount that water, utility, sewer, and storm is paying? It looks like the assessment compared to the street reconstruction fund is not twenty-five percent.
That's because the the street reconstruction, it incorporates everything, including some of those items that are not accessible to the property owners. So we're using some of that to reconstruct those corners I talked about, as well as the, just the utility cost share as we break it out by the different utilities and the age and what's driving the project. I can dig into more detail on the exact split with the team and send that out to the council after.
If you could, just to, I mean, this is preliminary. We're not sending out things yet, but it almost looks like, if I just look at what the street reconstruction is, if that were the only portion, there, it looks like the assessments are much more than twenty-five percent, it was not less than.
Yeah, I'll have to look into that with the team because.
And I don't know who else wants it, but if you just send it to me, that would be helpful.
I'll send it to the entire council because it's helpful.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Administrator Zales?
I just want to point out that one thing that has come up in these meetings before is that we also preliminarily assume a water service assessment, which may or may not happen on each of the properties, and so that is a part of that increase. And so I don't know if that's helpful to you.
That might be, because I can't get the numbers that I have in front of me to add up, but I, I'll watch for Mr. Dombrowski's note.
Is Councilmember Miller?
So thanks for mentioning the open house. In addition to being a snowy night, it was also a pretty packed night of public open houses across the city. I wondered if you might just preview some of the themes that were coming up specifically around the street reconstruction, the change in design. Were people open, favorable, any concerning elements coming out of those comments?
I would say it was not a contentious meeting at all. It was more informative, neighborhood wanted to understand what are the impacts, not only the assessments, but just the project? How am I going to get in and out? How do you address mail service, garbage service? When will the project occur? So it's going to occur during the school, when the school's out of session in the summertime so we're not impacting those operations? It was, it was really just a lot of general questions about project impacts.
Great, thank you.
Is there a motion on this item?
I'll make a four-part motion here. Number one, ordering the improvements within the reconstruction of Seventeen and a Half Street Northwest from Nineteenth Avenue to Twenty-first Avenue Northwest. Part two, ordering preparation of plans for the reconstruction. Number three, adopt a resolution setting the assessment hearing for March seventeenth for the qualifying portion of the cost to be paid through assessments. And number four, to order the preparation of the assessment role for the reconstruction for that project.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Keen and seconded by Councilmember Miller. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passes. Moving on to item G three, which is a vacation permit, and we have Desmond McGill to present this to us.
Thank you, President Schubring, Mayor Norton, members of the council. Good evening. My name's Desmond. I'm with the Community Development Department. The applicant, SCK LLC, has submitted an application to the city to vacate a three-hundred-and-sixty-foot-long alleyway by fourteen-foot wide. And it's located in Lot Ten or Block Ten of the Zumbro Addition subdivision plant, and this is located in Uptown, in the Uptown neighborhood. Subject alley runs east to west, just north of Second Street Southwest, and between Eighteenth Street Southwest and west of Highway Fifty-two. The vacation will allow for unutilized alley right-of-way to be incorporated into a larger parcel for future redevelopment purposes through a minor land subdivision in the future. This alleyway does not facilitate vehicular access, or are there any utilities in there? The applicant does own twelve of the thirteen parcels adjacent to it on the north and south side, located in, the last parcel on the south side is owned by MinDOT. Lots eight, nine, and ten of the subject block were wired by the Department of Transportation in two thousand and five for the development of Highway Fifty-two. And I had a conversation with them last week. It was noted that the agency doesn't have any current plans for those properties, but they may need them at some point in the future for potential off-ramp improvement or expansion purposes. As such, the agency acknowledged that they have no objection to the alleyway vacation. So both staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of this alley vacation. And I would be happy to answer any questions after, after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. McGill. Would the applicant, is the applicant here, or their representative? If you step forward and state your name, and you have ten minutes.
My name is Andrew Ringel. I work for Woodseth, and I'm here representing SCK Developments at this meeting. Thank you, councilmembers, President, and Mayor Norton, for your time here tonight. As Desmond mentioned, this is an alleyway vacation for the middle of those nine lots. Currently, it's unused, and with the vacation, the property would definitely be, in our opinion, would definitely be better able to suit the uses of the zone and the potential district. I'll be available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call you back after the public hearing. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If there is anyone here who wishes to be heard on this item, please step forward. Anyone wishes to be heard on this item, please step forward. I will close the public hearing and invite my colleagues to ask either the applicant or staff any questions. Councilmember Palmer?
I have a question for staff. There's three lots there. I believe that you're saying that MinDOT owns those. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And they might want to use it for expansion. So the brown lots, are we, is there some, I know we're not talking about the rezoning on that yet, but is there some way to protect it if MinDOT comes in and says they want to add to the highway that we're not going to goof ourselves up in the long run?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't see how the alleyway being vacated would impact expansion of the Fifty-two.
And I agree with that. I guess I'm asking the next question. The next question is, is when they come in to say we're going to build a building there, which I'm going to assume they're going to do, with the roadway not there yet, are we going to, in ten years, if they put a road in there, are we going to have a high-rise that says we don't want a road there?
Yeah, are we talking about the MinDOT properties?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, yeah. In my conversation with the right-of-way division, they indicated that they have no plans to develop the parcels or to sell them for development purposes.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, I just want to ask the applicant, or just get a reading here. When I look at this map, I see the access is either through the, if I look at the properties, the five properties that are right on Second Street, there's access from Second Street or from the alley. When the alley closes down, it's only Second Street. If this property doesn't end up moving forward, this whole plan of consolidating and doing one thing here, I would say those, some of those properties would only have access off Second Street, and Second Street's going to be the bus rapid transit. Is there any concern that they're going to want to have delivery or something there that's not going to be possible?
To the best of my knowledge, there is minimal concern of that, and the applicant is pretty confident that the development will move forward, and any potential development wouldn't need any sort of prohibited access from Second Street.
Yeah, and so let me just ask staff, is there, like, when we give up this access from the alley, could anybody claim that they need access from Second Street, that it's going to be contrary to our plans?
Councilmember Keen, I think the only one that could do that would be MinDOT with those three properties, the two that freight base Second Street. As you can see, there's like a sliver in front of the other parcels that are part of the applicant's property that would prohibit access on those parcels regardless.
Okay, so that's the key thing, is that there's that other sliver that that would be the access to these things if they stayed the way they are?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Miller?
A question for, I guess, the applicant. I'm looking at an overview of the satellite image. Looks like the majority of these parcels are just surface parking lots, and I don't appreciate that there's a particularly developed alleyway. Is that correct? Over.
There isn't, yeah. There's nothing there.
Right, so I'm just trying to look at the map, and it doesn't seem that there's, while there is a right-of-way for the alleyway, it doesn't appear that there is actually a developed navigable base.
Yes, Councilmember Miller, you are correct. There is no developed alleyway. Right now, it's unused grass.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Any other questions on this item? Is there a motion on this item?
I'll.
Councilmember.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving vacation petition, CD twenty-two-four-zero-one-zero VAC by SCK LLC for the vacation of the fourteen-foot-wide alley right-of-way within Block Ten West Zumbro Addition subdivision plant.
Second. Moved by Councilmember Keen and seconded by Councilmember Doring. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to our final public hearing, which is the property tax abatement for relocation of Parks and Forestry Operations to the Public Works and Transit Operations Center campus. And we will have a staff report by Brian Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Council President Schubring. Resolution approving property tax abatement for the relocation of the Parks and Forestry Operations to the Public Works and Transit Operations Center campus. This item has been before the city council, and what we are looking for tonight is for the approval of the property tax abatement, the use of that bonds. The project itself is a forty-three million dollar project, six million for land, seven million for the building redesign, and thirty million for construction. And that consists of six-point-four million dollars in twenty-thirteen sales tax. That was used recently for land acquisition for this project, nine-point-five million in ex, use of excess twenty-thirteen sales tax, fourteen million in state grant funds that were secured last year, eleven-point-eight-five million for the general obligation tax abatement bonds, which is why we are here tonight, and then approximately one-point-four million for the city's future, from the city's future acquisition account. It has been recommended that the city use the general obligation tax abatement bonds for a fifteen-year term. This proposed financing package will save the city approximately one-point-eight million dollars in interest expense and reduce the previously calculated annual repayment amount by five-hundred thousand dollars annually. Should this get approved tonight, the other processes that will be coming forward before the common council will be on March third. That'll be a resolution authorizing the sale of the general obligation tax abatement bonds as per state statute. And then from there, on April seventh, the sale of the bonds will take place in the morning, usually around ten o'clock. And then that evening at the council meeting, the council will be asked by resolution to approve the sale of the bonds. And with that, with the tax abatement bonds, we have used this twice before, once recently in twenty-twenty-three and another in twenty-twenty-four. So it is another tool in our toolkit of the seventeen issuances. Again, we've only used it twice. This will be the third time. But a lot of our other debt issuances that we have out there are either like lease revenue bonds or revenue bonds or tied to some other funding mechanism. So that's why we've not had a use for this in the past. So with that, I can stand for any questions.
Any questions at this time? If not, I will open the public hearing on this item. This is a public hearing. If you wish to be heard on this item, please step forward and state your name. This is a public hearing. I will close the public hearing and invite my colleagues. Councilmember Palmer?
I have only one question. That is, this twenty-thirteen sales tax excess money is nine-point-five million. How much more is left in that account?
I think that pretty much drains it down very, very close. We didn't want to get down to the exact thing, but I don't believe there's going to be any excess left. We're still closing out a few projects with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Wall? As I read the alternative actions, this provides the most financially savvy way forward for the city to finance this project.
Yeah, the abatement portion will provide sixty-two point, no, sixty-four-point-two-seven percent of the, of the amount to be paid, actually. So approximately two-thirds will be paid through abatement. So yes, that was more than actually the twenty-year term.
Thank you.
Believe it or not.
I have a question. Mr. Anderson, you mentioned that we've done this twice in the past, used the tax abatement bonds. Can you, you or maybe Administrator Zales, talk about, is this something that we may expect to see more going forward in the next few years as far as a tool that we would look to using?
Yeah, it's a general obligation bond is what it is. So we take a look, and we talk with our financial advisor as well, too, to see what the best use or the best type of bond that we want to use. So a lot of these other ones that I mentioned, like we have, well, we have four of them that we're going to, I'll show you later tonight, that are underneath the EDA as well, too. So they are tied to like a revenue source, and a lot of these are tied to a revenue source. So we don't immediately jump to the use of an abatement bond unless we have to, but it does provide us with a nice option, as obviously abatement does use that in the foreseeable future. I don't know that there's another project out there that I could point out right now that we would use it for, that I can see.
Is there a motion on this item?
Sure. I'll make a motion adopting a resolution approving property tax abatements for the relocation of Parks and Forestry Operations to the Public Works and Transit Operations Center campus.
Second. Moved by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Palmer. What's that? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. We are on to our reports and recommendations. H one is zero emission bus assessment report, and this will be presented by Transit and Parking Services Mike Collins.
I'm not Mike.
I'm sorry.
Council President, Mayor, council members, I'm Yehoshang, Transit and Parking Director. We also have here Mike Collins, who will be presenting. He's our transit project manager. And then online, we have our consultant Hatch available for questions. I just want to provide a quick overview of the department and where we're at with our vehicles, and then turn it over to the experts. Oops. All right. This is our organization, our department right now, Transit and Parking. What I wanted to show here is our, for us, there's two contracted operators, one for transit and one for parking. And then we have our city teammate staff. We also have our departments that support us. The reason why I show this is that about six years ago, our department was a staff of about approximately three. So we have grown. We have definitely provided more service, different types of service, and there is just a little bit more complexity to transit and parking. As a summary for transit, we have different types of services. Our fixed route, which is our big buses, our ZIPs, paratransit. And then we have our microtransit pilot called RPT Go. And then, of course, our bus rapid transit in the next year. As you see on the bottom there, we have different types of vehicles. We have diesel buses, our forty-foot diesel buses. We have four sixty-foot EV buses. We have our, the cutaways is what our paratransit vehicles. And then we have three hybrid minivans, and then three electric SUVs. So that's currently what our vehicles are. And then for bus rapid transit, these are the services of the bus rapid transit. We are currently, if you look at the bottom there on the left, there's twelve sixty-foot electric buses that we are currently in the process of purchasing. And that will then be included in our fleet. As you can see, we have a mix of diesel and electric. And I will, I think with that, I'll turn it over to Mike to explain why we're here today.
Sure. Council President, councilmembers. Why we're here today is, I think it's important to maybe rewind a little bit. And we were, we had the opportunity to avail of low and no grants and bus and bus facilities grants in the past. So we have had some successful applications. In twenty-nineteen, we received two EV buses, similar to what you see on your screen. In twenty-twenty-one, we received two more. And then in twenty-twenty-three, we received a grant for the Seventy-Fifth Street Park and Ride and our bus stops improvements. And in twenty-twenty-five is when we hope to receive our final grant for the North Broadway Park and Ride. A couple regulatory things have changed since these prior successful grant applications. Now, if we are to apply for future EV buses or for facilities that involve an EV component, the FTA is requiring that we have an EV transition plan, which is the plan I'm presenting to you here today. So this is a federal requirement if we are to avail of these grant programs like we have been successful for in the past. I should say as well, just as a note, this is a living document, so anytime that we're talking about grant applications, it is contingent upon those grant applications being successful. So what we'll present in the following slides will be affected on how successful we are with our grant applications, and then that'll affect the timeline and so on. But just an overview of the funding programs that we're talking about. The bus and bus facilities grants, I've given a couple examples of what these grants have funded for the city of Rochester in the past, but they can range from anything to replacement rehabilitation of buses and related equipment, such as our chargers, things of that nature, new facilities, anything kind of related to bus stops, park and rides, bus depots, those types of things. Low and no emission programs, that's primarily focused on low or no emission vehicles. So that could be hybrid, hybrid vehicles, fully electric vehicles, liquid, sorry, hydrogen natural gas, liquefied natural gas, sorry, and compressed hydrogen. So those are the types of vehicles that these two programs can fund, and so that is part of the reason for the report. Another component of the report, so there are requirements for the FTA that they have that you're required to include in these reports when you do them. That is a long-term fleet management plan. So that's, that's a very important note because they study our current fleet, they analyze the lifespan of our fleet. A current diesel bus lasts for about twelve years, and so that retirement schedule comes into, comes into play when, when discussing this. It also analyzes resource availability. So that's in reference to these grant programs. And then policy legislation, facility evaluation, supplier partnership, and workforce training. So really, what they're trying to do is they want to make sure that if you are applying for an EV bus or a grant that has to do with your facility, that you're doing it in an educated way, in a prepared way, that is kind of moving in a systematic direction and not really kind of a hodgepodge of different, different things that may or may not work. So that's really the purpose of this, is to make sure that it is a cohesive plan and that your applications for these grant programs are done in a cohesive manner. So a couple key findings that I just wanted to present to council. So as part of this plan, we studied our, our current. So as part of this plan, we studied our, our current bus routes, our current buses, and a few things that are noteworthy. One is that 69% of our current blocks can, can transition to EVs tomorrow. So the, the battery capacity on EVs can pick up those routes in those blocks straight away. The additional 31%, those can be, those can transition to EV with some modifications to the way we do our blocking. And the way you do your block is essentially the way you interline your buses throughout the day. So if you give a driver a work shift, that usually they'll run different routes throughout that day, but it will encompass an eight-hour shift or however long they're on the route. So that's, that's good news that a lot of our blocks, we don't need to make a change to. So if we had an EV bus, we can simply put it on those nearly 70% of routes straight away. The additional changes that might need to take place, that's a relatively easy change. Those are just really playing with your blocking and making sure it'll work. On the other side, you'll see that the vans and the cutaways, this is primarily for ZIPs. The technology for those vehicles has not advanced as quickly. So those are less feasible at this current time of the, of the routes that we currently run for ZIPs and paratransit and we use our cutaways. EV vehicles in this world, sort of in this realm of service, are only feasible for about 14% right now. We hope that this technology will grow over the, over the number of years. We're starting to see some progress there. But right now, the technology is just not caught up to the demand that we would, we would require of those vehicles. So the transition plan, we wanted to keep this plan in line with the city goals, with the state goals of kind of a clean transition by 2050. And I believe the city goals are to cut down greenhouse gas by 30, by 50% by 2030 and by 100% by 2050. That's the timeline that you're seeing presented here is us abiding by that, by that, by that city goal and transitioning our fleet to, to a fully electric or zero emission fleet by 2050. Like I said at the beginning, this is a contingent upon grant funding. So this timeline is, it is a bit of a living document, just depending on how successful or unsuccessful we are with these programs. And so really what we would hope to do is apply for, it's, it's not always realistic to get a grant every single time you apply. We've learned that we've applied for grants and we didn't get them. So when we apply, we would apply hopefully every, you know, as frequent as we would like. But the ultimate goal in order to stay on schedule for our 2050 transition is about six vehicles every three years. So that is, that's kind of the timeline we're looking at as we, as we begin to kind of look at this transition. And what is being blocked out a little bit by the letters there at the bottom, you guys might have it on your screen, is a phase one and phase two. Just to provide a little bit of context on that, phase one is our, is the capacity air current transformer at the PWTOC. We already have some electric bus infrastructure up there and some chargers and that we will reach capacity probably by about 2030, 2031, if this plan goes according, if this transition goes according to plan. Phase two is with the expansion with a new transformer and with that expanded capacity. So also as part of, as part of our transition, we do need to procure more chargers. So that kind of takes me back to that last point I was trying to make, that we do have a current transformer that will reach capacity eventually, but we will need to kind of make an expansion if we're to complete the full transition by 2050. And this is really just laying out how many chargers we will need. The current chargers we have each have three dispensers each, which means you can charge three buses at one time with one charger. So this lays out the amount of chargers we would need, not necessarily the amount of dispensers. So as part of this, this plan, we did assess the facility where we currently are located at the PWTOC. Part of that is assessing the electrical infrastructure that we have. The other part is assessing capacity, which we'll get to both here in a little bit. In terms of existing capacity that we have on our one transformer, you'll see in the one graph that there is that black line. That's the black line where we're going to need to make another large investment, get another transformer and begin to look at how we, how we can do that and then obviously add the chargers that will, that will come after that. And then the, the chart on the right really just lays out the number of vehicles and chargers and dispensers required. Facility assessment. So one of the good things that we did when we made our first purchase of four electric vehicles is we, we prepared for future expansion. So actually, our facility is already pre-equipped for, for this expansion. We obviously would need the new transformer when we got to that stage, but we do have existing room on our current transformer to accommodate new chargers. That's kind of what's being displayed here. If you look at the kind of the bluish green lines, those are our current chargers. We are getting two new chargers down at West Transit Village, that's a little bit separate. But what you'll see demonstrated in the pink would be future chargers. And this is the layout of the current PWTOC. So if we were to go full EV transition, this is the amount of kind of chargers and dispensers that would need to be displayed throughout our facility. And the number of buses that we're projected to have at that time, we should still fit in our facility as long as there's not unexpected growth that, that we, we can't foresee at this particular time. So the capital plan, doing some of this is expensive. So they also, as part of this assessment, we assessed how much it's going to cost. And this really lays out how much it's going to cost for phase one and phase two. So during phase one, it is going to cost a little bit less. That's going to be about $11 million. Again, most of this is if we are successful with our grant applications, the grant applications that we are applying for usually cover 80% of the cost. So that 20% would fall on the city, whether it be retained earnings or some other, some other form of, of coverage. So for phase one, we're really looking at just over about $2 million worth of city costs to, to accomplish that, that phase one goal. And during phase one, what, what you're seeing displayed on the, in the total numbers that you're being, is displayed on the, on the screen, that includes both vehicles and chargers. So phase two is, is more expensive. It's also a longer time period. And that would cost roughly a total of 35.6 million in today's dollars. Obviously, this is an extended plan that goes out to 2050. And some of this is, is subject to change and that is why this is considered a living document, not necessarily something that's set in stone right now. So to kind of summarize the plan, the grant opportunities that we're, we, we plan to apply for, they're competitive. So to, the ones that we are hoping to apply for, they will cover 85% of vehicle costs. If we are to apply for infrastructure and facility costs, they would cover upwards of 90%. The traditional match that we get from the federal government is around 80. So that's what the, the projections and the cost projections that you've seen on the previous page, that was based off an 80%, just because some of this might be, might be facility, some of it might be vehicles. And it usually just doesn't end up around that 80% mark. This plan is required to apply for those fundings. So, so that's why I'm here today. That's why we went through this process of creating the plan. And then the funding application is with the detailed implication. So if we are to make a funding application, if you include your detailed plan, most of the time that puts you in a better position to avail, to be competitive when, when you make those applications. Kind of a high-level transition summary. So 100% EV is achievable for our fixed route with some operational changes. That's good news. Rochester doesn't have a large number of hills that are mountains that would prevent us from using EV technology. So we can achieve a 100% emission-free fleet. Paratransit, that goes back to one of the earlier slides, the technology in that realm has just not progressed to the, to the level that, that is required at this particular time. I will say they are making strides. I've been seeing a few vehicles come out over the last number of years, but that will probably take a little longer and we're not 100% sure if that will coincide with our 2050 goal. The facilities, we, we would require some upgrades. Obviously, we would require new chargers. We would require potentially some, some minor different layouts, but really we would just have to equip our facility to accommodate the extra electrical infrastructure and lay it out in such a way that, that gels with our operations. And then, as I said in previous slides, phase one is a little bit cheaper because we're working with our existing transformer and that would cost around $11 million. Phase two is a little bit more expensive. That is also a longer period of time. That's about $35.6 million. And a full transition is about $46.6 million from now until 2050. And then with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Wall?
The current federal administration seems to be less conducive to supporting these kinds of efforts. Is that considered in terms of this plan?
So yes and no. So it is considered in part of the, when we went through this plan, we had gone through a couple different iterations. One was a little bit more of an ambitious plan that would get us there in 2041. The one we've presented to you is the longer range plan. And the reason we presented the longer range plan was because we considered that. In terms of the future, the, the administration and some of the changing in priorities, that kind of remains to be seen. As of now, these grant programs are still available to us to, for, to apply for. Until we get notice otherwise, our intention is to proceed, but I, I see he has come back up and she might have more information.
Council President, Councilmember Wall. So if you recall, last year, of course, it's, there's lots happening, but last year we initiated this plan. And in that process, we obviously didn't know what the future was going to tell. So the plan is in the works. It's in the works. It's done. It's completed. We're, we have this plan that if there is still continuing the federal program, that we are available. This is available and it's ready to go. So it doesn't set us back, but it definitely helps to keep this plan moving.
And a second question that may be in our favor, would you see any potential for a breakthrough in charging, chargers, batteries, EVs that would somehow reduce prices in the future?
Reducing prices is always a tricky one. Electric buses are more expensive than diesel buses. There's no doubt about that. If there is improved technology, it's possible those prices will come down. But we would have no way of knowing. What I will say is that the charging infrastructure has, has generally caught up. That, that is, that is getting there. And even the buses, the first generations that came out in 2017, 2018, those types of first iterations of these electric buses were less reliable than the future generations that, that will be getting, hopefully for the link service and things like that. You know, the reliability is improved and things of that nature.
Maybe I'd like to, if our consultants are online, they are the experts on that. They see more than we do. So if they are online, if they have anything to add.
Yeah, hey, everyone. Can you, can you, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you if you want. Could you say your name and then just go ahead?
Yes, yes. My name is Mehir Bodaria. I was project manager for this particular study and I'm with Hatch as formerly mentioned. So just to answer that question about the cost of the vehicles, what I would say is that the cost in relative terms, in terms of the amount of energy that is packed in the battery pack has come down. So if you look at the cost per kilowatt hour of energy that the battery packs can store is, has gone down. So essentially what we are seeing is the newer and newer buses that are coming out or any type of vehicles for that matter that are electric, come with higher storage capacity. So since like 10 years ago, if you look at some of the bus models, they, they had seen at least 3% to 5% improvement year over year in terms of the energy density. And so you get the longer effective ranges out of these battery packs. So eventually it will get to a point where the range will be sufficient and you could start having the same cost, I mean, you could start having the same same amount of energy onboard and the unit cost dropping. And that I could see resulting to lower unit costs of the buses themselves. But, but yeah, that, that's what I would say. That's what we have been observing in the industry.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Wall? Councilmember Palmer?
Just a quick one. Money wise, you, you said 80%. So that leaves us with $2 million. Where would you get that money?
Council President, Councilmember Palmer. Currently, the way our funding goes with our vehicles is that it's funded through the state. And so their program is only based on diesel. And so when the buses are scheduled to be replaced, which is on about a 12-year useful life, they will provide a grant for us. And then when we do have that, we would pursue the federal grant on top of that. So there will be a mix of federal funding and state funding and then other available funds. Our funding has always been 20% roughly with our regular diesel buses. And so whatever difference that is, is where we would then have to assess and see what, how we can make up for that. Whether it's retained earnings, whether it's a new proposed tax levy, which has never been done before. But that would need to be considered before we even apply. We'd have to make sure we have those, what that funding looks like.
Council President.
Oh, go ahead.
Council President, Councilmember Palmer, I think it's really important to share that, at least in my understanding of the current transit retained earnings, there's not enough based on this project. And so the local, a significant amount of local, if you're talking about six buses a year, assuming there's federal grants, which I think is a very large assumption right now, based on what we're seeing, based on what the language has come out. We don't know yet. The landscape is moving every day. But that is not in any of your trend lines for the tax levy. And if you're talking about approximately $300,000 per bus needing to have local share, that's like $1.8 million a year.
So, so I'm just gonna, I'm all for a plan. I think it's great. And we don't know what the federal government's going to do. I understand that. But I don't, I mean, right now, our property tax does not go to our bus service. And I would not want to approve this if that's the thought that we had is that we're going to go to the property tax. So if we're not going to the property tax, I'm all in favor of this. But if we're going to go property tax, I'm not in favor of this, this plan. Administrator Zalms?
Maybe I can clarify. I don't think you're deciding that this evening because there's a lot of unknowns. But I think this plan shows that if you were to move forward at this pace, which is a living document, is what we've heard six times this evening. If, even if all of the federal grants were available, there would be a significant conversation that needs to happen about how you were going to meet the local share. But adopting this does not mean that you have to follow this exactly.
Can I just add to that too?
Oh, go ahead.
So this plan is not committing any funding source or any funds at this time.
Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, I, I think, I, I mean, I realize this is a plan being presented to us, but I think it would be good if the council did formally vote on accepting it as a plan and it's not a commitment to spend. But I would like to make the motion to receive and file the zero emissions bus transit assessment report for Rochester Public Transit provided by Hatch and Associates and Consultants.
Motion made by Councilmember Keen and seconded by Councilmember Palmer. Further discussion, Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, again, I, I did have one question when you talked about Rochester's good because we don't have as many hills. But early on, there was a huge problem with winter heating. Has that been resolved through other methods than using the, the main battery?
Yeah, so all of our current electric buses, they do have diesel heaters, which allows, which allows us to increase our range when we're running. And those diesel heaters, they don't, it's, they don't emit that much emissions. The gas tanks quite so.
And I think it was one of the early problems in like Duluth and these other places. So I just wanted to bring it up because I think it's important that, that be solved and not be draining the, the, the main bus battery.
Mayor Norton?
Yeah. So first, thank you for the plan. Appreciate it. Keeping us toward our goals is important and we're going to have to go with the ebbs and flows of both policy changes as well as the financial changes, which get better over time for a lot of these products. So I'm anxious to keep watching the trends. I think it's worth noting that there are other benefits to this that we don't often talk about, which is talk about, which is Rochester's been doing a lot of work on air quality. Having this many buses being converted to... From diesel and gas, but diesel to electric, will have a significantly positive impact on air quality. So, I think that's important in our city for health to remember. I did have a question about your timeline that you were talking about. One of the things I've heard, and maybe it was just rumor and misconception, but that there's a large turnaround time for between the time you make an order and you get a delivery. And so, as I saw your timeline, it said 25, 26, 27. Are you able to get them fast enough?
Yeah. So, I can speak... We're actually in a... Going through that process right now for the link buses. And we had our contract, I think by the time it finalized, it was either late spring or early summer of last year, and we're due to expect the buses to arrive on site, the first one at least, in midsummer of 2025. So, that just gives you an idea of timelines. Of course, it can change depending on how busy the manufacturer is and things of that nature. But in our experience, it's about a year to a year and a half, just obviously depending on the manufacturer.
Yeah. That's really helpful, because since some of the other folks I've been talking to, it was much was years with an S, not just a year. So, that's great.
I think a lot of that backlog was COVID, and we're hopefully getting a little bit past that particular stage.
Great. And then, just to your point earlier... My screen did something funny. A lot can change with technology between now and 2050. I mean, the things we're talking about and purchasing now will evolve a great deal between now and then. So, I appreciate that it's a living document. And Council... Well, I'm not sure which one brought it up. One of the councilmembers brought up the issue with the federal. Was that you, Councilmember? Yeah, well, the changes at the federal level. And so, there's this mixed messaging about whether EVs are going to be in or out. And if the EVs are in, is the charging out? I mean, so, we're just going to have to play it by ear as we move along. The last question I had, and maybe it's for the consultant, and maybe it's here. I know with my electric vehicle, over time, I've saved money because I haven't purchased gas since 2017, haven't been to a gas station, and I can track the amount of electricity I use. Do we have... I know buses are larger and, you know, harder to run than a car is. Are you able to have that comparison about what savings do you get by not purchasing gas? And I will say, I have yet to have a mechanical issue with my vehicle. So, I also don't have oil changes and all those other things that are... So, have you had... And maybe you haven't had them long enough for some of that comparison, but I wondered if... I didn't see any comparison to if you had stuck with gas.
Yeah. So, sorry. We do have technology that tracks how efficient our buses are, and then it tracks the charging, and it tracks a lot of that. It's a little bit difficult, because we don't have 60-foot diesels. So, it's not necessarily an apples-to-apples comparison. But we do have technology to show. I think one of the main things that we would like to... That we hope to see is if the cost of the buses themselves go down, because then that would make that a lot more of a lucrative purchase. And hopefully, that is the case in the coming years.
Yeah. So, if I'm understanding correctly, the gas to electric isn't the issue. It's the price of the vehicle themselves that really sets it off.
Yeah. The upfront cost is higher. Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Miller.
Yeah. Thanks for this report. I think it's great. Just a couple of questions. I know, again, living document has come up a few times. Obviously, changes in technology, some of these numbers are in today's dollars. Are these updates that can be made at the staff level? Or is there a suggested update frequency that we would expect to reengage a consultant on this project over time?
I think most of the updates, as long as they're just relatively like timeline adjustments, those we do plan to make at staff level. If there's a significant breakthrough in technology, or if we had been unsuccessful for a period of time, we might need to reevaluate. But if it's, you know, just a year or two down the road, we expect those adjustments to be made in-house. Yep.
I can add to that, too. So, if you think about it, if we don't purchase according to that schedule, it just builds up. And then, our diesel then just gets added on. And so, eventually, if we... If 2050 is the goal, then we're going to need to purchase 50 buses at some point in time. So, and then, something needs to be adjusted. So, eventually, we'll need to update it. But... And then, also, it depends on what the... If there's new federal requirements and what the change of the... You know, what it looks like.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions on this? If not, there is a motion on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passes. Thank you. Moving on to our second report, which is the Destination Medical Center Strategic Redevelopment Funding for Second Street Public Realm Enhancements. And this will be presented by Josh Johnson.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, Council President, Councilmembers. Josh Johnson, I'm the City Strategic Initiatives Director. So, happy to be here to provide a brief presentation on the Gerard Second Street Public Realm Enhancements Project. This project was presented and approved at the February 6th DMCC meeting. So, this... I know several councilmembers were in attendance for that, so this is sort of following a similar presentation. So, the Gerard Second Street Project, we're requesting to authorize approval of utilizing DMC Strategic Redevelopment Funds to help support the Second Street Public Realm Enhancements. The amount we're requesting to authorize is $2,372,500. The split out or the rationale for that number is DMC did commission an independent appraisal to quantify the land value. That ended up being about, or not about, but $1,442,672. That's essentially purchasing three residential-sized lots in that location. The construction of the mid-block pedestrian plaza, the improvement cost for that, for the paving, the streets, the lighting, the landscaping, everything that goes into it, is estimated at $929,828. This project also includes the development of a four-unit affordable for-sale condo project, which I'll go into a little more details here. Project features, so I already mentioned the four-unit for-sale workforce condo. It also includes this mid-block connection connecting First Street to Second Street. It'll include public space, which we privately managed and maintained. Sort of a bonus element to that is there is a 133-unit Marquary project that none of this funding is going towards the development of that project. The $2.3 million is only focused on the site for the condo and the improvements for the mid-block connection. There'll also be some small retail, ground floor retail to help activate Second Street, as well as activate that mid-block connection. This is just a little bit of context slide. So, Gerard Properties has been a longtime developer, longtime property holder in the city of Rochester. They were one of the first ones to develop a apartment complex on the south end of downtown. They also attracted People's Food Co-op, which has been, you know, tremendous amenity to that neighborhood, providing food and healthy food options to the neighborhood and surrounding downtown. They also constructed and operate the Park Apartments, which is on north end of Cutskey Park. Very notable projects, but I think what's most noteworthy is their connection to the public space, the artwork they include, you know, the public seating options. With the Park Apartments, they worked very, very closely with our Parks Department to make sure that it seamlessly integrates with the Cascade Lake Trail connection in Cascade Lake... Or not Cascade Lake, Cascade River connection and trail connection. So, we have a lot of confidence and faith that they'll do a very, very similar high-quality project here. This is just a slide showing the 25... Or the half-mile walk shed, or 0.25 mile walk shed, sorry, five-minute walk shed around the development site, which is indicated with that black area and green line. It also shows where the potential link rapid transit stations are going to be at. So, the Sixth Avenue is within that five-minute walk shed, and the St. Mary's Transit is just outside of it. The other thing here to note is we often refer to it as superblocks. So, in this case, the block's actually about 1,600 feet long. If you look at other blocks in our downtown, they range from like 300 to 360 feet long. So, it's truly a superblock. I actually measured it multiple times just to make sure that 1,600-foot, you know, number's correct. So, what this does is help, you know, break up the connection point, create better connection from the Cutskey Park neighborhood to the amenities along Second Street, as well as transportation options. This is just showing in that highlighted area, the portion of property that we're acquiring with this funding. So, there are currently two unoccupied homes on First Street that we'd be acquiring to make way for that affordable condo project, and then connecting that mid-block connection, which is about 10,700 square feet. The public benefits of this, you know, the mid-block connection is actually identified, and I could go back here, I missed this, on the first slide here. So, that image on the bottom right-hand corner is actually an image from our Second Street Quarter Plan that was completed in 2009. Those blue arrows there actually show like the connection there. It also states that we should work with neighbors and community members to make that connection happen. You know, 16 short years later, we're able to accomplish that. So, coming out of that plan, we were working with the developer to create a high amenity pocket park to enhance the public realm, the Cutskey Park neighborhood, obviously also offering amenities like coffee, cafe. The plaza itself is going to be closed off to car traffic. Also, in this bottom right-hand picture, you can see a gate there. So, there's going to be a gate that will allow, if hopefully there's never a need, but for fire trucks, emergency vehicles, but also allow for the garbage pickup about twice a week to actually go through there. But it will be closed off to any vehicles. You can see they've identified an area that's a public space. There'll be some outdoor cooking areas here. So, it's also a connection, you know, into the back of the building and behind the building, a connection of that mid-block connection as well. The architects have taken a lot of consideration on creating playful amenities to really attract people to this spot. You know, they realize that just by creating a mid-block connection or a plaza, you know, you need something for people to do, places for people to sit, things for people to interact with. So, that's what the intent here is to show. Also, note that all of the maintenance and operation to the plaza, it will be city-owned, but will have a... Recorded on the apartment project will be the operation and maintenance covenants, so that in the future, even 20 years from now, if the property sells, the owner of that apartment complex will still be responsible for the operation and maintenance. It'll basically run for the life of that apartment complex. The for-sale condo project, I feel like, as exciting as that mid-block connection is, having a for-sale condo project downtown, to me, is even more exciting. We haven't had a condo project downtown since the late 1980s that I could find. The only other condo developments that we've had are outside of downtown, much smaller scale, and they were about 2001 was the last time I could find one. So, in this case, we're the developer Gerard and the city have been working with First Homes. The First Homes has a grant from the MHFA to buy down $124,500 of the cost of each unit. So, the actual construction cost of these units is around $324,500, probably going to be a little bit higher than that. But because of that grant, First Homes can buy those down to sell to people that can qualify for mortgages of up to $200,000. So, truly affordable, you know, workforce housing projects. And then, basically, in summary, so, we're requesting allocation of that $2,372,500 in GSIA, which is the strategic redevelopment funding in our DMCCIP, to purchase the land, work with First Homes to create those condos, and then construct, and the private developer will do the improvements for the mid-block connection. This is just the authorization of the funding. We still have to work on agreements, development assistance agreements, and all the other things that come along with it. But this will get us started on that course. I'll also mention, we did do a public engagement with the Cutskey Park Neighborhood Association prior to the DMCC board meeting. In my six years of doing, you know, project and community outreach, which has been on quite a few projects, this was by far the most overwhelmingly positive and enthusiastic response that we've gotten to a project. And we've provided their letter of support and the packet as well. So, yeah, it's been great feedback thus far. Happy to take any questions.
Great. Questions? Councilmember Fredericks.
Apologize if I missed it. What is the exact address of where that walkway in that four-unit will spill onto First Street Southwest?
Yeah. Thanks, Councilmember Fredericks. I wish I had the exact address. Right now, they're vacant gravel lots that actually don't even have addresses associated to them. But if...
They're on Second, though, the vacant gravel lots are.
Yeah. Oh, on First Street. I apologize, I do not have the exact addresses. I can get them for you.
It wasn't a gotcha question. I was just trying... I wasn't trying to do that to you. Okay. So, do you know the block?
Because it's such a big block, it's hard to find. So, if you can see the... Is it Sixth Avenue, or sorry, Seventh Avenue basically to Eleventh Avenue? It's about in the middle.
So, if you just get a visual on Second, just those gravel lots, I'm basically just behind that then, straight to the north of it.
Yeah, exactly. It's almost like a flag shape.
When I drive through there, I just want to be able to envision it in there. That's all.
Yep.
Yep. Thanks.
Councilmember Palmer.
You and I have gone back and forth in some emails, and so, these questions really aren't going to be a gotcha either. But why are we doing the fourplex?
I think we're being... Trying to be opportunistic. First Homes has the MHFA grant. We've got a willing developer that's willing to provide their, you know, quite valuable lots for the utilization to create for-sale housing downtown. As I mentioned, it's really, really difficult to get condo housing developed anywhere right now in Minnesota. So, being able to develop for-sale housing downtown, walkable to St. Mary's, to all the shopping, the jobs, walkable to transit, connected to a mid-block connection, as well as making it affordable, like those just all seem like wins.
Okay. And the frustration that I'm having is with us requiring parking. And so, you know, the city's requiring them to put 66 spots, and it's cost about $4 million to do it, as those numbers are from you. I mean, my hope is at some point in the next year, we're going to not have parking requirements for the... Along the Rapid Bus. I feel bad that if these people are going to do 66 spots, and then we're going... Not going to, you know, require it anymore, it's going to put them in a non-competitive. Is there a way for us just not to require the parking?
Yeah. Thanks, Councilmember Palmer. At this point, there's no... There's way to reduce the minimums by incentives in terms of bicycle infrastructure proximity to public transit. In this case, the developer, I don't even think we were... If we didn't have minimums, the developer would still want this ratio. For him, you know, he's willing to go pretty low on the parking minimum. The ratio is about 0.6. The actual minimum is 0.5. We often see developers get a little squeamish to go underneath one-to-one ratios. So, even if we didn't have a minimum, the developer would still want to have at least a 0.6 ratio.
Well, I mean, I guess my point being is if we're doing the BRT, and we're investing a lot of money into that, why do we want to have parking lots along the BRT? I mean, they could go park at the north parking ramp or the... Either end of it, they could park there. The city can rent them to them. So, that's where I'm confused. Why should I vote for this to go... Let's put more parking lots on Second Street.
Mr. Yetzer, what's he heard on this?
Council President Schubert, if I can chime in. I think it's worth noting, again, there's an option for the developer to get the requirement down to zero if they so choose through a transportation demand management plan. And this developer is actually choosing to provide, what was it, 17 spaces above the minimum. So, I think you could make the parking requirement zero, and their request would be for the exact same number of stalls that they're requesting. And in fact, they're asking for more stalls off-site than what they can hold onsite. So, I don't think it's the requirement that's driving that need.
Okay. So, help me with my memory. We've got the old Kmart site, and we had to get public parking in there, because we couldn't have any more private parking lots in that area. Is that not right?
Four leased parking lots. So, this... The parking being added here would be serving the building, so it's accessory to the primary use. We can't... What the zoning doesn't allow is primary-use parking lots, parking lots that are just leasing parking.
Okay. I just... My thought is, the question I'm asking is about the parking, and I don't see it right. So, the next question I have for you is, you show a plan from 15 years ago that showed a walking path between Center Street and here. I don't see where we're doing the Center Street path. Is there a reason we're not doing that?
Who's going to take that? Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah. Thanks, Councilmember Palmer. So, in this case, we have a willing property owner that's willing to work with the city to create the mid-block connection. I guess I'm not sure in that map, I guess I didn't see where it said the Center Street connection.
That one, that one there, doesn't that show it?
Oh, yeah, I see that green way. Yeah. Currently, those are all privately owned, and we just haven't had the opportunity, or they haven't contacted us to potentially create that. So without, you know, eminent domain or some other process, which would be exponentially more expensive, it's just not an opportunity at the time.
My last question, I guess, is on your path that you have here. You're showing pavers, which I don't know why we'd want to do pavers again. But the second part of this is, how do I tell my neighbors, you have a neighborhood connection, and it's an asphalt path, but here we're going to do pavers, and we're going to have fountains, and we're going to have other items on this? Why do these guys get that, and they don't own their neighborhoods?
Well, I think you have to match, once again, the components of the exact location of where it's at. Like if this, because of the super block, because of the location, and proximity to St. Mary's, transit, all of those things, I understand that, you know, the amenities that we're showing are going to be a higher level. And, but I'll see that as an amenity to the neighborhood, not only to the neighborhood, but the folks staying at the Ronald McDonald House, people visiting St. Mary's, people at, you know, south at Bell Hill, north at Cudskie Park. So there's a lot of pride in the developer, through reflection of his property and his work, as well as just, you know, pride in the city and the amenities that we can provide in neighborhoods. So we just, once again, we have the opportunity here to work with the developer to help drive down these costs, sell very, very, you know, high-value land to the city, as well as do the construction of it. So we're taking advantage of all those possibilities. In terms of the pavers, nothing has been decided yet. There, I think the pavers were shown on maybe the conceptual rendering plan here. I think, I think we can minimize those while still having accents of pavers, where we still have, you know, very good accessibility throughout the connection.
So what you're telling me, though, is that the city's paying for the path to be built, correct?
Yes.
It's not the developer paying for that to be built? So we're adding, I mean, so we had a 15-foot-wide asphalt trail that would reflect basically what we do everywhere else in Rochester.
Ms. Steinhauser.
Thank you, Council President Schubert. I think a couple of things important to note here is, as indicated, this is in a transit-oriented development corridor, right? So when we think about what occurs here versus somewhere else in the community, we are looking at a higher ratio of encouraging other modes, including walkability. And so having these really important connections are part of that whole vision of what does it mean to be in a transit-oriented development corridor. As you know from the proposal, the parking ratio is .6, so not what you see in other developments. So it, by nature of that, indicates there's going to be more walking, more biking in this area. I would also say that, as Mr. Johnson indicated, the developer is willing to build this, and they are contractually obligated to maintain this in perpetuity. If there is a sale of the property, that obligation goes with the new property owner. That is not what you would see in other parts of the community, whether it's an asphalt path or whatever, or whatnot. So I think it's important to understand that the obligation for maintenance of this, even at that higher design, lives with the property owner.
Administrator Zales.
Just to add one more thing to clarify, this would be paid for with GSIA funding through, yes and yes, with the Destination Medical Center, and that is only able to be utilized in certain parts of the community.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Yes, I like the idea of the four units being added down there. Obviously attractive. What's going to be, you're going to have a line from here to outside Orinoco to try and get into those. So what's going to be your criteria for the four, for those four units?
Yeah.
Who are we looking at putting in them, is what I'm getting to?
Yep, so the units are going to be constructed and delivered by Gerard. First Homes is actually going to be doing the marketing and the retail, real estate transaction of the condo units themselves. So they'll do the income qualification. I also didn't mention that they're going to be put into a community land trust to preserve the affordability going forward. So they're affordable now by being in the land trust, though, even if they...
Are we talking names in a hat, drawing out, you're the winner? Are we, how are we doing?
I don't, I don't exactly know First Homes practice.
All right, that's what I'm getting at, is like, there's going to be a lot of people interested in that.
Absolutely.
Especially with that location, so.
Is there a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the expenditure of Destination Medical Center strategic redevelopment funds in the amount of $2,372,500 for Second Street public realm enhancement.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Doring. Councilmember Miller, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. I'll just add that I have not received so much public engagement and proactive comment in positive directions as this project has received. So I'm really grateful to the developer for practically engaging the neighborhood, particularly in Cudskie Park. I've heard great things. I've even heard this project proposal referenced as, couldn't you make a different theoretical project somewhere else in town, follow this level of public realm enhancement? So I hear that people are very excited about it. I did want to ask too, just kind of in this question of why this investment here, I know we have GSIA, DMC restrictions, wouldn't it also be fair to say that this is among the highest value per acre areas of town, being among the highest tax contribution that we would see from a levy standpoint? It's one of the most valuable parts of town, and this would be a further investment in future value to the tax levy?
Yeah, Councilmember Miller, absolutely. Whenever we do our tax valuation, and the highest contributing to our party taxes citywide, you know, there's the spike really where the core of downtown is, and then it sort of fluctuates out, but this is definitely in the core where you're seeing, you know, very, very high demand for the land on the Second Street Corridor. Link, of course, is going to add to that, and, you know, projects like this will also enhance the attractiveness of it. And that's why I think creating that four-unit affordable condo project with it, because there's such high demand, that we can have affordable housing so close to things of this magnitude is, you know...
No, I think it's great.
Yep.
Thank you. Just wanted to call out that point, as far as like the value of adding this here and making this investment here. I do appreciate Councilmember Palmer's question about parking minimums, and I think it's striking to me that, you know, we have these parking minimums, the developers themselves are often not proposing developments at that level. And so I do kind of question along with him, why do we have them? And I'm thankful that we have some opportunity to discuss that, but just again, kind of calling out, like developers are making their own decisions, and we're allowing maybe not as much flexibility by having a separate parking minimum, particularly in these core areas. Yeah, so thank you.
Councilmember Palmer, go ahead.
And I appreciate the project, and I appreciate First Homes and the land trust. I don't know if everybody understands that, but that will add the value, and they'll have their criteria already set on who's going to be able to afford it, so you won't be seeing high-wage people living there, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll just add, I was very happy to support this at the DMCC table, and I will again today. And it's really, I look at it, and I want to congratulate those who pulled it together, really coming together of several elements, the walkway, the fourplex, and the private development. It really looks like what we want to see as far as building a vibrant community. I mean, it's hard to see this not being a vibrant area. And then to speak to the Cudskie neighborhood, they were very thrilled with this, and just the opening up of that block and providing that walkway, I think we're going to see good things out of this. So with that, is there, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Onto H3, which is the amendment to the 2025 Destination Medical Center Corporation Capital Budget related to the Heart of the City project, and this will be presented by Cindy Steinhauser.
Thank you, good evening, Cindy Steinhauser, Deputy City Administrator. Also here with me this evening to answer questions related to this item is Steve Sampson Brown, our Director of Construction, and Jamie Rothie with the Destination Medical Center. So before you this evening is a requested action related to some enhancements and modifications to Peace Plaza, specifically asking for $175,000 of approval of DMC funding to expand the smooth paver pathways on the plaza, also conduct some additional engineering and surveying, as well as doing some visual cue enhancements to the space to direct people to the smooth pathways. The second action is really more of a, what we intend to do following your action on, your vote on the first action, is come back with results of the engineering, geotechnical surveying analysis later this year to determine if a broader paver solution is desired. So Action Two is really dependent on how you vote on Action One. So just want to give a little bit of background. I think it's really important to have a history around this project and understand that this project has truly been a collaboration. We have walked alongside with Destination Medical Center on this project, going back to 2015. In 2016, there was a community advisory committee that was established to really guide the engagement around this process and design around the project. And then you can see all the various touchpoints over the years related to this project, including that there were lots and lots of public meetings and prototyping. Here's just some imagery from those years of doing public engagement, having public meetings, looking at the prototyping, bringing in people with rollable devices, and having them experience the kinds of things that we were envisioning on Peace Plaza. Certainly, the activation of this space has been successful when you look at it by the numbers. Last year, we had 22 different events, whether Latin Fest or other kind of special events down there, 255 live music events that brought thousands of people down. However, despite that, we know that this is not a successful space for all. It is not working for all. And so we have gotten feedback, particularly those from the visually, mobility, and neurologically challenged populations, and they're not able to experience this space fully and in a way that really meets their needs. And so we turned our engagement to a more targeted approach in terms of interacting and getting feedback from those community members, and developing what we think is an incremental approach to trying to address their concerns. What we heard were, what's before you, related to navigating the space, particularly having clarity around where are the navigable portions of the space, and how can we enlarge that? So we got that feedback and took immediate action. We took immediate action on making some improvements to resetting pavers that were there, providing some additional signage to highlight, we know we need to do more, doing some additional preliminary engineering evaluation, and continuing to get some additional stakeholder input. Out of that, we developed a goal for this next response, right? And particularly, our goal was thinking about how we could achieve a wider, more uniformed surface through the plaza area with concentrated pedestrian movement, really making it easy and clear where the navigable portions of the Peace Plaza areas are intended to be. We then engaged RDG, and apologize, this slide is hard to read, to help us translate what we heard from this last round of engagement with specific community populations from, again, mobility, neurological, and visually impaired members, to not only preserve the aesthetic, the art, and the experience of the Peace Plaza, but really improving the walking experience, and developing a high-level cost estimate of different options to try and address this need. So what you see here on this slide, didn't share at the study session, but sharing with you this evening, are five options that we landed on for RDG to provide at a very high level, what we should consider. We started with the very minimal. What do we do to just maintain it designed as currently designed? Requires some annual maintenance. Annual maintenance roughly looking at $25,000 to $50,000 a year. This, there will always be ongoing annual maintenance for this space, but we know until the pavers are finished having settling, that that maintenance might be a little bit higher. The second option was providing some additional smooth pavers to increase the walking portion of the design. And that is obviously the recommendation that is before you this evening. That is at a cost of $175,000. Again, it's for expanding that walk area, it's adding some additional visual cues, whether it's signage, whether it's other kind of infrastructure elements like planters, also doing some additional engineering to get better understanding of underlying conditions. And then there were a couple of other options. It was everything from, do we rip them up and replace with engraved pavers? Do we flip a larger amount of the area to increase the amount of smooth pavers? Do we remove the pavers temporarily, lay a more solid concrete foundation underneath, and reset the pavers? And as you can see, the options range. So Options Three and Five, generally at, again, very high level, ranged from roughly best estimates we have right now, $3 to $5 million. Budget ranges for Option Four, again, high level, $600,000 to $1 million, and actually, I gotta, I have to clarify, it's more like $800,000 to $1 million, based on some new information today. And it's not just about cost, it's also about understanding the time impact. Again, why we were bringing Option Two before you, because we can do it very incrementally in small sections throughout the summer. We can do it in a way that we just do smaller quadrants, like a 20-by-10 space that doesn't block doors, doesn't, keeps a large portion of the walkway open, so we're not interrupting and disrupting businesses that are down there. We're able to work around special events that are already booked. Options Three, Four, and Five have a greater implication in terms of the disruption of the area. Still would want to work around to our best of our ability, but there would be greater disruption. We'd have to think about what that looks like with our partners, and it's a longer time period. There is more significant design and engineering involved, six to nine months, more significant construction time period, could be as much as 15 months for construction. So again, why we're bringing Option Two before you. Option Two, it talks about expanding the current 10-foot to 12-foot smooth travel portion of the area on both sides to 14 to 16 feet. Here is a visualization of what it, the current design looks like is on the gray side, the gray image. On the right-hand side, the darker yellow shows you where the existing smooth pathway is. The brighter yellow shows the additional expanded area of smooth pathway. So again, expanding two feet all around, creating connections, smooth connections into the fountain feature, and then north-south connections on either side of the road. That is what we are suggesting be done as part of Option Two recommendation. I think it's really important, people have asked about how does this compare to what used to be there? Here's an image of what used to be there. What used to be there was smaller sidewalks on either side, a lot more obstruction when you think about more permanent obstructions that cannot be moved, and then, of course, grass. Grass is the prominent feature of the former design, grass from a navigable. If you are a rollable device, grass is harder, it has greater friction, and it's considered a high-friction space texture because of its soft surface. And so, again, thinking about the current design and what the community wanted to see, wanted to see more navigable spaces, wanted to open up, create more flexibility than what you see from the most recent, most recent space. So again, what we're talking about, opening up that smooth walkway area to 14 to 16 feet. What it would look like is, the work would begin as soon as the weather is warm, and we're done with the frosty that happens throughout winter, so hoping sometime in March that frost leaves and we can get in there. Again, want to be really clear when we talk about incremental, it's to do small sections, can be done in a week's time, bring members of that community back and say, how does this work? How does this feel? So we can continue to test it on a week-by-week basis, or as we complete those quadrants of improvement, keeping access to businesses open, keeping access to a majority of the space for the public to navigate. Then coming, again, also implementing those other visual cues, whether it's signage, whether it's other things that guide people to the 14 to 16-foot pathway. Coming back to you by end of summer, roughly end of August, with additional information on what we have determined through, as they pick up those pavers and flip them... on what we have determined through as they pick up those pavers and flip them and explore what's underground and understanding settlement, surveying, and understanding settlement that way, and what that might mean for future efforts. Both coming back with that analysis as well as how did what we did this summer in terms of expanding that smooth area have an impact on people to experience this space? Again, the action before you is to approve the $175,000. This was an action at the DMCC Board on February 6th. They approved the $175,000, and so that is what we're here for you to consider this evening. And I think with that, I'll end and happy to take questions.
Steinheiser, questions? Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I think I understand the 175, but there was a thing in option one there when you talked about maintenance, and this is important to me. A lot of our language is always about the raised letters, but there's also this idea of the shifting pavers. And I'm wondering how much maintenance can address that? Is there, right now, we hear about the tripping hazards and some of that's the raised letter, but I think some of it's also the disparity, especially now when you get to spring after the freezing and thawing. Is that something additional maintenance can improve? Or is that something that's just, we have to wait and see and see how it is in year three, year four?
I give you an answer, a little of both. So, if there's a budget of, I'm estimating $25,000 to $50,000 a year, we can certainly, like Cindy showed previously in the photo, have somebody go out every spring if a paver heaved or something. Now, there's a snow melt system, so there's not frost in the ground, so you don't, shouldn't see heaved pavers as you traditionally would, but they certainly move. So, we can catch those edges after two or three years. If generally the deep earth settlement is done, then whatever we reset should really stay there and not move again. So, maybe we come back after three years in a row and we can skip a year and not spend anything, and maybe by year 10, we're coming back every three to four years. One of the unknowns, as you mentioned, is we just haven't done any, I'll call it engineering or surveying analysis or geotechnical analysis to be confident that I can stand up here and say, what you're about to invest in should never move and will be like that for 20 years.
And I appreciate that, but what I'm getting at is that, again, this is a slightly different problem statement, that we're caught up with the capital investment to do something. And I heard staff talking about we can do some stuff with maintenance. What you said is like at the beginning of the summer, and I'm wondering if that's more of a weekly sort of, somebody checking to say, hey, everything looks good, right? Or do we do that in a maintenance thing, just through our normal maintenance and make sure things are good? Or is that a once-a-year thing? Otherwise, we just answer complaints. And I'm, I thought I was hearing that we can do more with maintenance as opposed to capital investment.
Yes, thank you for the clarification, and you are correct. And we do have maintenance going on right now, right? We have partners at DMC and RDA every single day, particularly in the warmer weather when more people are out there. For example, the Clean, Green, and Safe ambassadors are out there three times a day, resetting tables, wiping things off, getting, you know, moving them out of the travel portion of the plaza if someone moves a chair, whatnot. So, that is exactly their job every single day, you know, Monday through Saturday, and then I think it's two days on Sunday. So, what we have done is, in addition to that, have ramped up, like, look for these things. What other things do we do? So, annual maintenance is not only that. Annual maintenance is what kind of cleaning do we do after a end-of-season, major festival season, like massive power washing to power wash the grease away and power wash and get a better finish, for example, right? What is the maintenance we do to repair lights or, you know, do repairs to street furniture? So, just your typical maintenance of a capital project is part of it. And then what Steve is implying also is, in this in-between stage, while there is potentially still settlement, maintenance could also include, do we have to go in and reset a paver because there was a little bit of heat, right? So, we do have people out there, particularly after this last round, people out of conversation, going out there and doing that assessment. And we have, Steve's team is working on updating with parks, all of the SOPs and adding SOPs around maintenance and monitoring of this space.
Yeah, maybe, what SOP, sorry?
So, standard operating procedure. Sorry, thank you.
So, I mean, our focus of the action in front of us really has to do with the pavers and widening the thing, and mainly for the main walking, rolling areas that they're wider. But I didn't see anything about markings or signage that says this is the main walking area or colors. Was there some talk of, how do I know that's the main walking area? Is it just visually cued by the way the crimp pool's on one side and the businesses are on the other? Or have we, has there been any talk about delineation?
Yes, absolutely. We have talked, and we're just still ideating some of those things, but how can we use the basis of the catenary lights to be informational about how to navigate the space? How can we, does it make sense to put, I know Jamie's working and getting some estimates on, for example, vinyl decals that you can put on the floor that are bright and colorful and help you understand, you know, come this way, this is the area that should be coming through. So, we're doing that, and we're doing that in consultation with not only RDG, but Gail is a consulting firm that helped us understand how people are experiencing this space before and after, and a lot of their, the science behind their data is also going to be helpful in us determining what are the best and most effective visual cues that we can make. Do them, and then again, bring people down and say, does this help? Is there something else that we need to be doing?
Okay. So, just to clarify, Councilmember Keen's question, that signage is a part of the 175 ask?
Yes, that is correct.
You have more questions? No. Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to continue to engage with us, because I think it's fair to say we've all heard a lot about this. One of the questions that's come up both in public comments and in this presentation a bit is, who is the space for? And I've heard a lot of prioritization of, you know, it's to be able to have a smooth navigable space. The chairs and table would be moved to the raised lettering. Is that generally the understanding that the universal design is really to be able to move through the space? Or how should we think of universal design and access to some of those other features that would be still on the raised lettering?
Sure, and I'll invite Jamie Rothe to come up if she has anything else to add. So, it's important to remember, the entire space was designed to be ADA compliant, right? It meets ADA compliance across the space, whether it's the raised lettering or the smooth portion. So, when we think about who this space is intended, who's intended to experience this space, it's anybody, right? And for the most part, people are experiencing it in a fairly positive way, but that's not good enough. Like, that is not good enough for us, right? We need to make sure that everybody is experiencing in a way that they're comfortable and are encouraged to want to continue to come down. So, whether you're a downtown resident, whether you work downtown and want to come out there on lunch break, whether you are a commuter, whether you're someone here in town for a convention, you should be able to experience this space in a way that works best for you. And I think that's what we're trying to achieve here.
And so, you mentioned also the RDA Clean, Green, Safe ambassadors downtown, moving pieces back to their intended position. Is RDA the decider of kind of how the movable aspects of Peace Plaza are laid out? Or how should we think about, and I guess to take a step back, when we think about what people need in the public space, you need a place to be able to move through, you need to be able to place to take a break, sit down, have a conversation, access to bathrooms. So, navigating is one priority for sure, but how do we think about making the other aspects on the smooth area also accessible and to more people if we are hearing the pavers are a particular navigation challenge, particularly for those in wheelchairs with walkers where there's a friction with the bumps?
Sure. So, let me just talk a little bit about how RDA provides a service to this space in two ways. Not only the Clean, Green ambassadors and the ongoing monitoring every day to make sure spaces are clean and cleared, and they do that in consultation, particularly Jamie Rothe at DMC. So, that's how that partnership works. RDA is also our partner to manage the space, right? They book the events down there. And so, again, we are updating our standard operating procedures to create greater clarity in the information that they provide to people who might want to book the space for an event, as well as how they provide information when they do Thursdays downtown and making sure, okay, as a vendor, here's the spaces where you can set up, here are your obligations to make sure you limit how much grease spills onto the space, right? Make sure that you're keeping pathways open, we're not running cords across, we're not setting up and preventing people from, because that was one of the things we heard, it's a difficult space to experience during special events. So, that tells us, we've got to do a better job, not only with RDA, but us as a city in communicating when there's an event down here, the expectations, and then having a presence down there and enforcing during the event. So, again, that's a, that is not a design problem, that is an ongoing maintenance and management problem that we identified through this process.
Just a couple more questions. I was going to ask too, I appreciate the thinking about how long, a more aggressive approach to moving additional pavers, making some larger change beyond the cost, 15 months. Is it safe to assume that's probably two warm seasons, right, of use, that 15 months? That it would be inaccessible to anyone in the public?
I think that would be fair to say, that we would definitely be going into a second construction season. And what I failed to mention, and I should, thank you for the opportunity, is to really think about the timing of that, right? There's a lot of construction going on. Right now, this, you know, in a matter of a month, this is going to be one of the few spaces where people can assemble without a lot of construction happening around them. And at some point, the construction around them will go inside and those spaces will open back up again. We know that we want to do something eventually on the west side of Peace Plaza, and so, our conversation internally, should you decide to go this route, right, and let us continue to monitor and measure and engage, re-engage the community again on if additional modifications are needed, to do that perhaps in timing with when we do West Peace Plaza, right? So that when we go in and we disrupt this area, we do it in a way that is very planned and very intentional, and it takes advantage of doing additional enhancements that we'd like to see on the west side, which could be, quite honestly, a couple of years from now, once construction disruption in the area dissipates.
And how soon would Annenberg Plaza be open to automobile traffic? Because that's the other consideration, I've been thinking of this space and what's happening outside of Peace Plaza, but related.
It's in sections, yeah.
Okay, so Mayo's proposed a multi-phase approach to that, so really, most of that's happening through 2025? And so, just for clarification, Annenberg Plaza's on the south half of the block, are you specifically see?
What's currently been a pedestrianized space, how soon might we expect some opening to travel for automobiles from that new drop-off?
Probably the end of, towards the end of 2025. I don't know, Tyler, do you have any additional information? There's also a city project happening in that space after they're done, so there'll be some stops and starts to that too.
Yeah, Steve's, it's going to happen in 2025. There's just a lot of, with our project and the utilities and projects and making sure we're coordinating with, you know, the neighboring property owners and access to the Kaler, for example, they haven't locked in that schedule specifically yet.
But it's important to note that it, there will be limited access from the north while the south is blocked, and there'll be limited access from the south while the north is blocked, and then there'll be some version of that, but actual through traffic is still not needed. We're still trying to understand when that full-through traffic might happen.
But it's fair to say that there is about to be this year a major disruption to the pedestrian access to that space, which is in some ways a continuity from Peace Plaza to Discovery Walk to Soldiers Field Park, which is envisioned as a, in some ways, a continuous space, correct? So, when we think about this, I appreciate that because I think it's important, and I've been thinking about how much public space there is on each side of Second Street. And I think it's just, I appreciate you bringing it up, because I think we're about to have very limited spaces and contrasted with the Public Realm Project, right? People want these spaces, and it's hard to time it.
Yeah, and I think Jamie Rothe, I know, has been really monitoring the pedestrian flow, so do you want to speak to Annenberg Plaza and?
Sure, yeah, just to speak to that quickly, you know, we're working closely with the clinic to understand the phasing. As staff mentioned, we're trying to look at how do we support the Kaler drop-off and how do they phase that? We learned a lot from the Heart of the City project when we kept the Marriott Valley open during that project, if you recall. We phased that in a way to make sure that they could keep their front door of their business open. So, we're looking at a similar model. And then we're currently having conversations with the clinic about patient traffic inside. I think everybody knows as Annenberg Plaza closes down for a year, the clinic is reconfiguring those two doors, both the Mayo door and the Gonda door, and that will take about a year. So, where does pedestrian traffic go? And then how are we working together on a wayfinding strategy to continue? And then how are we measuring that every day to make sure we're looking at where's pedestrian traffic coming from and how are they entering into these public spaces and how we use them during the construction?
Thank you. Just one last question is, who is deciding at what point to stop flipping pavers within this current budget? And what are the criteria for how many? When is it right with this current allocation?
That's a really great question. I think for us, we are going to really lean into the folk, the members of the focus group from visual mobility and neurologically impaired, because to understand, like, did this next measure do it? Is there more? And when have we, when have we solved enough that they feel like the space is at a point where it's more equitable in the experience? So, I really think that the public, this focus group of public members are really going to drive that for us.
Councilmember Doring.
Thank you so much for coming back again this evening. I want to just lay it out from where I sit. We talked about this at a study session a week and a half ago, and none of the questions that I've, I don't feel like we've gotten any further with a solution, based on the feedback that I've been hearing from people. You have said multiple times in both that discussion and the discussion tonight, that for the most part, everyone is experiencing this in a positive way. That's not what I'm receiving. By 99% of the conversations I've had with folks, whether that's email, lived experience, visiting with people as they're walking through Peace Plaza, it's not been a positive experience. So, the concerns that I have and that I've heard, and I hope that you have some answers for this evening, are what is the cost projection of incremental increased survey study? Would it behoove us to flip more pavers, for lack of a better word, then engage in that study process more? Is it a cost of labor versus survey? Or just to make more of the place accessible for folks? You understand the question?
I just want to clarify, yeah, I'm not sure, I completely understand, maybe Steve does, but the, in this 175, we estimate about $25,000 or $30,000 for the survey?
Fifteen, just for the survey.
Just for the survey, right? So, for additional geotechnical. But are you asking about?
What if we didn't do the survey? Because we know of the climate of Minnesota, and I think you heard again from tonight from members of the public and heard at our study session last week, is the survey needed at this point? Could we essentially then flip over $50,000 more of the pavers to make it more accessible?
Great, thank you. I would say the survey is needed, but the best person to answer that is Steve, who understands the technical nature of it much better.
So, we could possibly, yes, just spend the money on flipping over pavers. One of the things that we would have no confidence in is we'd be back here in six months or a year saying, half those pavers that we just invested in have settled, now we need to invest more just to flatten them back out again. The other thing we haven't checked, because we haven't had a survey crew out on the site, is we know what the original design was, and we know it was flatter in spots than what it is today. So, we also need to meet the ADA standards for cross-slope, 2% cross-slope along the accessible route, 5% along the, 5% is pretty steep, so we're not at that point yet. But it would be wise, in my opinion, and recommended, to do the due diligence and get the survey, and let's get a baseline of where it's at, and then we can choose to survey it. Again, our original plan with the estimate, we got to talk to a local firm, $14,000, they would actually do a three-dimensional laser survey, so we'd have a full surface, and we could also understand, you know, is it potentially an area, just there's one area that's moved and 80% of it's fine? So, we'll be able to have more nuanced information about. The other thing to keep in mind, we don't have photos in our presentation, but there's areas that were excavated down to 20 feet, there's areas where there's stockwork that's unlikely to settle as much as where natural earth went in. So, it's going to be differential settlement, just the way the whole thing got put back together, that's natural. So, that's why we came forward with a bit of a So that, that's why we came forward with a bit of a forensic budget, to understand what's really going on, and how can we best solve this problem once and for all.
Thank you. I've, I've heard again, repeated, repeated tonight, that the, the raised letter pavers meet ADA standards. I think ADA standards are minimum for accommodation, that's the way that I interpret that. In my advocacy with the differently abled community here in town, I would say that that is how they understand that, too. How am I supposed to go back and say, we're doing the minimum for you to make sure that you can enjoy this public space?
Well, I, I'm, I'm not sure that I agree with the statement that we're doing the minimum. And so I, I think we'd need to, quite honestly, understand that a little bit better before I could answer it intelligently. I would, I don't know, unless Steve or Jamie have-
I can answer a bit, just for some more context from the history, there's a couple of photos back earlier in the presentation when we did the prototyping, there's an image of Anne when she printed it out in its full format on the floors of the Art Center, and then we installed a smaller installation in the basement of the Art Center, and looked at different heights, looked at different approaches to the art, drawing patterns, all the things that go along with installing public art. During that time, and it was pretty extensive as we were going through of this, there was a lot of discussion, and it doesn't again show up on here, but we looked at where were some of the higher walkways, and we wanted to make sure we dropped down the letters as low as possible. So there are lower cut letters in the higher traffic areas. So just want to give you confidence that we exceeded the ADA standards when we were doing that. The, the highest raised letters meets it, but in the main walkways, along first, they're all at a lower standard, or at the, exceed the standard that is acceptable.
Yep.
So just to, I wanted to make sure you had that context as well in this conversation.
Yep, and I appreciate the prototyping that was done to the space. I have had, over the course of the past two years, I've been on crutches, a walking boot, used a knee scooter for transportation, and I can pretty much get over everything for a five-foot span of, of bumps. But I'm also concerned about the endurance that we're asking folks to, to, to put themselves through to enjoy this public space. So my question, again, is about phasing, right? So if we're only doing five to eight-foot sections of removing pavers to make a wider walkway, are we really alleviating that concern of endurance over an uneven surface?
Yeah, and you know, thank you, I should clarify, it, it's likely to be a larger area, but we're only doing it in smaller segments, so we are not impacting and blocking doors and creating major disruption, right? So while the area would be larger that we're doing, we're going to do it in smaller, smaller squares, so we're not creating massive disruption.
Okay, and then my final question is, I, I, I appreciate you coming up with other options in, in the course of this past week and a half, or even before, before our study session. You know, I am, I have two questions, I guess. First, in that, in that intervening time, have you been able to talk to the artist about what any additional work to those pavers would have, how that would have an impact on their intention for the artistic expression in the space?
No, we have reached out to the artist, actually, but we've not had a chance to speak with her.
Okay, and then I understand that the timeline and, 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 and public space, and, and knowing that it's going to be limited with everything going on in the downtown corridor. But the response I'm hearing from folks is that they want immediate action for a remedy, that this is truly an unusable space for them. Now, these are their words, not necessarily mine. So how can we at all shrink the timeline to have a more immediate impact for those who are feeling the most negatively impacted at this point?
So under option, I'll talk about a couple of different ways. So under option two, we could certainly condense the time period to do that. We, we would likely increase the impact and disruption to the businesses in the area, and increase the disruption to planned events in the space. So we could look at a consolidated schedule, and, and then understand what that means in terms of disruption. We have heard concerns from the businesses about impacting and their front door, and we want to be sympathetic to that. If there are members of the community, I'm sure there are, you've heard from them, that do not feel like option two is the solution, the other options are not immediate. The other options require some pretty significant design and engineering. That alone will take six to nine months. Six to nine months, we are into the winter, you are bidding through the winter, you are awarding in March of next year, and then those are bigger, more intrusive solutions that will create even more disruption than a compressed schedule under option two. So options three and five are not an immediate solution.
Okay, councilmember, do you have any more questions? Okay, I'm just going to ask even staff, if you can be more brief with your responses. I think we did cover the, the options five, four, five, and six earlier, so, but, and we do have like four councilmembers and the mayor that are interested in speaking as well. So I'm going to go to councilmember Wall here.
Thank you. In 1973, I bought a used 1974 Ford Maverick. Unfortunately, I bought it in the summer, and it got to be winter, and I found out that it didn't heat. And so about December, I took it to someone and, and said, can we do anything? He said, yeah, we'll flush the system, maybe. So I spent money as a college kid that I didn't have. Super Bowl Sunday, which we lost.
Of course.
School, driving to-
We won that one.
Driving to a classmates' place in Anoka to see the game, we were scraping frost from the inside with credit cards, so we could see. So I took it back to a dealer and spent money I didn't have, maybe a thermostat, we'll replace the thermostat. We continued to use our credit cards through the rest of the winter, and we got rid of the car, owned it for one winter. I am not going to be supportive of this motion, I think that we need to move on and find a solution, find a new solution. I'm not going to equate this with a Ford Maverick, I think this is a gallant effort by people who planned, who dreamed, who hoped, and I don't think it's worked. I think it needs a new solution. I think the $175,000 is not well-spent. I think even if it took a longer time, if the community heard that we actually had a plan that would solve this for the long term, at least I can look forward to that. Maybe by 2027, I can safely navigate the Peace Plaza. So I, yeah, that's just where I am.
Thank you, councilmember Wall, we'll go to Mayor Norton.
Thank you, wow, I'm, I'm taken aback by some of what I'm hearing, I just have to say, this is a bit, this has been a long journey for all of us, and I don't think we need to throw the baby out with the bathwater, I think that's unnecessary at this point. We have an area that is activated more than that area's ever been activated before, it is utilized by families every single day, all spring, summer, and fall. And, and I understand that we have an issue with the pavers. I sat here in this room and said, are those pavers going to be usable for, you know, are they going to be ADA compliant, are they going to be usable, people was told yes. And we're all disappointed that it hasn't worked out that way. I mean, I think to act like we don't care is not true, I don't know a soul that doesn't care about what's happening. I see a couple of major problems here. One is our, our signage and letting people know where to go. When you had a big fountain in the way and green grass, everybody knew you went to the right and the left, and they did. Nobody walked on the grass because it was soggy and awful. Sometimes people would take that blue path for fun, but you couldn't take a wheelchair through it, it was too narrow. And we have much more space on both the right and the left for crowds of people and wheelchairs and walkers and everything else to go. So I think we need to, you know, in my opinion, we need to keep this in perspective. So we need signage, when you walk out of the Galleria, it needs to be clear where you have to go. That's, that's not happened, and that's, in my mind, step one. So we have to pull those pavers away, as you're suggesting, but we also have to have signage so that it is obvious where the space is, that's flat and safe for everyone. The other thing I want to get around is this idea that we need to have to throw out all the pavers in the world. For the last, well, since 2015, 16, when I had my Bush Fellowship, what I did was, was travel around, primarily Scandinavia, where it's also very cold and has the same weather issues that we do in many parts, as well as Canada and California, looking at pavers and walkways and livable communities, and many of them have bricks and pavers. One of the beauties of having bricks and pavers is that when something, when the cement breaks, you got to grind it all up, tear it out, and you got to start all over. Cement is a nightmare, it's a heat, heat mess, it has lots of downsides. Pavers, you pull up, you fix what's underneath, if a pipe breaks or something, and you put them right back down. I watched it happen all over Europe, I have a whole slew of pictures I've taken of people doing repairs, of the positives and the beautiful flat pavers. So I do not believe that it will never be fixed. I do believe we were not on top of it as quickly as we could have, and frankly, I don't understand why the people that laid them haven't had some responsibility to, to repair them, that's been a mystery to me. So I think cold climates have pavers of every size, bigger the better, because they stay bigger and heavier, they stay longer, but I don't think we have to give up on favor, on pavers. And, and the repairs, again, can be done cheaper. The other thing I wanted to say, thank you for the changes that you made. I know there was confusion about the yellow last time, and I, too, had concerns about having to turn over as many as we were turning over, but I, I agree that there needs to be a way to get across, and I know there was confusion about the street. So thank you for fixing the sidewalk area, so there's a path down First Avenue on both sides of the street, that's a plus. And also, I saw something I hadn't seen before, which is flat access to the water for everyone. So that was a plus as well. So even if you have a cane, or have a walker, or have a wheelchair, you can still get up to and put your feet in the water, and, or sit on one of the wood benches, and that was not there before. So I saw that as a real positive, that makes not only the, the sides wider and more walkable and flatter, because we're going to fix that, but also access to the water. And so I thought that was great. So I wanted to add those things. I am absolutely supportive of phase two, and, and the phase one goes with it, because we have to continue to repair all the time. I do not think we should put a sea of cement in that area, that would be a nightmare for everyone, and horribly ugly on top of all that. So I'm for phasing, I think we can do this, and I want to see that place activated again this summer, just like it has been for the last several years, because it's a glorious place to be in the summer, spring, and fall.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you. I, I think Mr. Wall's point is, is well-taken for me. I think putting signs up doesn't make any sense for, for people who, who are visually impaired, that doesn't work. Steve, we've got heat underneath these pavers, correct?
Correct.
So how do you get frost underneath heated pavers?
Really shouldn't.
Okay, and you don't. And so if you go around the Mayo buildings, where they have poured concrete, and they have heat in their concrete, they don't have heaving. So, so why would we have heaving if we replaced these pavers for a ribbon around, let's say 16 feet? Why would, why would we get heaving?
Two potential thoughts, it might be more related to settlement than actual frost heave. The other thing is, through the large events, there's large box trucks occasionally on there, so you do have vehicle loads and wheelloads that Mayo doesn't have on all parts of their sidewalks. So shouldn't get a lot, but it's, it's moved so far, so I'm not gonna, I don't have enough information geotechnically to rule out that it would never happen again. It should happen in a small amount, but-
And, and I understand that we, we dug out a lot, but as you dig things up, you have contractors who are doing compaction tests, and they compact it to a certain level, and then, and then you know you're going to have pavers on top of it, you have a standard. Did we not follow that standard?
I unfortunately was not here to speak to that, we're looking at records-
But that, but that would be best practices, correct?
Correct, or even standard practice.
Standard practice, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, and most of our interstate system is built with concrete, correct?
Yes.
And that's heavy trucks around that?
Correct.
Usually about six inches thick?
Probably deeper than that on a highway.
Okay, but-
Eight to nine, possibly.
So these pavers, if you took out 14 feet around a ribbon, and you had colored concrete, or you had stamped concrete, and you put that in there, that would visually tell people this is where they could walk and could wheel, does that seem unreasonable?
I think it's a legitimate approach as one of the options. My concern would be at the edge of where we stop the concrete slab and leave the pavers, that would potentially move, because it's two differential materials made out of two different things, so that may be, become a maintenance area, not a significant one, but may require resetting to make sure that, because we don't have a uniform bed, but yes, that's an approach.
But, but one way you could fix that is dowel it, you could dowel it into the blocks, into that, so they would, they would move together. As far as, as this disruption, this massive disruption that, to fix this, you could phase how you put the concrete in and not do, rip it all up and have it torn down for two years, you could go phase it and go round, couldn't you?
Yeah, I mean, we could do it in quarters, or depending on what the appetite is for the local businesses, there's, yeah, we could phase it into smaller areas. Now, we have work trucks, we have concrete trucks, we have some, I don't know if we're going to drive a concrete truck in there, or we're even going to need a pump truck, all that is interrupting First Avenue, so there's, there's pros and cons to how, what approach we do. Faster would probably be more disruptive, but be, be in and out, smaller scale would be less disruptive, but longer over time as a presence.
I, I guess where I'm going with this is, is that I think we need to pick a, a ribbon around it, either 10 feet, 12 feet, whatever people come up with, and replace it with some decorative concrete and move along. I think that's kind of what Mr. Wall was hinting towards, and that's where I would be supportive of. I don't see spending more money visualizing or getting a group together, because we did a group together when we originally did this at the Art Center, and, and, you know, who's, who's going to be the person that says yes, and there's always going to be somebody that's going to say no. That's where I'm at.
Well, I'll go next, and I also had a Ford Maverick, I think mine was a 76, it lasted three years, I think. So where, where I'm struggling with this is, we've got the, the second option, $175,000, I want to hear what confidence level that you're going to have, I'm looking at you, Steve, after that, there's some engineering in there, that you can come to us and say, I mean, hopefully these things are going to settle, they're going to be smooth, they're going to be flat, or you've got a bigger problem than you need, or you, than you want. And so I'm looking for that confidence in what, what you're asking for this evening.
So we, I feel like I'm, I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but I feel like it's going to sound like that. We will only know after doing some engineering and evaluation. Measuring it, have they settled? If they have not finished settling, we could be doing some minor resetting again next year. I mean, I think that is, that is fair to say. So it's understanding what's going on underneath is what will increase our confidence level in solution.
And that's a part of the 175,000.
And that's part of the 175. Yep, I don't know if Steve's going to answer that.
Yeah, and again, we're trying to stretch our budget, put the money into flipping pavers, you know, a standard geotechnical report, 100% confidence, that's probably a $50,000 to $80,000 bill. We would have a geotechnical rig out there, we might be taking soil moisture content samples, we would be drilling, and then I could come back and say, we've had a geotechnical engineer calculate the load that the soils can take, and we've calc, had the structural engineer calculate, but that's, that's not currently in the budget. So I'd say we have a moderate sense of confidence. While the contractor's working, we will be excavating into the soils to see if we can learn anything new. Maybe it looks all the same, and that provides us with some info- Maybe it looks all the same and that provides us with some information. So, but really, we don't have the full suite of engineering analysis tools where I can come back 100% guaranteed. What I will be able to do is come back in August and say, if you want the guaranteed solution, this is how much it's going to cost. If you want the incremental solution, we'll have a budget for that, but I, it won't as high, has a high of confidence because we haven't done an analysis to figure out, do we have a problem 10 feet below ground that nobody's seen yet and no, really knows about or defined? But the, the kind of the all-in permanent fix, which replaces everything and we're close to $5 million, that we don't need to do the full analysis on. That one, we can come back with, you know, 100% confidence and say, we're, we're going to rebuild everything and start over and do it right in terms of making sure the settlement won't, won't reoccur, which will probably be a concrete slab that will be similar to an interstate road or something to that effect, most disruptive. But anything, if we want to look at the million dollar range and we're only just digging up the pavers and turning them over, that one, we, we don't have a full budget to do a, a full engineering analysis on that has a higher level of confidence.
Then I, I wanted to get back to a question that Councilmember Doring asked about the, if we do go with the option two, and to be honest, I am leaning towards that. I think it's cheaper to do this fix now, and I'm optimistic, but I, I think this is a long road. We, this bus has left. This is the Peace Plaza. I think, I think we're making it sound a little more dire than it really is. I do think there are thousands and thousands of people that go through there and enjoy it. And, uh, and I do remember the grassy, muddy, uh, middle that you couldn't do anything on. But to, to the, uh, the turning the pavers now during this season, I'm seeing March to August, and maybe my eyes were deceiving me, but when we had the study session, that looked like March to April to me. And I'm wondering if you really, I mean, how much of this has to go through our whole summer season?
So one of the unknowns, we, we haven't had time to track down with the quarry who provided the stone, is when we flip them over, what you see out there today has been heat treated. The heat treated is not for aesthetic coloring, it's to provide a texture, a non-slip texture specifically. The back of the stone is cut flat and smooth, you know, similar to a laminate. We want to make sure it's rough enough where we're not creating a new problem in terms of people being comfortable walking through the space if it happened to rain an hour ago. So we need time to figure out what is that construction process to heat treat the stone? Can we treat it on site? Do we have to haul it offsite and have somebody treat it? That may take more than a week for us to figure out. It shouldn't take three months, but we need to solve that problem before we, we've included budget in the numbers we've provided to do the heat treating. We just haven't figured out the exact process and how long that takes. So that'll, that'll be part of the, can we get done by May 1st or can we get done by mid-July? We'll have to see how that goes. There's also events scheduled in the space, and we need to work around those, possibly demobilize. Uh, I haven't seen the events list, so I don't know if it's 20 times we have to pull off the site or three. That's another thing that will impact schedule.
Yep. I could just add, and apologize for this slide being confusing. It's really just to say, it would happen during this window of time. Doesn't mean it needs to be the entire time. Like Steve said, if, as we, as we understand how best to do it, can it be done in four weeks? Can it be done in six weeks? Just working around stuff that's already programmed there. That's the window in which it would happen, but not that it would take every single day from March to August.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion on this item? Anybody, more questions?
Well, I, I guess just to get a motion on the table, I'll, I'll move to adopt the resolution approving the amendment for the capital improvement plan to include the additional $175,000 for the 2025 for city infrastructure improvements to be, uh, related to the heart of the city project.
Motion mo, a motion made by Councilmember Keen. Is there a second? I will second it. Go ahead, Councilmember Keen.
I mean, I, I think we can all agree that, you know, we're, the experience with the Peace Plaza is not where we want it to be. I've heard the staff say that. I've heard some DMC people saying it. It, it, that, that is where we're at. And there is some, I think, disagreement on how bad it is. There's a lot of feedback that some of my peers are getting, that I'm getting and other people are getting, that it's unusable. And then we get other people like the, uh, the people are the, somebody today saying that, hey, we're getting 6,000 people. There is definitely usage. So, I mean, I think we have to settle on where we're at with this, but I don't think we can look past this and say like, okay, this is the way it is and we're, we're in good shape here. But the flip side is to say, nope, stop what you're doing in 2025 and go back and redo this. And I think that's what I'm hearing from some of my peers, and I, I'm really distressed about that because, I mean, there, there's a couple of things. We're, we're dealing with, um, um, problems that we don't have a budget for. The motion in front of us right now is dealing with what the DMC board said that they would come up with. But when we start talking about pouring concrete and doing other things, those solutions all have to come with a funding source. It can be our contingency, but I don't think that'll cover it. It can be trade-offs against other things. It can be something else, but we need, we need to decide that if that's our decision-making process. So just saying we're going to do these things without a funding source, that's stressful on me because I think that's our responsibility, you know, we're paying for things. The other thing, you know, um, it, when, when you get, when you, when you start directing your staff to say, okay, we have these problems, we're going to go back and work on these, you, you have to assume you're taking them off of what they're working on right now, which is these major things with Bus Rapid Transit and other things. Now, we're, we're not, you know, no one's going to say, okay, if we do this, we're not going to do that, but it's an exposure we bring upon ourselves. So, so where, where I've tried to get myself with this sort of things is that sort of, let's all admit that we're not proud of the way this came out. But I, I don't think it's from somebody did this to us. This is us making a mistake. This is us going back five and seven years, and I, and I know there was a mayor in the past on these councils, there was one of my peers on these design councils. This is not somebody did something wrong or somebody tricked us. This is our project. We're, DMC doesn't do projects in downtown. They help us fund things and the city does it. So when we say this isn't done right, that's we didn't do it right. So let's start with that, not, I, I got too many notes saying, make them fix it, as if there's somebody else in the room. It's us. It's our budgets. I, I really did hope we can get to the point on this sort of three things. Improve the safety by removing raised letters on the main walking, rolling areas, uh, and that's sort of what you're try, what your suggestion. I don't know if it's enough. That, but the other one I was looking for is improve paver stability through improved operational maintenance, as you say, uh, operating procedures and make sure on a regular basis that anything that's going on because of heavy trucks or anything, they're settled out. Because I, my sense is the raised letters are a problem, but also just pavers in this thing. And I think, I think Steve has it right, that it's a settling and this, these heavy construction thing. I still do believe there's some sort of signage solution here or some sort of wayfinding that helps people know where these main paths are, uh, as opposed to saying, um, yeah, and I, I don't think it's got to be signs that you have to be read, it's just cues. I'm, I'm also looking at this as like, I don't know if the standard should be, you should be able to get on a wheelchair or a walking cast roller or anything else over grass, because that's what used to be down here. And if we compare that to the standard, this is not that much worse, if it is worse, because it used to be grass and you couldn't pass that in a wheelchair. But that somehow or other, that wasn't considered something you were supposed to do, but now it is. I, I want to go down this path of getting the survey, making some nominal improvements. It's not going to be, the complaints aren't going to go away, but I think we'd make some improvements. And, and I hope we go down that path, but if I hear the solution is a bigger solution, we have to decide what we're doing shorter term. Maybe it's nothing, but if we're doing something shorter term and we're something, doing something else, somewhere something's going to break. We have to figure out what we're not doing and where the money's coming from. And if we, if, if this motion doesn't pass and we need to go to a motion to do all these other things, I want it to include funding sources.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Sometimes a Band-Aid can help healing. So I think with the funding we have available from DMC to do this and to widen out areas to navigate more easily, at this point, not having a great solution and a big bucket of money just to throw at something, I do feel it's our best option at the moment.
Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the discussion, and I, I, I want to just recognize that I, I think this is the humble step of saying, we haven't done this totally right. We are not going to, and I, I plan to support this as well because I don't see how we jump to, with no funding source or no plan, to some broad solution. So I see this as our incremental step towards acknowledging that it's not perfect, making a, a fundamental improvement with what we can and getting to the next stage where we can truly evaluate this without making a bigger mistake. So I plan to support this.
Councilmember Palmer.
Well, you can look at Annenberg Plaza. I believe they have pavers and, and they're not heaving and they're heated. I, I won't support this. I think that we're throwing bad money after bad money. I think that we need to come back with a plan for a walking area that is, is, um, concrete, that is decorative and foolproof. It, it won't heave and, and we'll be able to provide what people are looking for and what I'm looking for.
Member Doring.
Yeah, I, um, understanding budgetary constraints, all the things, I plan to, uh, I, I plan to support this as well with the caveat, it's just that I hope we maximize the impact that we can as quickly as we can.
Councilmember Wall.
Uh, I agree with Councilmember Palmer. I just don't want to buy a thermostat for this. Uh, I, I think that we gotta, we gotta solve it. And if we have to wait, and if, and I agree with Councilmember Keen, we need a funding source, uh, that we just need a new plan. And if we can promise the community a new plan that will offer us a final solution that will be good for the whole community, I think that they could understand that even if it were a couple of seasons of having to negotiate, uh, what currently is there. Secondly, I, I don't disagree that there's 6,000 people down there, uh, every day on average. They're not there because of the pavers. It's the whole experience. Now, if you could say 6,000 people comes specifically to read the poem or to roll over the, the, the raised lettering because it's like mountain biking or some, I don't know, uh, then I'll go with that. But if we didn't have the pavers there, would we reduce that to 5990? Or it'd go to 6,200? I don't know. It's, they're not coming for the pavers. So whatever. I'm still going to vote against it.
With that, uh, we have a motion on, I, we have a, a, a motion on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I think I heard, uh, four, five to two with, uh, Councilmembers Palmer and Wall in opposition. We are going to plow through until we get to the EDA, if, uh, that's okay with my colleagues, and then we will take a break.
Thank you.
Mr. Spindler, Craig, go ahead with, uh, the ordinance first reading.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmembers Mayor Norton, there are three first readings. Item J1, an ordinance annexing to the city of Rochester approximately 28.84 acres of land located east of 60th Avenue Northwest and approximately 500 feet south of King Arthur Road Northwest, identified by PIN number 073833. Moving to item J2, ordinance rezoning approximately 38.88 acres of land located east of 60th Avenue Northwest and approximately 500 feet south of King Arthur Road Northwest, identified by PIN number 075456, 078551, 073834, 075457, 078584, from R1 Mixed Single Family Residential to R2 Low Density Residential Small Lot, and amending ordinance number 4478, known as the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester, Minnesota. Moving to item J3, an ordinance annexing to the city of Rochester approximately 1.03 acres of land located 300 feet north of Wilder Road Northeast, City of Rochester. Moving to the second readings, there's one item, K1, ordinance rezoning and approximately 2.39 acres of land located south of Highway 14 Southeast at 4140 Highway 14 Southeast from MXS Mixed Use Street Oriented to MXC Mixed Use Center, and amending ordinance number 4478, known as the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester, Minnesota.
Move approval.
Councilmember Keen moves approval.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Miller. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Passes. We, we are going to take a, um, eight-minute break and we will return with other business. We just...
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Tonight, I'd invite a motion to recess the council meeting for a meeting of the Rochester Economic Development Authority.
So moved.
Moved by, uh, by, uh, Councilmember Wall and seconded by Councilmember Fredericks. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Motion carries. I'll now call to order the Rochester Economic Development Authority meeting for February nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Um, before we get started, I'm going to recommend that we adjust our agenda to handle item five A, which is the appointment of EDA officers first up under organizational business. So is there a motion to do this?
I'll, I'll second.
Uh, motion made by Councilmember Miller, seconded by Councilmember Keen. Um, so, uh, we are at organizational business and I'll have, uh, Mr. Brett Svenby talk about our appointment of officers for the EDA.
Yep. So the council serves as a Rochester Economic Development Authority and based on the bylaws for the EDA, the bylaws requires that the officers be established each year. So, um, there's five officers involved with the EDA. One is a president, vice president, the treasurer, assistant treasurer and secretary, and typically the secretary is a city clerk. The assistant treasurer is a finance director and typically the president of the council is also the president of the EDA. So we're looking for some discussion with the EDA in regards to the president, vice president, secretary, treasurer and assistant treasurer.
All right.
Make a motion to those office.
Are there any, is there nominations for these offices?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate our twenty twenty five EDA officers as President Schubring, Vice President Palmer, Treasurer Keen, Assistant Treasurer, the City Finance Director and the Secretary of the City Clerk.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, all in favor of this slate presented by, uh, Councilmember Fredericks, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Thank you. Um, congratulations, officers. And we will move on to our consent agenda. There's one item on our consent agenda. It is the minutes for the RDA for December ninth, twenty twenty four. Is there a motion to approve this consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Palmer, seconded by Councilmember Doring. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Uh, moving on to our public hearings, we have, uh, one public hearing. It's the establishment of the, uh, Economic Development District number eighty-four and the DMC redevelopment tax increment financing district number eighty-four one. And this is being presented by Mr. Svenby.
So before you this evening is a public hearing, um, for the establishment of tax increment financing district number eighty-four dash one, which is labeled as a West Transit Villies project. Um, the West Transit Village project is a Wesley terminus of the link, which is city's BRT project. Um, so the vision there is not just for a parking ramp, but also to have housing and retail uses, et cetera, on the site. So we're for the EDA this evening, um, holding this public hearing to establish the TIF district that would allow us to, it's important for us to establish this TIF district now before any permits are pulled for any types of structures within the West Transit Village. So that's why we're here before you this evening. So the city team continues to work with the DMC team and also a potential developers of the housing developments, um, for the site. So in the vision is approximately about three hundred market rate units on the site and about two hundred affordable units on the site. So by establishing this, um, TIF district now, it will allow us to capture increment, tax increment from the various projects, um, within the site itself. So just a reminder to the EDA that, um, TIF is a financing tool established by the state, um, that is available to support local economic development, redevelopment and housing development. Um, TIF is not a tax reduction. Um, taxes are continued to be paid on the property. It's where this, the increase in the taxes are captured and that could be paid to the developers to help fill a financial gap in their project. So at this time, we're just asking that the, um, district be established. We will continue to work with the developers or the housing developments within the site itself. Eventually we'll be back before the EDA for approval of development assistance agreements, which will lay out in detail the developments themselves in regards to the housing mixture and the amount of assistance to be divided for each developer, assuming that, um, we can ensure that we are filling the financial gap on their projects. So at this time, we're just opening the public hearing and then closing the public hearing on the establishment of the TIF district.
Thank you, Mr. Svenby. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Uh, if anyone wishes to be heard on this item, please step forward and, uh, identify yourself. You have five minutes. If anyone wishes to be heard on this item, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and invite my colleagues to, uh, for any questions that they may have on this item. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
I move to adopt a resolution establishing a tax increment financing district through the approval of Economic Development District number eighty-four and the Destination Medical Center Redevelopment Tax Increment Financing District number eighty-four dash one for the West Transit Village Project.
Second.
Moved by, uh, Councilmember Doring and seconded by Councilmember Palmer. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed say nay. Passes. Thank you. Moving on to reports and recommendations. Five B is the twenty twenty-five designation of depositories for the, uh, for the Rochester EDA public funds. And this is, Mr. Brian Anderson.
Uh, thank you, President Schubring. So for this particular item, we, it is routine in nature. It is a resolution designating the U.S. Bank Rochester and Wells Fargo Bank Rochester as depositories of public funds for the Economic Development Authority twenty twenty-five. Uh, we have to do this requirement as per state statute one eighteen A dot O two subdivision one. And this is very similar to the one that you did last month on behalf of the city council, um, something that has to be done on an annual basis. And the reason why we have two depositories listed out here is because Wells Fargo is our, uh, primary banker on a daily basis. And then the U.S. Bank does have the four, uh, debt issuances that we will go over in the budget. So making that clear.
Any questions, council members? Is there a motion on this?
I'll move.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Councilmember Palmer.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution designing, uh, U.S. Bank Rochester and Wells Fargo Bank Rochester as depositories of public funds for the Economic Development Authority, EDA for twenty twenty-five.
And, and as this treasurer, I'll second.
Uh, by the vice president and seconded by the treasurer. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed say nay. Passes. Uh, item five C is the twenty twenty-five Rochester, uh, EDA budget. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, thank you. Again, routine in nature. Uh, real quick, the primary activity of the EDA to date is the ownership and debt obligation of both the Minnesota Bio Business Center and the Development Service and Infrastructure Center, uh, Police Station North Precinct. And, um, the proposed twenty twenty-five budget reflects the lease amounts to be paid by the city to the EDA to meet the debt obligations of the EDA. The total budget, uh, including the two point six million dollars for the debt obligation is three million twenty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars. Uh, the first page of the budget, you can see that there are revenues listed out there as far as the bio lease payments, the tax increment financing and the DISC and the Station North East and the amount of three million twenty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars. And then you can see further down underneath the expenditures, it lists out the series two thousand seven eight, or two thousand seven, two thousand eight, two thousand nine and twenty twenty A, uh, series debt obligations. And then there's supporting documentation on the following page for the Minnesota Bio Business Center that was put together by staff. Uh, the following, second to the last sheet is the EDA city relationship as it pertains to the EDA facilities, uh, some background on that as far as how the relationship works. And then the final, uh, page on there is the resolution again for the EDA budget and the amount of three million twenty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving the twenty twenty-five Rochester Economic Development Authority budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by, uh, Councilmember Keen and seconded by Councilmember Doring. All in favor say aye.
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 Uh, all opposed say nay. Motion passes. Moving on to, uh, item five D, which is the tax increment financing request, evaluation matrix preview. Mr. Josh Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, President, council members. I'll keep this tight. Um, so the goal of tonight is to really, so let me step back. So last May twenty twenty-four, we approved the current TIF policy. It's been working great. We've had a lot of good feedback from it. Um, we've sort of opened it up to more considerations. Um, the goal of this is to utilize it as an internally facing document with the goal to check to see if some of our considerations are matching, one with the council's considerations, but also just working well. And then if, if, once we dial in sort of the, the guard, the guardrails and the parameters and, and the, uh, you know, the other elements in here, we'll come back for a formal adoption and create it as a supplement to the TIF policy at a later date. So I'll just run through these categories. Uh, if, you know, just sort of nod of approval, uh, of our general thoughts and considerate considerations here, uh, otherwise any feedback is very welcome. So, um, we sort of outlined eight different criteria points to sort of filter down projects and categorize them in terms of the public benefits they achieve versus the benefits that we're willing to, to provide to the development. So the first one is financial equity. Important for developers to have skin in the game. Uh, we also don't want our TIF assistance to be more than the amount of capital equity that they have in a project. So that's like the first consideration. Um, I don't know if fifteen percent equity in a project is the right number. It could be ten, it could be more than fifteen, but fifteen seems sort of like a consistent number that we've, we've benchmarked with other city policies.
Johnson, can I stop you? Are we, we're taking action on this, aren't we?
Um, not necessarily formal action. This is, this is truly to, to get comfortable with this as an internal document to utilize as we're weighing TIF projects as they come.
So we're not looking for a motion on this?
No.
Okay, good. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
Clarification.
Yeah, good question. So the next two categories are probably the most pertinent in this, in this section. It really has to do with what types of projects would receive fifteen or years less than increment, potentially up to twenty years with additional benefits added. So in this category, we categorize like market rate housing. Uh, we consider that to probably have, you know, fifteen or less years of TIF duration. Hotels, unless convention focused, we put in that category, projects without major mixed use components, uh, retail, um, you know, daycare facilities, other sort of neighborhood amenity type, uh, features, uh, projects without significant public realm or sustainability elements. I'd also put in that. Um, going from twenty to twenty-five years, you know, these are projects that if we're going to go the full duration of a term, they should have substantial public benefits associated with them. Um, so in this category, we, we think of housing projects that have, I consider the amount of affordable, I don't know if twenty percent is correct, um, but I'd say start with at least twenty percent of affordable housing components within the project. Uh, I would, I also identify what affordable is. So in my mind, that's sixty percent or under AMI. So we would add that. I've already added that, just not to this draft. Um, substantial adaptive reuse of underutilized buildings. So, you know, high vacancy or vacant offices or hotels or other, or other properties that aren't currently being utilized, adaptive reuse to something higher and better use like an apartment. Um, substantial public realm, sustainability requirements, um, thinking city owned land redevelopment, uh, we put in there as well as mixed use projects, as I mentioned before, that have, um, a lot of city priorities included, like daycares could be non-profital space, equitable, equitable development or entrepreneurship type programs or incubator spaces. Um, then going from there, um, TIF cap, uh, that's just the sort of, uh, a general number that we don't want fifty, any more than fifty percent of the total increase of market value to be, um, encumbered by, by TIF. Uh, land, land assembly, we also don't want to be incentivizing higher land prices in our downtowns. We don't want to be like necessarily overpaying or providing subsidy for developers that are overpaying for land. Um, internal rate of return. A lot of investors are utilizing IRR or internal rate of return as their benchmark in terms of what is their rate of return that's necessary for a project. Um, we've got twenty-five percent. Um, once again, we'll, we'll, we'll see how that plays out when we're comparing it to projects that come in and if that's the right number. Um, city funding, number seven, city funding will be the last money in. So any city funding should be the last funding in the capital stack. We don't want to have developers come to us, say, well, can you provide in TIF? And then they go out and try to find equity investors to, to make the project work. We want to be the last money in that make that, to make that project work. And the number eight, eight, the eighty percent rule, um, just a concept that we have that, you know, if it's a market rate housing project, should we only provide eighty percent of the total increment available and then utilize the, you know, eighty to ninety-five percent, so the fifteen percent increment, start pooling that to use for other affordable housing priorities, initiatives, affordable housing projects. So it sort of puts a cap on what a market rate housing project could get in terms of the percentage of increment. Um, so that's sort of the quick rundown. Happy to hear any feedback. If you think we're in the general, heading in, in the general direction, that'd also be good to know.
Did you get any nods or anything?
I'm seeing a lot of nods. I don't know if it's sleeping nods or we agree nods.
Okay, council members, feedback for Mr. Johnson. Councilmember Keen.
I'd just start with a question so I understand. I, I also think of, I've heard other communities are, have much higher TIF property in their community and Rochester is relatively low, but I don't know what those sort of numbers are. Is there any concept that we have as far as when we're looking at TIF that said, we're getting overextended on TIF or we're way below where we could be? Do you have any concepts like, or is there any, as I, I believe there's things always rolling off, but in the last couple of years, we've proved a lot of TIF projects too.
Yeah, that's a great question, Councilmember Keen. Um, that is something that we are going to be tracking more closely and, and we do plan to bring in, in the, bring to the council in the future for, uh, just a general TIF update to benchmark where we're at, what's rolling off, when it's going to roll off, what's the percentage that's going to roll off in fifteen years or twenty years? And we've ran some of that analysis. I don't have it in front of me. Right now, we're at a healthy number. Um, you know, there's really no, like, drop dead shouldn't be over your, uh, tax capacity, this percentage, but we're, we're in the realm of, you know, with our peers.
And that, that's something that I, and I don't know how to get my head around that because if someone told me, uh, you know, four percent, I'm not sure if I'd say, ooh, that's getting dangerous or if that's really reasonable. So I'd like some sort of the compares with that. The, the other sort of input when I, when we go down, and this is very much a TIF policy, which is good, but there's all these other things that come into it, like city property or other things. And you end up with this scaffolding of other benefits other than TIF. And I don't know then if, or I should say, I would like to think that that impacts the amount of TIF, that if we're already, you know, go to Sherman, it's already our property that's, that's going in there. We're, we're in a big longer term thing. There's lots of benefits for us, but when you look at TIF separately, then you're going like, no, we're already into this project in a bigger amount. How, how do we, how do we make that come to bear on our TIF policy? Or should we?
Yeah, another great question. So you look at the, the, the tools in the toolbox. Um, you've got potential DMC funding with GSIA that we approved a project earlier. We've got TIF, you know, parking subsidies are allowing, um, um, developments to, to Palmer's point earlier, not to have to put in, uh, structured parking in their project, but then they're utilizing city facilities to park. Well, that's a subsidy because it's a, it's a cost benefit for them. Um, so we have to weigh all those factors. Doesn't fit into here very neatly yet, but, um, I agree. I mean, I think you have to look at the entire, what's the entire subsidy stack and what's the, the right ratio of TIF when you're getting other forms of assistance.
Okay. Uh, and then there was something that this goes back to, I think, like twenty eighteen or so, where I know there was a change to TIF policy that said, we don't need that anymore. Like we have built enough hotels. And, and this is the one that sticks in my mind, but maybe that could also apply to other things, like that I, I heard your nuance with the idea of like, it's one thing if it's a hotel, it's another if it's connected to, you know, a certain type of hotel. But do we, as does our TIF policy allow for basically these other policy statements that said our, our next five years, we're really focused on leveraging this sort of investments and that's, and that would change our policy or, or is that considered in our TIF policy?
Yeah, as, as part of the analysis with this, I mean, the Maxfield study is a great example. So we're getting a Maxfield study refresh that'll give us better parameters of what we should be incentivizing for the types of housing that we need. You know, I think housing studies are very similar. Experience Rochester did a housing study last year or the year before and, and, you know, determined the need for a convention style hotel that has room blocks for the convention. So, um, I think utilizing those studies to inform, you know, what our market challenges are, demands are, you know, maybe potential oversupply is, will help us inform these in the future.
Okay. So that, that'd be my input, that idea of like the, the leveraging of other, uh, city things. And then the one that I still trying, can't get my head around is the whole affordable housing sixty percent, where I still think some of our bigger problems are more at that eighty percent. And it, it's if you can't solve your problems at thirty and fifty and sixty, should you be worried about the other ones? And sometimes I think that the county, their focus on HR, uh, housing redevelopment could focus at the lower end and the city is more workforce housing. But I don't know how to work that into policy. I'll just make a statement here and see if anyone follows up.
Thank you, Councilmember Keen. Any other feedback?
Quick.
Head mayor.
I just really, and I don't, I'm not talking, I just want to say, I really appreciate the focus on childcare and using, having that as a focus. We have to do something in this community. And so being able to tie this to that is a simple way we can do it and address a problem that's a real need in the community. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
That's what we needed.
Great. If you have more feedback, you know where to find him. Moving on, don't move, uh, five E, amendment to exclusive negotiating rights agreement with BGD five Development LLC relating to the former Michael's Restaurant site. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Um, so this is amending some of the language that was, uh, approved with the exclusive, no, exclusive negotiating rights agreement back in September ninth of twenty twenty-four. So at the time of the, um, when we adopted this agreement, uh, the developers, there was a lot of conversation, do we do like a preliminary development agreement? Uh, talking to our legal counsel, there's not, we're not far enough along in the development process to even understand what's the project, what's the performant, what's the gap, what, what, you know, all the things that encompass it. So we landed on a preliminary, uh, sorry, a preliminary development agreement was too premature. So we landed on exclusive negotiation agreement. And really the intent was for both parties to work collaboratively, you know, try to get to a meeting of the minds, also signify to counsel what are the important objectives of the developer, um, when we're negotiating for the development. So what also happened at that time is the, uh, one of the primary concerns of the developer is parking. So, you know, being able to, uh, uh, provide parking within our parking system based on availability and so forth, uh, is something that we'll, they'll work on as a development incentive tool. What we didn't realize in the, in the agreement is that the term parking included the developer's property as well as their easement to the civic center. Um, so what we're doing here is decoupling those. There was just some confusion, confusion around like, what are we really negotiating? We're not negotiating anything on our center street ramp or the easement. It's really negotiating the, the, the property owned by the private entity that we're in the agreement with. So we changed the exhibit to decouple those, remove any mention of the, uh, of, of that component. Uh, and then throughout the exclusive negotiation rights agreement, it just says developer property to clear that up even more. And the other change was, um, there were some building statistics or, you know, stories, square footage units, that's still being worked through. So we just thought it was probably not good to have anything like listed that's un, like uncertain in the, in the agreement at this point, and that'll come in a subsequent agreement. Um, same thing with some of the other exhibits. There was an exhibit that showed the parking system. There's an exhibit that showed our skyway system. Just figured it was cleaner just to remove those at this point, uh, to, to create a more streamlined approach. Um, so that's really the request is to adopt the amended exclusive negotiation rights agreement with BGD five Development LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, Councilmember Palmer.
So when this came up to us and, and Mr. Keen had the, the question, if I remember correctly, why are we doing this for property that they owned? But really and truly what you showed us was using somebody else's property to get to the, the center street ramp. Is that kind of what we goofed up on?
There was, yeah, there was a, a connection of the term property throughout the development. So they wanted to, the, the, their goal is like, their priority is to have parking as close as possible to their development.
But, but I guess my point, and I just want to clarify that, is, is that what we voted on in my, my mind on that day was on property that they owned and had control of and not the, the Michael's site and not the Pappas property. That was, that was not what we were doing. So that reflects what we really have now. Is that what I'm getting at?
I'd say yes, looking at.
The intent of the original vote was to do what you would be doing tonight.
That's correct. Thank you. And you were right, Mr. Keen. So I'll make a motion to approve the action requested.
I'll second.
Uh, moved by Councilmember Palmer, seconded by Councilmember Keen. Any further discussion on this? Councilmember Keen.
Just a question. I, I wanted to look, I looked down through the red line and the other one. Has the other party already signed these?
Uh, they haven't signed, but they've approved this draft. So if this gets approved, we'll have them sign it and then go through our contract process.
All right. So that usually I do see signatures on these before we, we, we agree to them, but I, I, all right, but you, they've agreed to them, which is the critical part. All right. Thank you.
Uh, there's a motion on the table. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, having completed all items on our agenda, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting of the EDA.
I move, second.
Moved by, uh, Councilmember Fredericks, seconded by Councilmember Doring. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, all opposed say nay. Now I will call back, uh, to order the meeting of the city council and entertain a motion to adopt the findings of the EDA.
So moved.
Moved by, uh, Councilmember Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember, uh, Wall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion, uh, passes. Is there any other business tonight? Seeing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
I just have twenty minutes.
Oh, do you, Councilmember?
Moved.
By Councilmember Palmer.
Second.
By Councilmember Doring. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. We are adjourned.